Members of council, if I could please have you take your seats. This meeting is now resumed. Members, before the recess, council is debating the mayor's key item, item LS 6.1, on the ground, on the 2015 ground transportation review, taxis, limos and Uber, together with related items LS 3.5 and CC 9.8. Before we return to that item, I will take the release of member holds. If you have any releases, if you can put your name up, request a question staff.
Thank you, madam chair. On page three, EX 8.15, 505 Richmond Street West, I can move the city solicitor's recommendation in the supplementary report now, and I've consulted with build staff and the billboard counselors and the YMCA on it.
Okay, on page three, EX 8.15, at the bottom of the page, Counselor Cressy is releasing a recorded vote? Oh, sorry, Counselor...
Quick item.
Yes. So if it, do you have a question, it's not a quick item?
It's not a quick item, I have questions.
Okay, so we'll continue holding it. Counselor Carroll, quick item?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I think I've given some swell folks in partnership and in economic development indigestion over the lunch hour, so I'm now prepared to release page six, ED 6.13.
I'll hold it.
So on page six, ED 6.13, Counselor Carroll is releasing, on favor, carried. Counselor McConnell.
Madam Speaker, I spoke to you earlier, I wondered if I'd be able to present a petition. I wasn't here when petitions were presented this morning because I was at the eye doctor. Would that be okay?
Yes.
So I would be submitting a petition from many of my frontline drivers who are preventing, with regards to the preventing of illegal activities by Uber X, and I have probably in the neighborhood of 200 signatures, thank you.
On favor of receiving the petitions, recorded vote.
The motion to receive the petition carries unanimously, 31 in favor.
Okay, we'll now go back to questions, if I can give a minute for the staff to put the names on the screen. Counselor Palacio, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and my question is to Ms. Cook. Would be fair to say that we consulted on this matter more than any other issue in the history of the city of Toronto, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Speaker, it certainly feels so, yes, sir.
Since July, under the council directive that where you were asked to consult with all the stakeholders, including Uber, is how we done that, and how many consultations have we had?
So through July and August, we had consultation roundtables with the industry, we engaged Ipsos Reed to do public and industry information surveys and focus groups, we had two meetings with Uber, met with Lyft, met with Gata Hub as well.
Great. Now, so in your opinion, further consultations or recommendations from staff on this matter would be kind of pointless, given that recommendation number eight, on your report to the License and Standards Committee, calls for a regulatory framework, is called the DNEs, or the transportation network companies. So my key question with regards to recommendation number eight, that could be moved by any member of council in this council chamber today, so my key question to you is, council can make a decision now, you have done what you were asked to do by city council back in July, is that correct?
Yes, sir, we have, we have done what we were asked to do.
So the tools, in terms of further consultations, we have them right here within the report from the License and Standards Committee under recommendation number eight. I just wanted members of council to have a fair understanding that we have the tools right now to make that decision today as we move forward.
So through you, Madam Speaker, the manner in which we constructed the recommendations in the staff report was to, well, A, to answer what we were asked to do, provide information to ensure an informed debate, and outlined a path of reviews that would be undertaken through taxi cab limousines, current regulation, and proposed an approach to regulating what has become known as Uber X, or those private vehicles for hire. That was for, the point of that was to illustrate or inform this discussion on how we want to move forward, and if the city wishes to expand ground transportation options to the public.
During the taxi review process that took almost three years, is, did Uber have any participation in terms of the discussions, and do you recall in any of the public discussions and meetings that we had?
No, they did not participate in the 2012-2014 taxi review.
At all?
Not to my recollection, no, not at all.
So is, now, let me just ask you a question about something that I think there is a tremendous sense of misunderstanding when it comes to Uber, and that's what, when people say, everybody loves Uber, they love the application, but when it comes to that, we have Uber Black, we have the Uber SUVs, we have the Uber Taxi, we have the Uber LUX, the luxurious ones, or the limos, and they are presently regulated under chapter 45, or the bylaw that also regulates the taxi industry, is that correct?
So through you, Madam Speaker, Uber, as it's commonly known, is the platform through which passengers can obtain service, either through Uber Taxi, which is licensed taxi cabs, Uber Black, which is licensed limousines, Uber X, Uber XL, Uber SUV, and others that use private vehicles for hire, they call driver partners, those are all, as well as Uber Access, which uses our licensed accessible taxi cabs. So there's a variety of services a passenger can request through the Uber app for that very different service that they offer. We had the question of law in respect to Uber as the entity and its relevant entities requiring a license for brokering either limos or taxis. As I mentioned earlier, recommendation one is going to ensure that we capture them in that regulatory framework, that they are currently not captured by, according to the justice, and then, you know, really what we're looking for today is some direction to determine what extent of review we are going to do, in all cases, reporting back on potential regulation governing changes to taxi, changes to limo, and if so directed, regulatory regime that includes private vehicles for hire.
So my final question, my final question is, Uber X, they have chosen just to break the law, and they've been doing that for the last year or so, and they, they can do, literally speaking, the same thing that the Uber Black and the Uber SUVs are doing, and to apply under the same bylaw that the rest of the industry is doing, is that correct?
That was your last question.
So it, but it helps to clarify, so Uber X, Uber XL, Uber SUV, those are services provided through their platform, very similarly to Uber Taxi and Uber, Uber Black. They have been eligible for, or would have been able to obtain, a taxi cab brokerage license right from the start. The matter that was before the courts, we had a differing opinion on whether they were one or they were not, we had that question of law answered by Justice Dunphy, and he felt they were not captured by that. So currently, they are outside of requiring a license for the purposes of brokering Uber Taxi and Uber Black. That will be fixed once recommendation one is adopted. Uber X is an entirely different world, but Uber as it is, as it is operating, is not currently captured in our regulatory regime. The people providing the service now, and as Uber X drivers, are in contravention of the limousine bylaw.
Thank you. Counselor Cole. Counselor Thompson.
Oh, thank you, Speaker. Through you to Ms. Cook, I'm curious, when most companies come into this city who are not doing business currently, they tend to come in and they ask questions about regulations, the types of services that they're looking to offer, what are the rules, requirement, legalese and so on. I'm just wondering whether or not, through this particular process with respect to Uber, whether or not that sequence of communication and discussion took place with you and/or perhaps one of your, your, your staff members?
Through you, Madam Speaker, certainly counselor, when businesses, especially different types of businesses, want to understand how they fit within our regulatory framework, they will often ask, or meet with staff to get clarity. In this particular regard, in 2012, I am aware of a company that was app-based taxi brokering, which was Halo, they did come in and do that, and were subsequently licensed as a taxi cab brokerage. I know my staff did have meetings with representatives of Uber back in 2012, the outcomes of which was, as I've referenced previously, fundamental differing in opinion on whether or not they were a taxi cab brokerage or not. We said they were, they said they weren't, but they, those meetings were held in 2012, but did not result in compliance as we sought.
So there were some discussions around whether or not they could offer the service and response by you, so they continued anyways, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
All right, so would I be safe to say or presume that there was an understanding then that the rules or the regulations that was communicated to them, that they in fact were not following, they in fact would be in contravention vis a vis that they did not actually adhere to what was stated to them, is that correct?
So certainly through you, Madam Speaker, that was our position, and that position was clearly articulated in the application to the Superior Court when we sought the injunction.
Okay, so there are a number of times where I've gone to the airport, I've gone to the grocery stores and so on, and I see what I think are illegal operators that are picking up people, in fact, some of them have said to me, hey, do you need a ride somewhere? And I say, well, why do you ask, are you a taxi? They say, no, but I can take you, and I go, is it for free? They say, no, it's for a fee, and I guess those would be called bandit taxis, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yet the colloquial term under the taxi industry is a bandit cab, someone who's offering transportation service without a taxi cab license.
Okay, so is that, that's illegal then?
That is correct.
So what would be the difference between that type of illegal, like, sorry, what would be the difference between that type?
Okay, I'm gonna ask the members of the public to please keep it down, no disruptions, please.
Thank you, Speaker. What would be the difference between that type of taxi service, a bandit, and Uber, which does not have the legal authority to operate basically under our rules, and does not operate on our rules in Toronto, what's the difference?
So through you, Madam Speaker, I believe I might have referenced it previously, the issue of people in their private vehicles offering other people transportation in exchange for compensation, has been an issue in and around the industry since there was an industry. Typically, they'd be parked at grocery stores, there's ads put into ethnic newspapers, or all other kinds of modes trying to procure people. The difference now is Uber has done it on a significant scale. Ostensibly there.
So it's, it's the magnitude, it's not that it's legal, it's just a very illegal magnitude.
So, and through you, Madam Speaker, I mean, and this is where, there's a bit of a nuance as well, in that we have limousines in this, in this ground transportation mix.
But I, but you, you license the limousines.
We do.
So would that be illegal for them to pick up a fare through Uber?
Uh...
And would that be the Uber Black that I hear about?
Yeah, so if they, they could pick up through Uber Black, absolutely.
Right, so that's legal?
That would be, depending on how they're operating.
Okay, fair enough, so the illegality that we're speaking of, would that then be the Uber X?
So through you, Madam Speaker, the challenge that we've got is identifying the differences between taxi cab service, limousine service, and what this other type of service is, that they are now providing Uber X, that the public has jumped on board with, and there's a nuance between pre-booked versus hailed, and this is where we need to sort things through.
So can you help me to try to understand, they talk about dispatching in the taxi business, one element, and Uber in terms of being an application, I can't see you actually, sorry, sorry, and Uber, the app, being what I would term as being a dispatching feature, what are the distinction differences? Is it simply that there isn't a person, and it's just a technology, or is there some other feature?
That was your last question.
Thank you.
Through you, Madam Speaker, that was the essence of our court injunction, our application for court injunction, was to answer that question of law, whether the manner in which Uber is operating, dispatching vehicles or rides through an app is the same as a taxi cab brokerage. Our position was that they were, their position was that they were not. In that case, Justice Dunphy found that our existing definition of taxi cab brokerage did not fit the model that Uber was operating under, so they are not currently captured in the regulatory regime.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Cole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you, just a few questions, so maybe this is seemingly an easy question to answer, but why do we regulate or license any vehicle for hire regardless of what the service is? Like, what, why, why is the state involved in this business?
Through you, Madam Speaker, certainly our premise for licensing any business is to ensure public safety, consumer protection, nuisance control, all these things, particularly in the vehicle for hire sphere, where you've got a stranger getting into another person's vehicle, being driven some destination, we want to ensure the vehicle's safe, we want to ensure the driver's screened, so there's a lot of good public safety and public interest reasons to regulate.
So, public safety, consumer protection, and while I recognize some services are nuanced and somewhat different from each other, from the kind of the big picture point of view, at the end of the day, it's someone getting into another car and paying for that service, whether it's a traditional licensed one, Uber, Uber this, Uber that?
Correct.
Okay, so if, if, maybe this will come out in the review, but with that in mind, wouldn't we want to get to a point where, regardless of maybe some tweaks and some nuance, if you're in that business, it's under one regulatory regime?
So through you, Madam Speaker, certainly the fundamentals around public safety needs to apply across the board, the how we get there would certainly be part of the conversation as we go forward. There are differences even in existing regulations today between taxi cabs and limousines, simply by the nature of the fact taxi cabs are primarily hail, where limousines are pre-booked, and that's where the difference is as well, on the Uber X side, it's pre-booked, so understanding those will certainly tell us to the extent to which we need to regulate.
And that leads to my next question, what, how does the public safety element or consumer protection change from our regulatory point of view, whether something is hailed or pre-booked?
Through you, Madam Speaker, there is, there is a difference insofar, in so far as how much information is in the passenger's hand before they step into a vehicle, so when someone calls a limousine service company or a taxi cab brokerage, they'll call that because they've had experience with it before, they know the type of service, and there's an expectation on what that is, versus... and there's an expectation on what that is, versus the anonymity, I'll call it on a hail, where you put your hand out on Bay Street and you may get any, an independent or any other brokerage vehicle. So it really comes down to, how much information does a passenger have before they make a choice of getting into a vehicle and being driven somewhere by a person? And, and enabling that information for passengers was actually something we talked about in the 2014 review. So there's definitely differences there on the, the consumer side.
Have we, at any point yet, looked at, what, Uber Pool?
I'm aware, through you, Madam Speaker, I'm aware Uber launched Uber Pool for two weeks during Pan Am. There was some reference to some data, but we didn't look in too, too in-depth with it.
I know that Uber has said that about Uber Pool, not only is it much less expensive than taking a cab or owning a car, has the potential to be as affordable as taking a subway, or a bus, or other means of transportation. And I'm just wondering, from what you heard or what you anticipate in the review, are we seeing some scenarios in other jurisdictions where, and I kind of ask this as a TTC Chair, where Uber is getting into the mass transit business?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Through media reports only at this point, Counselor, I understand there may be a trial happening somewhere in California.
San Francisco?
Yeah, yeah. But beyond that, I've not, not had the opportunity to delve into that any further.
And beyond, we fixate so much on Uber, I know there are other services, so, just in, I know there are mass transit kind of versions of this, Chariot Loop, Leap, Midnight Express, that sounds a bit dodgy, which are more kind of bus carpool services that are actually shadowing transit routes. So you can walk to your house to a stop for a discount on your, on your fare. Have we, have we been seeing any of that in Toronto?
Through you, Madam Speaker, nothing that's come to my attention, but certainly, if there is another provider of a service that people are, are getting into vehicles driven by unknown persons, then I would think that that's something we would definitely want to have a look at. But I am not aware of any operating, other than a couple of small startups that are trying to do a small carpool thing that's recently evolved.
And in, in whatever review we end up conducting in any shape or form, would you be amenable to having the TTC kind of involved in that with either data sharing or kind of sharing what's happening in other jurisdictions, just so that we're, you know, we're not regulating for something that then, something new comes in about, you know, a few weeks afterwards?
Absolutely. Through you, Madam Speaker, I think there's a fabulous opportunity for us to look at, at the broader ground transportation options for the public, and certainly being in touch with Mr. Byford and his team as well on the wheel trans aspect and how people are moving around the city. We can include all of that.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Josh. Counselor Fletcher?
Thank you, Speaker. I just wanted to follow up on two things that you mentioned, the public safety and the consumer protection. And just get into a little bit about the public safety. Describe why it's important to have a kind of more control of people that drive other people for money, for public, as, as a public safety issue. I noticed tracking is an important thing. Are you able to track with Uber at this point, who, who they've taken where and what's happened? Is there any tracking facility required of them?
So through you, Madam Speaker, Counselor Fletcher, because we do not regulate them, we do, currently, we do not have any say over what they do. They do indicate that that is a part of their model, where people can see where they're going or where they've been, who's taken them. They're advised of it in advance, and they get a printed receipt with the photo and name of the person afterwards. But none of that is within our regulatory reach at this point.
And that's considered to be an important piece of public safety, that police or MLS do have that ability to get that record?
Absolutely.
And your report would allow that?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I would foresee any type of regulation would ensure that law enforcement agencies, such as the Toronto Police Service, and by law enforcement purposes, we would have access to that kind of information to conduct investigations, absolutely.
Because right now, you do have that for any of our regulated taxis, taxicabs and limousines.
Through you, Madam Speaker, when we need info, or we know who the taxicab drivers are, we know who the limousine drivers are, yeah.
That just brings me to one other question. The 1,300 taxicabs that are involved with Uber right at the moment, I've read that in your report, how, how is that different for somebody riding in them than someone who is not a taxicab that's involved with Uber? So, are they covered by insurance? Is the passenger have a better insurance or understanding that they're better protected in one of those than in, let's say if I decide to drive somebody for money?
Through you, Madam Speaker, all licensed Toronto taxicabs are required to have $2 million of liability insurance, whether they receive the call via a hail, via another brokerage, independently, or via Uber. So the vehicle itself is insured for providing that service, and that includes coverage, passenger hazard coverage.
Including those 1,300 that are currently driving?
They are municipal.
Those are the only drivers who are driving for Uber who actually have that level of insurance?
I would say those and any licensed, municipally licensed limousines that are driving for Uber on Uber Black or, I guess Uber Black.
Everybody else is on the insurance on their own car, would I be right in saying that?
That's correct.
And the Financial Services Commission of Ontario seems to be a bit concerned about that.
Through you, Madam Speaker, we have spoken with Fisco and the province. The matter of insurance, as I have become more and more aware, is extremely complicated. There are certainly a number of questions that both the insurance regulator and the province have in respect to the types of coverages that are being provided, and I do know that's a conversation they are having, but no definitive statements either way at this point.
So my insurance act cooperators, how do you, how is that being viewed if I decide to drive you through the Uber app?
So as, through you, Madam Speaker, as is every, the case in any insurance policy, you're required to tell your insurer what you're using your vehicle for, how you're using your vehicle.
And so that's, is that considered a commercial use then? That would be considered a commercial use?
So this is where I'm going to beg off answering insurance-specific questions. It is a very complicated body of work, there are endorsements and exemptions, and other types of things that can be done in the insurance realm, that's, it's very murky at this point.
Could we talk about what we consider a commercial use? If you are using, a, a driver is using our roads to drive someone or something for money on a regular basis, would you consider that a commercial use?
Yes, I would.
Or that they're engaged in a commercial activity?
Yes, I would.
And that should be somewhere reflected in insurance, not only for the driver, but also for the passenger, the passenger protection as well as the driver protection. If the driver, if the driver isn't protected, is the passenger protected? I think that's my question.
Through you, Madam Speaker, the matter of passenger coverage also defaults to the, the policy that the passenger may have of their own, that may cover them on first or third-party liability. So the issue of insurance definitively is very difficult to answer, because there are a number of moving parts in respect to it. To answer the, the core of your question, and someone is operating a commercial enterprise in a business, in a building or in a vehicle, the expectation would be that the insurance that they have is relevant to the work that they are doing, as deemed necessary and appropriate by the insurance governing bodies and industry.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. They may be covered. Counselor DeBermaker?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to our licensing staff. Ms. Cook, the numbers that are out there, do you expect there's, I think Uber says they have about 16,000 drivers, I believe that's roughly the number they, they quote?
I believe that's the recent reports in the media, they had given us 13,000 in August.
Okay, and let's settle for 13,000. Is it possible for you or the city to actually confirm that those 13,000 drivers actually have insurance that protects themselves and their passengers?
Through you, Madam Speaker, currently, they are not regulated by us.
So for the drivers that come in and do it legally, through our, and get licensed through the city, you know if they have insurance, correct?
All municipally licensed taxicabs and limousines are required, the, the owners are required to provide proof of insurance on an annual basis or at any time when it changes.
So if there's about 10,000 drivers?
It's not on a driver basis, it's on a vehicle basis.
Which is how many vehicles?
Five, approximately 5,000 taxis, approximately 1,000 limousines.
So for the vehicles licensed by the city, you have every confidence that they're insured properly to protect members of the public?
Yes, I am.
For the drivers that are under the Uber platform, you have no idea really if they are covered or not?
That is correct.
So there is a risk to those people who take those 16,000 cabs, that you and I, and members of this, this council, cannot guarantee them that there's sufficient insurance to make sure that they're covered in case of a tragic accident?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yeah, the, the issue of insurance is very complicated and quite murky, so I could not make a definitive statement one way or the other, save to accept that we've not seen proof of sufficient insurance, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done in that regard.
Okay, through you, Madam Chair, one of the other safety regulations we have is to make sure that there are high-resolution security cameras within a car. Would you agree that for the 5,000 vehicles that we regulate, that camera's there to protect the driver and the passenger, correct?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I do, I am aware that when they were implemented as mandatory pieces of equipment, that was done to ensure driver safety. It did not trail into being a requirement in limousines because of the pre-booked nature, but it certainly made a difference on the taxicab safety, taxicab driver's safety, from what I'm told.
And are you aware recently there have been two separate sexual assaults within Uber cabs?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Through you, Madam Speaker, and I believe that question was asked previously, I'm aware from media reports that there have been incidents.
And yet, they don't have cameras in their cars, as far as you know?
That is correct.
So for a police officer, as you used to be, it'd be very difficult for you, and very difficult for the victim, to, to go through the court process to prove innocence or guilt, one way or the other?
Through you, Madam Speaker, it would be, it would be unfair of me to state that the camera footage would or would not make a case or not make a case. I'm not familiar with the evidence or the issues or the incidents that occurred, so it wouldn't be fair for me to say.
Of those specific cases, do you believe that it's in the public interest to have security cameras in cabs that people take?
I believe the nature of the taxicab industry and the, and the anonymous manner in which people enter and exit the vehicle, and I do know that the implementation of cameras has made a significant improvement on taxicab driver's safety. So yes, I believe the cameras in the taxicabs were a good idea.
And the 16,000 drivers driving for Uber, to your knowledge, have no security cameras in their cabs?
They're all individual people that I have no regulatory oversight of.
And through you, Madam Speaker, do you believe that surge pricing is good public policy?
Through you, through you, Madam Speaker, I, I, I think I would defer that question to someone who's got an economics background, such as our city manager, who could have that, that discussion around the benefits or the challenges with free market enterprise and flexibility of rates. So I think I'll, I'll defer to someone smarter than I. Oh, no, don't put him on the speaker.
Okay, if we want the city manager to-
Oh, no.
-answer the question? That was your-
I'm satisfied with the, our-
Oh, you're satisfied, okay, so one last, one last question?
Do you, um, do you believe currently, if, if any company walks in the door, or any driver wants to, to follow our regulations, that, that they actually today have a level playing field, if you follow the rules?
So through you, Madam Speaker, I think it's a difficult question to answer, given the fact that we have a restricted issuance of taxicab licenses, and we have 844 drivers on a waiting list, who would argue that there is no level playing field. And the fact that our 2012, 2014 review was, was attempting to address inequities within the licensed taxicab industry. So, level playing field's a very difficult conversation when you've got so many different participants with so many different roles and various different services being provided.
Great, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
Great answer.
Counselor Crisanti?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and Ms. Cook, I just, the good news is that I am the second last to ask questions, and I know you're getting very tired, so I thank you very much for your patience and your hard work in this very important issue. Just following up on a question that Michael Thompson, that Counselor Thompson, asked earlier, you indicated earlier that there were some discussions you had with Uber back in 2012?
My staff did, that's correct.
Was that something that they proactively came to you? How did that come about?
Through you, Madam Speaker, my recollection is that we reached out and asked them to come in. They came in the same time that Halo started operating in Toronto as a app-based taxicab brokerage.
Okay, so you reached out to them at that time, and at that time, we had a, I believe, a different regulatory framework that subsequently got changed a couple of years later, correct?
Through you, Madam Speaker, so in the 2014 recommendations of the review that we did, we changed one word in the taxicab brokerage definition. That was, as I mentioned earlier, that was the matter that was heard by Justice Dunphy and, and adjudicated in June, and determined that Uber was not captured within the existing definition, even as amended at that time.
So through, through those discussions, were, was there any encouragement given to, to the group to operate within our current regulatory framework?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, there were. There were bylaw charges issued for operating outside of being a taxicab brokerage and a limousine service company. However, the challenge being, we said that's what they were, they said they were something else, we went to court to have that question of law answered, and the court found in their favor.
Really? That's interesting, you know, given that they continue to operate the same way that our current taxi industry is operating. So how, I just want to ask you about your enforcement efforts to date. How have you been progressing with that?
Through you, Madam Speaker, currently, we have 102 Uber X drivers charged, facing over 200 individual charges, all under the limousine bylaw. First, some of them are being served, first appearances commenced a week or so ago, and will continue on through October, November, and December.
Okay, so do you, would you agree that our current system may not be perfect, but it is a system that we have, it is a system that this council approved, and it's a system that we should probably continue to enforce? And are enforcing?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I think, I think we have an opportunity to take a fresh look in, in response to the public's input on the taxicab industry now that we did not have before, work with the taxicab industry to find opportunities for them to, to have more flexibility and respond better to customer needs. And certainly, to your last point, I will ensure that I undertake the appropriate enforcement efforts to support the bylaws enacted by this council to the fullest of my ability.
And would you happen to know if, if Uber has the ability to pick up at the airport currently? And are they doing that?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, I believe they do.
So they're picking up at the airport against any provincial bylaws that are currently in place?
No, they were permitted to by the GTAA.
So they were permitted to, okay. So, well, those are all my questions, thank you, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kergianis?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I want to thank Ms. Cook for all the work that's been done, I attended all your meetings except one that I, although I wanted to come, you suggested that I don't come. However, in your estimation, did you, were you given clear instructions to ensure a level playing field in the motion that we passed in July 7?
Through you, Madam Speaker, the, the clear direction, it really depends in the eye of the beholder. Some people's perspectives were that the directive meant status quo, other people's perspectives were that it meant expanding.
Let me read it to you.
Sure. I got it right here.
How the city can ensure a level playing field is established and maintained with respect to commercial insurance, driving training, and quality, level playing field? Have you examined that? Have you looked at that? Have you done due diligence on that?
Through you, Madam Speaker, what we have in front of us today, Counselor Kergianis, what we've proposed, is a series of reviews of each of the taxicab industry, the limousine industry, and if directed, any other alternative ground transportation provider such as Uber X. In order, we need to understand the playing field we have, in order that, for us to have informed conversations with our industry stakeholders.
Do you need any more looking at, searching, or have you done what you were instructed to do, develop framework for a level playing field?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I believe the question in hand, Counselor Kergianis, is what playing field we are on, and how many participants we have in it, and then we will be able to take the efforts to-
And what instructions?
Counselor, please allow the staff to answer the question.
No problem.
Okay. Go ahead.
Am I getting picked on by the speaker?
No, I'm not getting picked on. You're not getting picked on, you just-
All right, through you, um-
Know the rules.
Through you, Madam Speaker, to the mayor.
Okay, answer the question.
I'm sorry, to the, to Ms. Cook one more time, sorry. Would help from the police help you crack down on Uber, assist you in laying more charges?
Through you, Madam Speaker, you know, we each have individual mandates, and Counselor Kergianis, based on my experience and my history, I would suggest that the Toronto Police Service is already fully engaged in dealing with a lot of criminal activity that's going on in the city, and that's where they ought to spend their resources. My division is here to ensure our bylaws are upheld, and we'll do the fullest that we can with the resources we have.
Madam Speaker, through you to the mayor, Mr. Mayor, has your office- Mr. Mayor, has your office received and/or sent any contact from the chief of police regarding enforcement of the bylaws?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Microphone there, thank you. Through you, Madam Speaker, I can only say that I've had a verbal discussion with the chief of police in a police services board meeting, at which time, he indicated that in order to pursue a prosecution of Uber, under the, I guess it would in this case be the Highway Traffic Act, they would have to have, seek a production order from the courts to get the data from the computer, the Uber computer, which I'm not sure even where that's located, in order to prove that a commercial transaction took place. And so, they've indicated that in order to obtain such a production order, it would involve huge paperwork and a lot of time on the part of police officers, and that he found it difficult to contemplate they could add that to what Ms. Cook just referred to as the busy...
Has any of your staff received an email?
I, I'm not, I have received no email, and I don't know if my staff... Well, sure, I can ask them, would you want me to turn around and ask them, or I can ask them?
No.
No, they have, no, they have...
Sorry, you cannot ask the mayor's staff questions when you're on the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I met the chief, and I've asked him why he was not cracking down. His answer was, "Has the mayor's office not been in touch with you yet?" Quote-unquote. Farther, farther spokesperson said, "Our position remains that we are not undertaking, quote-unquote, a crackdown on Uber's drivers due to resource availability and the labor-intensive nature of the investigation required to prove there's relatively minor HTA cases in court."
And what is your question?
My question is, I've asked you if your staff had received any emails. I was copied on an email from Stu Elly that your staff was copied on. So, in all of this, sir, can you tell me if there was any discussion between you and the chief? Have you instructed the chief not to lay any rules? Or is the chief telling me, why is the chief telling me that hasn't the mayor's office been in touch with you?
I have no idea why the mayor's office was supposed to be in touch with you on that particular matter. I've only told you the absolute full story here, which is that the chief of police did have a discussion, at which I was present, I suspect Counselor Carroll was present as well, and Counselor Lee, at which time he explained to us what they would have to go through in order to successfully prosecute a case in this instance. And once he had described it, he went on to say that they had a lot to do, and that given the resources that would have to be expended to prosecute one of these cases, that he would have to continue to do the other work that he was doing on which he was fully occupied.
Thank, thank you. Counselor Shiner.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Tracy, so I've been listening to many of the questions, and some of the comment questions. Can you help me understand, a taxi driver themselves, what are the fees that the taxi driver has to pay? Because the license is a small annual amount.
Through you, Madam Speaker. A taxicab driver pays to the city approximately $350 per year, sorry, $330 per year for their license.
Okay. What else do we make them pay? They need insurance, but we want insurance from everyone. They have to have a camera in, they need insurance, it's a cost, but we don't make them...
So through you, Madam Speaker, maybe I can help Counselor Shiner. There's a difference between what the taxicab owner is required to provide, and what the taxicab driver pays for.
Now, what does the owner have?
So the taxicab owner is responsible to ensure that the vehicle's in proper repair, properly equipped, so includes meters, cameras, and is insured. It's their responsibility.
So that's similar to what anyone driving a vehicle for hire would need?
Correct. Taxicab drivers pay shift rental to, through a fleet operator or through a lessee, and...
To use a car, but that, we don't set that?
We do not.
They pay, if they want to use the license, they have to rent the license? They want to be with the brokerage firm, they have to pay the brokerage firm?
Correct.
So, these costs are really costs between the operator and the brokerage firm, who's setting those rates?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Between the driver and the vehicle owner, there's also fleet operators, there's agents, there's lessees, and then brokerages as a provider of dispatch service.
So there's lots of people getting a piece of the pie before the poor driver's out there driving a car?
That would be correct.
Okay. The fare increases, that now there's a suggestion that the fare be dropped? I've been around for a little while. Did the city ever go ahead and say taxis should charge more, or are most of those fare increases not as a result of the drivers and/or the operators, or the coming back and saying, "We have to cover additional costs for gas and other areas"? Were they not driven by the operators or the brokers or the taxi industry itself?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, the most significant rate increase was due to the increasing cost of gas back 2008, I believe. The other increase was due to the implementation of HST, the increase up to 13%. So that was government required to be added within the fare. But they've been industry-driven prior.
They're industry-driven. They aren't where the cities come down and said, "We should charge more." In fact, I think at many of those debates, we would have liked to charge less, but we understood the need to maintain the vehicles.
Through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, as we have the conversation around fares, we're very mindful of the operating costs. We did, through this review, ask the industry, various components of the industry, what to do about the fare. Generally, people felt that it ought to be reduced so they could compete, but nobody had the answer as to what level or how. That would be a body of work that we would continue to do beyond this report.
Now, an ambassador operator, ambassador plate, they don't necessarily have to go through the brokerages, do they? They can drive the streets of the city, and they are legally entitled to pick up persons that might be on the side of the street, get hailed as a taxicab, unlike anything that would be on the internet?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes. Any independent taxicab operator, ambassador, TTL, a standard plate could also do the same. It's up to them, the owner, whether they affiliate with a brokerage or not.
Could be less expensive. Now, the dispatch of those cars could be under another system other than going to a broker, because what Uber is, is really new technology coming in and a way to find a ride. So that could also be done for taxi drivers if this, we're able to move this forward and advance a technology that's now in place to help everyone in the cars, if that was so the wish of the industry?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes. And we do know a number of our established brokerages are doing a lot of good work on building up their online presence and web-based access to service.
And the demand that's out there for online hailing of a vehicle, that's more a technology issue now, and the easiness that people have in being able to go to their phone in an application and order up a vehicle, and have the vehicle come, and know where the vehicle is, and not have to handle cash as well, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, through the engagement we did with the public, sir, the convenience, the convenient use of an app, the convenience of not having to carry cash, being, using credit card or debit, was the top of their list.
So then, if the industry wished to move forward with technology, they could also find ways to reduce costs, reduce the fees, provide better service similar to that, and the only main issue might be the cost of the rental of the plate itself, which I understand is very large for the poor people that are trying to drive a car, is that correct?
Last question.
Through you, Madam Speaker, certainly, and as we go forward with the review, will be with the mind of ensuring that the industry itself has flexibility to improve and take advantage of technology changes.
Thank you. Counselor Perks.
Thank you very much, Speaker. I just want to first ask a question of the executive director. When we did the taxi reform in 2014, council gave you a direction to communicate with the province about the Employment Standards Act, and whether or not it applies to taxi drivers, was that done?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and if the province were to remove the exclusion of taxi drivers that currently exists in that legislation, drivers would be eligible for minimum wage, overtime, benefits, sick days, all of those things that employees are guaranteed in law in Ontario, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I think there'd be certainly conversations to be had, whether that would make them eligible for that or not, I would, I would suppose, would depend on the manner in which they're engaged in the industry. So if we have someone start a taxi company and hire employees versus independent contractors, but that's certainly a conversation for the province and the ESA.
Right, and we've approached the province, saying we want to see that exclusion lifted, because this, this gives an opportunity for drivers to become employees and get those protections. We did that.
We did, we did send a letter following up on the direction from council.
And my understanding is the province is right now just concluding their public consultation on amendments to the ESA broadly?
Correct. We were in touch with the Ministry of Labor, and I do know that the province received a letter on behalf of the city as well, indicating our interest generally to be involved in the conversation.
Okay. As regards the rest of the package that's in front of us, if we don't approve the package that's in front of us today, we don't approve recommendation one, and Uber still has a legal loophole to get through, don't they?
That is correct, sir.
So if we want any ability to regulate Uber, we have to pass something today?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. If we pass something such as recommendation three, or five, or some other recommendation that asks you to report back, that loophole, that loophole is still closed, isn't it?
Certainly. Recommendation one is the, is why we put that as recommendation one, is to ensure that council's intent is that Uber use of technology and any other company that's using technology for dispatching services is caught within our regulatory regime.
So if this council approves what's in front of us, and maybe even approves something asking, giving you even more direction to consult, the minute that we pass the bills on this item, it is very clear to everybody that Uber is, by operating without insuring drivers and licensing drivers, would be in violation of city of Toronto bylaws?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. The, the issue of regulatory fairness, the city of Toronto would never pass a bylaw, and it would be frankly subject to challenge, saying, "Everyone has to follow this bylaw except one company." We couldn't do that, could we?
No, sir, we could not.
Okay. So if you're directed to go away and consider writing some other, you know, bylaw, or bringing, bringing the limos and taxis together, or some other configuration, you would have to come back and write something that was a level playing field, that was fair to all industry actors, wouldn't you?
That is correct.
And if we, as council, approve something that wasn't fair to all people in the industry, it would be subject to legal challenge and likely get thrown out right away, wouldn't it?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, any regulation that we enact, sir, has to be relevant to the service that's being provided, and has to be done in a fair and equitable way. So it's looking at the service provided, the risks that are inherent, and the regulation that's required to mitigate those risks.
So if I or some other member of council got up and said that what council's doing today destroys these industry players and only helps that one other company, they wouldn't actually be reflecting what's in front of us, would they?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wong-Tam.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Ms. Cook, I'd like to read out to you a number of services and perhaps what we call business models that are advertised by both UberX as well as taxi companies. And what I'd like you to do is just respond to them with a question, with an answer such as, "They both do it," or perhaps, "Only UberX does this," or perhaps, "Only taxi companies do this." Is that clear?
Okay, I think so.
Follow me. All right. Services business model. Market advertise and promote immediate ground transportation to public passengers in specific geographical regions. Do they both do this?
Yes, I believe, taxicab brokerages and Uber, yes.
Okay. Do both taxi cab companies and UberX do this? Hire drivers as independent contractors to provide rides to passengers, where drivers are not necessarily employees of taxi cab companies?
So through you, Madam Speaker, so taxi cab brokerages, Uber, whomever, do not hire taxi cab drivers, rent shifts on taxicabs if they don't own themselves, and they operate them as independent contractors?
But it's fair to say that both UberX as well as the taxi cab companies are doing the same thing? Recruiting drivers?
Drivers are independent contractors.
Okay. Services business model, once again, usually do not own any of the vehicles in their fleet. Most of the vehicles are driver-owner-operators, with the exception of a few large garages that own vehicles and Canada's largest company. Do you think that statement applies to both UberX as well as taxi companies as a model?
So through you, Madam Speaker, taxi cab brokerages, other than their own personal holdings, do not own taxicabs. The taxicab licenses that we have in this city have been issued to individuals, but 60%, 40% are held in corporations, not currently operating as taxicab companies, but just held in corporate hands.
So once again, is it, is it fair to draw the conclusion that perhaps UberX, as well as taxi cab companies, operate from that same level of service and model of business?
That's a fair statement.
Okay. Drivers are charged a fixed or percentage fee of each ride, in consideration of the number of dispatched rides. Is that correct?
So through you, Madam Speaker, taxi cab drivers, through their shift rent, pay, indirectly pay the cost of receiving brokerage fees for the taxicabs that are affiliated with brokerages. My understanding with Uber is the drivers pay on a per-ride commission basis.
But, but it's...
They both pay for receiving dispatched services one way or the other.
So either it's a fixed fee or a percentage, but everyone's getting compensated through the same processing system, through dispatch?
Correct.
Correct. Do taxi cab companies and UberX utilize the online-enabled platforms around GPS in terms of how they locate their customers?
So through you, Madam Speaker, some brokerages...
And drivers, matching, sorry, matching customers to drivers.
So some brokerages are a little bit further afar, further ahead on the use of technology for that purpose. Certainly, Beck is one of the larger brokerages we have in the city, but Co-op also has an app beyond, I believe, Royal. I don't know how many other other brokerages, and to the extent that their technology does that. I do know on the Uber platform, that is what it does, is matches drivers to passengers.
And do taxi cab companies and UberX, do they both pick up passengers and take them from the place of origin to their final destination? Is that what they're trying to do here?
So through you, Madam Speaker, again, Counselor Wong-Tam, it's not, we don't have taxi cab companies per se. The brokerages provide a service to the independent contractor taxi cab drivers, with the question being, does a taxi cab driver or a limousine driver pick up a person and take them from here to there in exchange for compensation? And does an UberX driver pick up a person from somewhere and take them somewhere for compensation? Yes, they do.
In, in today's deliberations, and what I've heard throughout the months and weeks leading up today, I've heard UberX describe themselves as a, as a rideshare company, that are part of a new sharing economy. Have we ever used that language to describe the taxi companies?
So through you, Madam Speaker, I've actually flatly refused to use the reference rideshare. So, you know, it's, it's about people receiving transportation in various modes. I do not buy the moniker of rideshare. I will say that this concept of sharing economy, or gig economy, or what have you, is a larger worldwide movement across various fronts, beyond just transportation, and it's something that regulators are grappling with worldwide.
Between taxi companies and UberX, which one is following the rules?
So, are you guys?
Okay, that was your, that was your last question.
So through you, Madam Speaker, certainly, any of our licensees are abiding by the regulations that we have. The challenge that we have currently is Uber is not captured, Uber is an enterprise, is not captured within our existing regulatory regime. So they're not operating outside of it, they are, they're not in contravention of it, they are not captured within it.
Thank you. So that's it for the questions.
I just wanted to know about the...
Well, if a member, if a member of council feels that they want to go in camera, to ask questions in camera, then you, could that move the motion?
I see.
If there are other members that need to go in camera. Okay. Did you want to move it?
No, I just...
Okay.
Not sure what I can speak about in public, so if somehow I'm straying, I know you'll catch me.
Okay. Speak to the, yeah, if you can speak to the solicitor in advance, okay. Okay, so we'll go to speakers, and the first speaker is Mayor Torry.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll begin with a motion that I would move to amend this item as follows, and it's up on the screen. The city council requests the executive director of Municipal Licensing and Standards to report back to the Licensing and Standards Committee in 2016 on a framework to regulate alternate ground transportation providers, and to begin consulting on the appropriate regulations to ensure a level playing field in the ground transportation industry. Today, Madam Speaker, the council is having what is obviously an extremely important debate on an issue that matters to people across the city, and I know it matters a lot to people in this chamber, all the people in this horseshoe, and the people that have in this chamber, all the people in this horseshoe and the people that have joined us today. The issue, simply put, I think, is how Toronto can practically deal, can practically deal with the presence of Uber and technologies like it in our ground transportation system. Since Uber has entered the market, the number of active users in the city has increased to well over 300,000. We've heard various numbers this morning. The number of active drivers has increased by thousands, as we've heard earlier today as well. Obviously, this service is hugely popular with the traveling public, but it has been very disruptive to our hard-working Taxi Cab drivers. This is a complex and challenging issue, and Toronto does not face it alone. Municipalities across Canada, and indeed around the globe, are trying to contend with Uber, and I believe this is our city's chance to provide leadership and to find a practical course going forward. The policy decision, I think, in front of our council today is clear. Are we going to regulate Uber and technologies like it, to use the expression that's been used over and over again today, capture them within our regulatory system, or are we going to attempt to ban them? Madam Speaker, I believe the only practical course that is actually going to work in fairness and in the interest of those gathered in this room is to regulate. To me, this issue is not about any one company. It is about citizens who move around the city every day, and the people who earn their living moving them around. For too long, the interests of the public have been drowned out of this debate. We are where we are because the former status quo before Uber created a need which technologies like Uber filled. And before that happened, neither the traveling public nor taxi drivers were happy. Technological innovation and consumer demand have ushered in change, and now I think our responsibility here is to work to integrate these innovations in a responsible, practical, fair manner. I had no great love for the way Uber entered our market. In fact, one might argue, they kind of gave us half a peace sign when they came in here and have continued to do so. I had no great... I had no great love for the way they've conducted themselves during much of these past two years. But they are not the first company to disrupt an industry, nor will they be the last. On this issue, I think we have to focus on the benefits that these technologies provide to the traveling public, as well as the need to mitigate, to lessen, however we can, their impact on Toronto's hard-working Taxi Cab drivers. This can only be done through regulation, through capturing Uber in our regulatory system, and having fair, modernized, realistic regulation. When it comes to the Taxi Cab industry, regulations principally exist, as we've discussed in a number of the questions, to ensure public safety and consumer protection. They require such things as insurance, background checks, vehicle inspection records while preventing price gouging. These are fundamental principles that ensure a viable, accessible ground transportation industry for the traveling public. I have said many times throughout this entire discussion, going back to before I was actually sworn in as mayor, that Uber cannot exist in some sort of a Wild West situation. It must accept regulations that ensure that it provides a safe and reasonably priced service to the citizens of Toronto, and it must be a fair and level playing field. A decision to regulate, to move forward to regulate Uber today will not be the end of this conversation, it will be the beginning. It will instruct Ms. Cook and her team, who've worked very hard on this, to go away and develop a regulation that conforms with the words that I put by way of an amendment just a moment ago. Together, we will look at the impact this disruptive technology's had on the Taxi Cab industry, particularly the drivers, and we will work to address these issues with fairness and with foresight. I believe drivers stand to benefit from technology that cuts out some of the middlemen and gives them greater control over their work. But I also believe we have to reduce the regulatory burden these drivers face, because it puts them at a disadvantage while non-driving middlemen reap the benefit. This is why I support staff's recommendations to look at things like vehicle requirements, like vehicle inspections, like driver training, to relieve some of the unnecessary burdens on drivers. And finally, I would say to council that an attempt to ban Uber will not put the genie back in the bottle. That is where practicality and real objectivity come in. A look at other cities will show that these disruptive technologies don't just go away. An attempt to ban Uber would mean years of court fights, skyrocketing enforcement costs, thousands of tickets which would clog our streets and our courts, and Uber would still be operating. And so, Madam Speaker, I think we have to choose to regulate this technology and make sure that we don't fool ourselves into thinking it's just going to go away. What those regulations will look like is exactly what we're going to receive by way of report from Ms. Cook after she does this work and consults all of the industry players. And that is the time we'll be able to judge those regulations as to whether they create the level playing field or not. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Please, no disruptions, or I will ask you to leave. Okay, now we do have questions for you. Counselor Kergeianis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Clarification of the motion.
On the motion. Sir, by this motion, would you say that we are favoring a particular company and giving them a little bit of a leeway, and allowing them to continue doing what they're doing, and giving them a bit of a head start, or giving them a little bit of a favor?
I would say what we're going to do is take an entity that is operating at present the outside of the law, and to use the expression that's been used in this chamber several times today, capture them within our regulatory system, and then come forward with regulations that take account of today's reality in this business, that also represent a level playing field and equitable and fair regulatory framework.
Mr. Mayor, will we be favoring them? Will we be giving them an unfair advantage, yes or no, sir?
I don't believe that a fair and equitable regulatory framework that has a level playing field will favor anybody. It's not supposed to. When you say a fair, equitable regulatory framework and a level playing field, it clearly suggests that that, the objective is not to give anybody a favorable position.
Mr. Mayor, you're a lawyer.
Yes, I am.
And you've studied law.
Yes, I did.
So I'm going to ask you one more time, and you can use that training or any other training you want.
Counselor Kergeianis, please.
Why don't you ask him the same question? He answered.
Stop interrupting him.
And Counselor Mamalidi, you as well, please.
Would you want to put my time on hold, though?
No, I'm not putting your time on hold, not when you're speaking that way. Counselor Kergeianis, continue.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I would ask you again, we're giving them a little bit of an advantage, some sort of an advantage.
I, I'm sorry, sir, I completely reject that. What we are doing here is taking a company that has an advantage now by virtue of the fact they're operating outside the law, and that it's very difficult to enforce that circumstance, and we're bringing them inside the regulatory tent, and we are bringing them in, at least the desire and the instruction to our staff is to bring them in in a manner that creates a level playing field and a fair and equitable regulatory regime.
We're assisting them. Okay. Well, I will read you something, sir, that I have, and maybe you can want to answer to this. The City of Toronto Act, Section 82 states, 82.1, "Despite this or any other act, the city shall not assist directly or indirectly any manufacturing business or other industrial or commercial enterprise through the granting of bonuses from that purpose." Now, this goes on.
Counselor...
Point of privilege.
Counselor...
Point of privilege.
Counselor Matlow. Point of privilege.
Yeah. It embarrasses not only the mayor, but this council as a whole and this city. If there are questions that are leading to impugn somebody's...
Okay.
Impugn, impugn a member's motivation or intention when they're moving the motion, and what I'm hearing, that these questions are leading down that path, and I'd like to ask the Speaker to caution this member.
Yes, thank you. And Counselor Kergeianis, you are tasked to question, question to the mayor on his motion, clarification of his motion only, please.
I'm trying to do that, Speaker. If you want to shut me down, then...
No, you're not. If you're going to continue with those questioning, you...
Madam Speaker, you don't know where I'm going, so therefore, you have... I would like my time on hold, please, while you're doing this.
No, go ahead, ask your question.
Okay. Allow me to ask the question. Sir, if I was to put to you that with this motion, we're going down that direction, if I was to put to you that we're giving them an unfair advantage, if we allow them still to operate until this is done, will you disagree with me?
I would absolutely reject that with respect. I would say to you, what is going to happen here is that there will be a change to the law, as was just pointed out a moment ago, I think, by Ms. Cook, that brings them inside the regulatory tent. She will be able to continue then with her enforcement efforts in that regard, while she at the same time develops a regulatory framework that is adjusted in whatever way is necessary to make sure that the playing field on which taxis, limos, and other alternate ground transportation providers compete, and to make sure that that competition will be fair and equitable, and that most of all, the public is protected in terms of concerns they might have about safety or anything in that order.
But if we still allow them to operate between now and the time this comes in, wouldn't we be giving them an unfair advantage?
I think you just heard, I think you just heard Ms. Cook answer the question when she was asked by somebody, I think it was one of the counselors over here, maybe Ms. Wong-Tam or somebody, that, that, that she will be put in a better position to enforce the law, as she's been trying to do for the last number of months, as a result of the change contained in Recommendation One, which brings Uber, for the first time, based on the court decision, inside the regulatory tent. So quite the opposite to what you suggest. I think that this change will actually be something that Uber would not welcome, because it'll bring them inside the regulatory tent, and we will then, at the same time, be working on a fair and equitable, level playing field set of regulations going forward that will apply to the players, plural, that are in this business.
If between now and sometime in this vague 2016 that the motion says, Uber will still continue to operate. So therefore, will it be given an unfair advantage?
I apologize. I'm of the view, quite frankly, Counselor Kergeianis, it's one of the reasons why I think that people who suggest we can ban them are not in touch with the reality of how difficult that's going to be. I believe Uber will continue to operate in a number of circumstances, but what we, what, well, what we can hope for, I think, is that if we choose to regulate them and bring forward regulations that specifically apply to them as regards insurance, vehicle inspection, driver qualifications, and amendments that are necessary to relieve the regulatory burden, especially on drivers, that that runs a much fairer chance of ending up in a fairer situation that is in the interest of the traveling public and that is fair for Taxi Cab drivers and for other elements of the, of the ground transportation industry.
Thank, thank you. That was your last que... That was your last question. Counselor Mamalidi?
Mr., thanks, Madam Speaker. Mr. Mayor, I guess my question with respect to your amendment to the, to the council's, the committee's recommendations is, why do we have to defer yet again, after years and years of consultation, and years and years of our city staff going forward to get the reports that we've got in front of us?
I think the principal answer to that lies in the fact that at the time the previous review was going on and the new rules were drafted up, Uber was just an emerging factor in the marketplace. It really, as Ms. Cook said, we had a couple of meetings with them, they kind of wrote a letter or two or whatever, but there was no... Today, they have hundreds of thousands of users, they have thousands of drivers, and I think it is time that we modernized our regulatory regime in order to take account of the fact applications like that exist, and that the present arrangement is unfair, especially to taxi drivers.
Your answer is because Uber, Uber came along at the last minute, so we should perhaps spend another three years because of Uber, going through staff resources and city resources to deal with this? The committee recommendation, number one, says as follows, "To update the definitions of Taxi Cab broker and limousine service companies to explicitly provide that technology-based brokerage, brokerages, including Uber, are within the existing regulatory regime." So everything you just said is in Recommendation One of the committee. Why do we need to break again and spend another few months, I think, contributing to even more growth for Uber, because I think that's indirectly what we're going to be doing? Why do you want to do that when it's the recommendations right here?
I have just said that to the extent we then bring them within the regulatory framework for the first time.
It says here, "Are within the existing regulatory regime." It says it in the committee's recommendation, number one A.
Yes, and that is what is being asked to be approved here, and I've just said a moment ago in answer to a question from Counselor Kergeianis, that that will then put Ms. Cook and her office in a better position, the bylaw officers, to enforce the law, but that in the meantime, I believe, and look, I understand the fact there are others who don't share my view, but I believe that technology, not just confined to Uber, but technology and a number of these applications, make it necessary that we should modernize our regulations to take account of the existence of these applications and these ways of doing business as part of a fair, equitable regulatory regime for ground transportation, which in particular, as I've said many times, addresses some of the unfairnesses presently faced by the drivers.
Why wouldn't you be more specific, then, if that's really what you want to do?
Well, the unfairness...
Why wouldn't you take a number of different scenarios, like the energy-efficient vehicles, age-of-vehicle restrictions, all of that, and give direction to our staff to say, "These are the, these are the things that you must put in place"? Your, your deferral, because I see this as a deferral, really, is, is really an opportunity for, for us to look at how we can help Uber exist in the City of Toronto, and I just don't understand why we're trying to...
Far from it being, Madam Speaker, through you, far from it being a deferral, it specifically, in the wording of the recommendation at present, makes specific reference to a review of the fare structure, vehicle requirements, vehicle inspections, and Taxi Cab training. And I said to you earlier this morning, and I'll repeat it publicly now, if you want to add other things to that list...
You'll support it?
That should be, that should be, well, I mean, depending on what you add, the answer is yes, because I think...
I've got it right here. I'm going to move a motion later.
These are all things that should be reviewed within the context...
I've got it right here. You'll agree on the energy-efficient vehicle...
Counselor Mamalidi, please allow the mayor to answer the question.
All vehicles being accessible, city regulation fares, thermal checks registered with the city. You would agree with this if I moved it later? You'll vote in favor of this?
I am quite happy, subject to having a chance to look at your list, that, that, if we want to make sure there's a fair and equitable regulatory regime, that all those things certainly would warrant a review by the licensing...
A review? You're not going to vote in favor of them?
No, a review, that's, she's being asked to review all of these things. Look at what the wording says. She's asked to review the things I mentioned. If you say...
Okay. Okay, if I can have order. Okay, I'm, I'm going to ask the members from the public that if this continues, I will ask everyone in the council chambers to leave, to vacate the council chambers. I have given you numerous warnings, and this can't continue, please. Counselor Davis, you have a question.
So, Mr. Mayor, you know, I think, my position on Uber and my concern about your motion, and I want on the record, if I could, some answers to some questions. Are you prepared, and do you agree that, to support, and do you agree that we will have on the table, if your report comes back, or if the executive directors come back, regulations that will deal with supply of licenses, licensing, rates, fares, and all of the other regulations that currently exist in the system?
I, Madam Speaker, through you, I believe I heard Ms. Cook say this morning that she fully contemplated, when she was questioned specifically on, for example, the supply of vehicles, that that would be something she would address within the overall context of all of these things. And that's why I was quite prepared, to say I have no idea why people were unhappy with the fact I said, that, because this is a, maybe I shouldn't have called it a review, maybe I should have called it the preparation of a regulation to put forward to us.
So what you're saying is...
Again, please, I'm just trying to answer your question.
Counselor Davis, please.
If she, if she wishes to look at all these things, and she's directed to do so by us, I'm quite happy those things and all the things you mentioned should be part of as complete a review as possible, to make sure we emerge with a complete, fair, equitable, level-playing-field regulatory regime that is also modernized to take account of these technologies.
And this report would regulate both existing or all emerging, all ground transportation providers?
That is the idea. I mean, the idea is to make sure that we have regulations that apply to all of the ground transportation. That's why it says here, "alternate ground transportations," which are, I'm assuming, something other than a Taxi Cab or a Limousine, as presently defined.
However, you said if, if, in the end, we regulate.
If what?
Today, if your motion is approved, we are not agreeing today that we are regulating Uber.
Well, but...
We are asking for a report. Is that correct?
The paragraph...
If we approve your motion...
Paragraph one, paragraph one of the rec...
Oh, I understand that, yes.
Report does bring Uber inside the regulatory regime.
I understand that.
My wording then asks Ms. Cook and her staff to prepare a regulation that addresses this broader range of issues, all of which we've just finished...
But a level playing field, we are looking potentially at applying a level playing field to all ground providers, ground transportation providers.
What my motion said...
That means no special two-tier system for Uber.
My, I am also not going to try, I think it's Ms. Cook's job, quite frankly, and then our job to judge her work.
Right.
It's her job, if she follows the direction, which follows my wording, of a level playing field, to develop a bylaw, a draft bylaw, that defines that. And it will treat each of these items we've just talked about, mechanical fitness and driver checks and all that, in whatever way she recommends that creates that level playing field. And that is, that is what I'm looking forward to seeing, and that's when the real decision will come for us, here in this council chamber.
Right. So we aren't really making any decision today.
Yes, we are.
There are options other than in Recommendation One, and that will better enable us to enforce Uber, starting today. I understand that, we should be out there enforcing Uber the instant this bylaw is amended. But what I'm saying is, today, we will not be approving a set of regulations that will provide a... provide a separate set of distinct regulations for Uber, no two-tier. We may not, in the end, even agree on what those are. In fact, you and I, I'm sure, have a very different view on how to regulate a market and how to ensure that we get decent full-time jobs for drivers.
Counselor Davis, your question. Counselor Davis, your question.
Well, I will agree with you that we are not making a decision in respect of a particular bylaw today. We are making a couple of changes, one of which I think are very important, by the way. One is to do with bringing Uber into the regulatory system. Another one is to reduce the drop by a dollar. We would make that decision today if we approved this. And we are asking pursuant to my amendment, our executive director, to prepare a bylaw that will put forward her best-informed view with consultation of what a regulatory-level playing field and equitable regulatory framework would look like.
And at that point, we would--
At that point, we all come back here and we have this discussion again, but we have it with a proposed bylaw in front of us.
Or options.
Fine with me.
Range of options.
Yeah, well, she could do that. I guess that'll be up to her.
Thank you.
Counselor Shiner.
So.
He's busy holding my issues in Ward Seven.
Counselor McMahon.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Speaker, to the mayor. So with your motion, are you favoring one ground transportation provider over another?
No, the intent, Madam Speaker, is the exact opposite. The intent is -- what it does, I think, is it -- and that is why I said in my remarks that the principal matter that is really under debate here is whether we want to regulate Uber or whether we want to try to ban it. I personally, and it's my view, and I've spent a lot of time, as we all have, looking at this issue, is it's not practical to ban it. And as a result, then, I am saying, well, then, we should move to regulate it to make sure both that they operate in a way that is in the public interest with regard to safety and that is fair vis a vis the other participants in ground transportation. And so, far from advantaging anybody, I don't know how anybody would know it advantages anybody, because we're asking Ms. Cook and her staff to prepare a bylaw that sets out the level playing field, which assumes technologies like Uber are going to be here.
So since we cannot ban Uber, you feel that regulating them is the best way to control them and to help the public have a safe option for ground transportation that's existing there?
Through you, Madam Speaker, we've heard today, over and over again, that Uber is outside of the regulatory regime, and I think that to bring them in and then to amend the regulations in whatever way is necessary to make sure that it is possible for us to have a viable taxicab industry as part of the ground transportation system in the city, and that's what we're asking Ms. Cook to do, I think is the realistic, practical, sensible, honest way to go, because those who suggest that it is somehow going to be easy with the stroke of a pen or the wave of a wand or the sending of an email to ban Uber, I don't think are being realistic, and I think that is backed up by the experience in other cities all over the place, where they're choosing to go the kind of route we're going here as opposed to some other route.
So by saying you want to ensure a level playing field, it's a level playing field for all?
Well, it is a level playing field for all, but how that's defined is going to be the result of what the work that Ms. Cook does, so that I would view it as, for example, in my own mind, and I'm not -- she'll do what she does, but I think that we're going to have to reduce some of the requirements as they presently exist on things like vehicle inspection and driver checks and whatnot, and at the same time, we're going to regulate Uber and require them to do some of the same things. I've said before publicly to the media that the question of insurance is non-negotiable. We have to make sure the public can be assured of a certain minimum standard when it comes to insurance when they get in any vehicle that is governed by our regulatory regime. So on that, fair and level playing field will mean that there is a insurance bare minimum, you know, whatever the minimum standard is, that we say, "That's it. You don't go below that."
Thank you.
And everybody has to do it.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Perks.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Mr. Mayor, you got a glass of water? You're good?
Yep.
Take your time. I have that effect on people, I'm told.
Toronto's best.
Today, before we pass what's in front of us, it is -- there is a legal loophole that Uber is operating under. That's correct, am I right? If we pass--
They're operating outside the law.
They're operating outside the law, and that's bad for Trontonians, it's bad for who take taxis, it's bad for drivers, it's bad for everybody.
The legal regime that we have in place should take account of the reality of who's participating, and those who are participating should operate within the law.
So if we -- when we pass something today that includes one and your direction, that the executive director go do some consultation and bring us a proposal, the minute we pass that, Uber's illegal if they are operating with non-licensed drivers in non-licensed vehicles.
Uber will then be inside the law, and I think we've heard our executive director comment on the fact that that will make it a clearer situation vis a vis what the law provides for and who's in it and who's not.
Yeah.
And I think the same enforcement challenge remains in the sense that while they're inside the law, the notion of taking a service that has 300,000 users and several thousand drivers and sort of having them all shut down, which is, I think, what people believe could happen, I'm saying I don't think that's realistic, but yes, they will be within the law after this amendment--
They'll be governed by us.
--and we then have to do the detailed work of providing the fair and equitable playing field for these different players inside the--
And when you talk about a level playing field, to help me to understand, you don't mean that some drivers are licensed and some are not?
I just referred to the question of insurance as a good example. I mean, I don't think there's any -- what's the word I'm looking for? There's any room for any kind of doubt about insurance, and so--
No two tiers on insurance.
Well, no, but there could be a different way to do it. That's something that I think Ms. Cook's going to have to decide. But, no, but I see, again, people can laugh, but I wouldn't know anything about the product that is presently in front of the provincial regulator that has to do--
If I could, that's I can help.
That's I can help.
You're trying to establish--
Counselor Perks, hold on, I put your time on hold.
No, let them keep going. I want to hear how they're going to work together on this.
Count, count.
Happy to help, Giorgio.
I want to see what you do, Perks.
Yeah.
Okay, this, I just want to tell the members of the public that are in here that this is your last warning. Any further disruptions, I will recess for five minutes and ask the security to escort you out of the council chambers. This is your last warning.
I'll only say respectfully, Madam Speaker, I think they're being relatively compliant with your requests, and I hope, because I think it would be a sad commentary if we had to have the people not here to hear this debate, whatever their part of view might be.
So, Mr. Mayor, your intention would be that every single person who is driving somebody for a fare carries insurance that protects anybody who's hit, anybody who's in the car?
Yes, but what I was just trying to say--
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
There is presently a tool in front of the provincial insurance regulator that Uber, I gather, has put there. I haven't seen it, I don't know anything about it, and I think it's possible, is all I'm saying, that the executive director may find that a satisfactory way of making sure that they have the same burden on them--
Same burden, there we go.
--to insure themselves and make sure their rider is protected as the current requirements. I'm not going to judge that. That's why she's going to do the work. She's a public servant, she's objective, she's going to consult. That's what this whole exercise is supposed to be about, but the question of insurance and safety is not for debate, I don't think.
Right. So there, I think that's where we're trying to get. Further, you wouldn't want to see a system where some people in the industry had to, you know, go through an expensive process in order to be on the road and some others did not.
You know, Counselor, I say through the speaker--
This has to do with the motion.
--that the difference between a 17-day course, if that's what it is--
Point of order.
Stop my time, please.
Point of order, Counselor Mamalidi?
When I stand up and ask questions, and sometimes, granted, I go off sometimes, you're the first one to tell me to stick to the motion. You've allowed Counselor Perks to, in many ways, set it up so that the mayor responds the way he wants, but it's off of the motion. It's got nothing to do with his motion, nothing.
Counselor Mamalidi--
And so I just ask that the same objections from the speaker that you show Counselor Mamalidi more often than not, you give to Counselor Perks and others that do the same thing.
I don't like what I'm seeing here.
Okay. Okay, hold on.
And I'll say to Counselor Mamalidi respectfully that he's asking questions that directly speak to the question of what a level playing field is, and that's the words I used.
Yep.
And I'll clarify that when it comes to the driver qualifications--
Okay, hold on, hold on, I have your time on hold, so we want to -- Counselor Perks, you're going to continue with your questions and to--
I hope so, and I hope that Counselor Mamalidi's right, that I can now tell the mayor what to think. That's great.
Counselor Mamalidi, to your point of order, I believe that Counselor--
I want to hear your vote, Perks.
Counselor Perks, is questions is in order? So Counselor Perks, continue, sorry, Mr. Mayor? Okay, let's continue the time.
I'm answering his last question, which is to say there's a big difference between a 17-day course and a video, and that somehow that gap has to be closed, because at the end of the day, it's not fair. And so, you know, we have to decide what's in the public interest and what's fair as between the various people who participate in this industry, and I would just say a gap between a 17-day course, if that's what it is, and a video is a gap that is inexplicable to anybody. It's not fair, and we have to fix that.
Good, thank you. Furthermore, you mentioned in your remarks that whatever level playing field, the regulation that comes back, you want to make sure that people can earn a reasonable living driving a taxi. That's part of what you would be looking for in the motion that you've moved.
Yes, I realize that before -- I know from being a talk show host and I know from being a provincial politician that long before Uber was here, I was riding around, especially as a talk show host, with cab drivers who were telling me at that time how much trouble they were having, drivers, how much trouble they were having making a living. And I think what we have to address through examining the fair structure, the regulatory burdens and different things, is ways we can make that a more viable way to make a living, including in the face of competition, whether it's coming from one particular company or from some other place we don't even know about yet that's coming through the technological advances. So, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Layton.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and through you to the mayor, and they may have been answered already, but just so we get a little bit of clarity here on this level playing field. If it turns out that staff come back with a recommendation of how a one-tiered system would operate and we are -- and council passes that motion, and perhaps any company, one in particular, but any company gives us the other half of that peace sign and says, "We don't like the level playing field," are we saying here that that's when we would say, "Well, that's too far. You can't continue to operate outside of a regulatory system"?
If we pass that bylaw, and in our judgment, therefore, we passed it saying this represents an appropriate playing field, a level playing field in the public interest and in the interest of fair competition between and among those who want to be in the ground transportation industry, and anybody defies that law, then we have to move to enforce that law as best we can. And so, the answer to your question is, we have to move to enforce the law. If we've passed it here, we've considered it carefully, we've asked our experts for advice, and we've come forward with a new regulatory framework, and somebody chooses to ignore that, we treat them the same way as we treat other people who break the law, you know, which is we have to enforce the law.
So it's not us going down, taking a step down in the standards? We could also assume it's bringing everyone up?
I look at it exactly that way, which is what we're doing today is taking the first step of what we're going to prescribe as two. The first one today is to bring Uber inside or capture them inside the regulatory system, to use that expression that's been used, and follow that up with a regulatory regime that, for the first time, provides them with detailed regulations and obviously combines that with what are fairer and more equitable regulations between them and the cab industry and the limousines as participants in ground transportation.
So for instance, and I don't want to use too many examples here, specific examples, but if it turns out, we've heard about the insurance piece, we've heard about the driver education, I agree with both of those things, that right now we have a very large discrepancy between the both, but if it turns out that the recommendation made and council adopts a policy that would limit the number of drivers on the road at any given time, because, for example, it creates additional congestion on our roads and additional environmental concerns, would that be one of those fair playing field that you'd be prepared to adopt?
I am saying to you that I, through you, Madam Speaker, that I am prepared to leave that work to Ms. Cook and her staff, and if they come back with that as saying, "This is our best judgment as to how this system can work best in the public interest and in the interest of fair, level-playing-field competition, equitable regulation as between the different players," that I will consider that at that time. I'm not ruling anything out, because I think it may be that she comes back with any number of things that says, "This is my best judgment as to what a fair, level-playing-field regulatory environment is."
But the request to build a level playing field, that also not only includes insurance and the education and the -- but it also includes the costs associated with driving vehicles, like the payments that are made for licenses, the mortgages that some of the drivers may have taken out to get a plate, or the fees that are being paid to the plate owners by the shift drivers.
Absolutely. I mean, again, I have, as people would tell you from the staff when I've talked to them about this, I have said, again, you can't perpetuate a system where I think owners pay 1,200, drivers pay 500, and you have these other people participating in this industry paying nothing, and to cover even the cost of Ms. Cook's operation, which I think is what those fees are meant to cover. And so, obviously, I would certainly expect, and I'm just saying I would expect this as, and it's not enumerated on that list that's in the recommendations, but I would expect there will be recommendations with respect to what fees people should take in order to make sure there's not an unfairness between what a taxi driver or others in the taxi industry have to pay and what a person with an alternate ground transportation provider has to pay. It should be addressed.
So just to sum it up, the level playing field not only involves insurance and driver training, but we're looking at all of the factors that play into the cost to the drivers and getting these vehicles on the road.
In trying to agree, Madam Speaker, with Counselor Mamalidi on his list, and I have no idea if his list is the complete one, maybe there isn't such a thing, I have said, to me, it should all be on the table, with the objective being at the end to produce a level-playing-field regulatory framework that makes it viable for taxis and a particular taxi drivers to earn a living and makes it, and realistically accepts the fact there are going to be other players coming into this industry, some we don't even know about yet.
You should bring your foot today and put your foot down. This has been going on for hours.
Okay, can I ask the security to have them removed, please? Thank you. Counselor DeGiorgio--
Mr. Mayor, I want to pick up on--
Oh, hold on, I have--
[beep]
I don't know, Counsel--
I want to pick up on--
Okay, hold on, hold on.
I think she does it on purpose. I'm out of order, out of order.
No, Counselor DeGiorgio, when I push your name, Counselor McMahon's name comes up, so there's something wrong. So do you want to move over to Counselor McMahon's?
Her light, her mic's on.
Okay, it's on, yes. So can you speak, can you ask a question from there, because yours doesn't work?
Sure. Let me pick up on a question that I asked by Counselor Davis, and she basically asked you, Mr. Mayor, "Is it your expectation that once this review is done, we're going to arrive at a regulatory system that provides high-quality service, provides consumer protection, consumer safety, and an opportunity for full-time jobs for everyone in the industry?"
Yes, and perhaps, Madam Speaker, through you, I, you know, when I use the word "review," the better word, I guess, to use is the work product, the result of what Ms. Cook is being asked to do if we move forward with this recommendation, is to produce a draft bylaw. And the draft bylaw would have as its objective, that I can't remember all of your words, but that we have a safe, convenient, reliable, fair system in which people can earn their living in the ground transportation industry, but in fairness, it also takes into account there are other technologies that have come in, and that's the part where I agree. Some people differ with me. I say these technologies are here, I say that we have to take account of them being here and include them in the regulatory system in a way that's fair and allows for fair competition. Other people say ban it. I don't think that's practical.
Okay. Second question is, just to differentiate between Uber and Uber X, my understanding is that Uber can basically abide by the rules today. What we're talking about is really a review that seeks to accommodate Uber X. Is that a fair statement?
It is a review, or it's drafting up a new set of regulations, Madam Speaker, that takes account of the fact there are other people going to be participating in ground transportation, especially as regards technology. And I answered Counselor Ford's question straight up earlier on when he said, "Have I used Uber?", and the answer is, "Yes, I've used Uber only to get a licensed taxi." And there's, I don't think anybody has any complaint. I think we heard earlier on, there are 1,300 taxi drivers, licensed taxi drivers, they're following the rules, they're not doing anything wrong, and they're signed up to Uber.
No one is seeking to ban Uber. Would you agree?
No, I don't. With respect, I've been in meetings where people have said to me, I've turned to people in the taxicab industry and said, "What could we do to make the system fair?", and their answer is, "Ban Uber." And I said, "Well, no, no, assuming that's not really practical, what else could we do?", and they said, "Ban Uber." I've been in those meetings, I didn't mishear or misread a memo, I heard it.
That's not what I've heard, but that's fine. That's not what I've heard, but that's fine. Would you agree with me that one of the two underlying sort of regulations that have existed in the industry for a long, long time are, first of all, that the city will control the number of cars that are licensed and that will be on the road? Is that, is that something that will be an essential ingredient of this review that comes up?
Madam Speaker, through you, the city has controlled the number of vehicles that are operating within the sort of, the regulated ground transportation system. We're now bringing another player inside that regulatory system, and I have an answer to questions, and I heard before I got on my feet, the executive director saying that supply of vehicles, when someone asked her, would be one of those things, of course, that you have to take into account. And so, I'm assuming all those things and all the other ones that have been enumerated, inspections and driver qualifications and insurance and fair structure, is, are going to be on the table. How else could you have an overall review of a, a modernized regulatory system?
Understood, but do you envision the city continuing to, to control the supply of licensed vehicles?
I, you see, I could stand here and go through each of those items, what do I envision on insurance, what do I envision on driver inspections? I envision a system that is fair and equitable, so that you make sure that the people, there's no point in having an industry in which the people who are participating in it, whoever they are, whoever they work with, can't make a living.
I understand.
And that's going to be bad for the public in the end, because if those people are having trouble making a living, then the service is going to start to suffer and the public pays a price for that. And so, I, I can't presume though what Ms. Cook will hear in her consultations or what she will recommend.
What I'm asking is, if Ms. Cook comes forward with some regulation, will she give us scenarios where she says, "Okay, here's the city controlling the number of cars, twenty thousand cars on the road. Here's another scenario, the city will ensure that we have thirty thousand cars on the road, or the city will ensure that we have forty thousand cars on the road." Is that the kind of review? Anyway, let me just, let me just leave that alone, because I have one final question.
Well, I'll just say, you asked me a question, I will, Madam Speaker, look at anything Ms. Cook brings forward as her considered judgment after consultation with an open mind. I think that's what we all should do, and I certainly promise that that's what I will do.
And then my last question, Mr. Mayor. Would you agree that another very important regulation that we have to look at is that vehicles that are on the road will be driven only, that is, all drivers will be driving licensed vehicles only? Is that a fundamental regulation that we can live with?
Well, I mean, again, I think that she's going to come back with what, what the regulatory regime is that, 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 that should apply to the different elements of the ground tra, there are different, I mean, people laugh at this, there are differences today between how limousines and taxis are treated, within the same bylaw. So there may be differences, I have no idea what they'll be. That's why I keep saying she will come back with what she thinks is her best considered judgment as an objective public servant. And I am not going to stand here and either predict what she'll do or judge in advance things that she might bring forward. I just want it to be for myself, and I believe for the people of Toronto, who are the ones I really worry about, for the traveling public and the drivers, a fair, equitable, modernized system that takes account of reality and that is fair for the people who participate in it as passengers and as workers.
Thank you. Councillor McConnell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry to prolong this more, but I do think that it's important for these messages to get out. Am I, your, your amendment, in fact, may result in drivers taking more money home when it comes back, is that not correct?
Taking, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Taking more money home to their families.
I, I believe, from what I've read in the research and from what I've been told, that the proposal to, to reduce the drop here by a dollar actually will be beneficial to the drivers. And that certainly was in my mind when I, I said I wanted to support this. I'm told, just since you asked, that the ten percent reduction in the fares won't benefit the drivers.
That's correct.
And as a result, I will not be supporting that.
Great.
Because I'm told it won't benefit drivers in terms of them putting more money in their pockets. So that's where I'll be on this, but the sole reason for doing this now, the dollar, is to make it more viable for taxi drivers in particular to earn a living and to compete in the circumstances while we draw up the bylaw.
Right. So if one set of drivers can get away with a hun, a thousand dollars in insurance, and another group have to have eleven thousand dollars in, in, in insurance, you would agree, that's not a fair, level playing field, and that, that perhaps Ms. Cook will come back with something that will make it fair, whether that's to reduce the eleven or whatever under the regulations as they work with the province. Is that right?
Madam Speaker, I will simply say this, it is highly unlikely that one group gets the same insurance provided to passengers and drivers for a one thousand, and the other people get it for eleven thousand.
Absolutely.
So somehow, we've got to come to grips with that, just like the seventeen days and the video.
That's right.
We've got to say, "Look, if we're going to have people participating and driving the public around in this industry, and we want them to be safe, and we want them to be well-trained, then we're going to have to have a standard we set, and maybe we'll find there's some miracle thousand-dollar insurance product that provides the same protection, I don't know." But I'm sure saying that it looks unlikely you're going to get the same thing for a thousand dollars and for eleven thousand dollars.
And similarly, we can't have people driving customers and Torontonians around who haven't had police checks or who, who we are not sure are safe human beings as we have and have checked out with our drivers. Is that not correct?
I would say, Madam Speaker, that it is our job to, to prescribe a minimum safety check
Yes.
...standard that we think is applicable, and then it applies to everybody.
Everybody. And so, really, what your recommendation does is to simply ask Ms. Cook to bring back the rules that will occur for Uber and for, and for Maple Leaf and for Ambassador and for independents and for absolutely everybody. Is that not correct?
Yes, but subject only to this, which is that I would say that in 2015, it is possible, it is possible that some people may have a different way of getting to the same objective that achieves exactly the same result in a different way. And I'm not saying right now that I'm prepared to reject that before I even hear what it is.
I understand that, but the rules will be the rules, and Uber right now is outside the rules. Is that not right?
They're utterly outside the rules.
Utterly. And so, if in fact, we receive the item that has been deferred, they will now be required to, to follow the rules that everybody else is following, and if they don't, then Ms., Ms. Cook can in fact enforce better our requirements. Is that not correct?
Madam Speaker, she was asked a question earlier on today, and I heard her say that she will continue to enforce the law with this change, it might make it easier for her. I still think it's a
So on the first one, the deferred item, which really would make the rules, our current rules, which need to be adjusted, but our current rules apply to Uber, you support the receipt which would enable us to move forward with the taxi reforms. Is that not correct?
This, this recommendation here today is going to bring Uber inside the regulatory tent, should make it easier for Ms. Cook to enforce the law.
Yes.
And I support that, because I think people should abide by the law, and if it makes it easier for her to enforce the law, she should go ahead and do so.
So if they've got drivers out there that are unlicensed, untrained, and, and uninsured, they are going to get hit, is that right, if we pass the first deferred item? Isn't that right?
We've discussed over and over again here today, all around this chamber, the fact that even with the change to the law, the practicalities of enforcing the law
I understand.
Are very difficult.
Yes.
And so, if you
So it's not going to be swell, but between now and the final rules coming down, is it not right that you will have more tools to be able to enforce? Maybe not enough people to do it, but
I think, Madam Speaker, she'll be in a better position to enforce the law, but I think, I, I want to make it clear, from where I sit, to the public and to the people in the industry, if they think this represents a miracle cure,
It does not.
I don't think it does. That's why we have to do the work on modernizing the regulations, to take account of something that otherwise I think will just somehow go underground and, and be probably worse than before. So I, I, that's why I think the two parts to this, the initial step and the follow-up by Ms. Cook, are essential things that go together.
Thank you, that, that was your last question. And if I can ask the mayor, please, when you're speaking, if you can speak in your mic? I know that you want to look at councillor McConnell when you're answering your questions, but it's because it's hard to hear from this end. Councillor Matlow, you're up.
Through you to the mayor. While, while we've all heard a lot of rhetoric from various people, whether it be about Ms. Cook, or about you, or about various people's motivations, I hear all that noise, but I'm reading your motion directly, and, and I'm struggling to see anything there that reflects some of the comments that we've heard today and other days before. And so I'm just going to read it once again, just to confirm that your intent is what you in fact penned on this paper. That City Council requests the Executive Director of Municipal Licensing and Standards to report back to the Licensing and Standards Committee in 2016 on a framework to regulate alternate ground transportation providers, and to begin consulting on the appropriate regulations to ensure a level playing field in the ground transportation industry. Sir, do you understand in any way how a lot of the rhetoric that we've heard in any way reflects or connects to anything that you have actually written yourself here in front of us today?
Well, through you, Madam Speaker, I, I don't, I don't even begin to try to interpret a lot of what is said in here and how it relates to, to, you know, what we're trying to do here. I know what I'm trying to do. And in fairness to us, as we put this together in consultation with others, we might have reversed the order of those clauses and said to consult on the appropriate regulations and then to bring forward a new framework to regulate alternate service providers. But the result is the same. A fair, equitable, realistic 2015 set of regulations that acknowledges that, that these technologies are not going to go away, there'll probably be more of them, and that we have to take account of that in, in regulating these industries and in protecting the public.
And I only have one other question for you, Mayor Tory, because I think it's important for the public and perhaps the media here to understand how this even came about. This wasn't you just, I mean, I know other mayors have had other models. Some mayors, for example, have sort of just rushed ahead and done things to get credit for things, and then things fall apart and nothing gets done. That's one model. What I understand you did is that you and your staff reached out to members of council, you tried to arrive at a consensus motion, and members of council had various disparate, different ideas of what this should look like, but you tried to arrive at something that would be, you know, workable and that we could move forward with. Is that not how, how you approached this?
Yes, and I respect the fact that there are some people in this council who have very, very strongly formed views that really didn't want to participate in discussions about how we could construct a regulatory framework going forward that I consider to be realistic in the context of what's going on in the world, not just Toronto, and not just Uber. But I respect that. I mean, I, that's what this place is all about, differing opinions. I wanted to see if we could forge a consensus, not on what the rule is itself, but on the instructions we give to Ms. Cook to go away and solve a problem that is a damaging problem for cab drivers, is a damaging problem for confidence in the regulatory regime, even with the public, when they should know for sure when they get in a cab, that there's a certain insurance standard that applies, whatever that is. And so, I am trusting in Ms. Cook and her staff, and the consultation they will do, to come back with something that does as best they believe, just that. And, and I, I think the consensus, I hope, will support that exercise as a result of the vote we'll have today.
So to be clear, you're not, you're not arbitrarily trying to prescribe what might come back in the report, you're, you're simply saying, you know, you're, we're not here to, to advocate for Uber or any other company, we're not here to advocate for the taxi industry, we're, we're here to, to, to make an evidence-based decision about what we should do to support Torontonians and, and to find an equitable resolution to this matter.
I've had people say that I own Uber. I would have gone out for a good lunch today if I had. I have had, I've had people suggest that, I've had people suggest I do business with them somehow, I've had them make all kinds of suggestions. From the first day I was asked about this, before I was sworn in as mayor, I simply said that the notion we can turn back the hands of time with respect to the disruption caused by technology, I went through this. I ran a company that used to have two hundred and fifty video stores, and all the people who worked there that were part of the family of employees that I was responsible for. And guess what? Technology forced us to change the way those stores operated, because there were no more videos to rent and no more DVDs to rent, because technology took that over. And we could talk about newspapers, we could talk about the television business, we could talk about all kinds of businesses. I'm just trying to be realistic and honest here in saying what we have to do is modernize these regulations and make sure in so doing that we are fair and equitable between the participants in the industry and fair to the people who make their living in this industry, driving other people around, and fair to the public in terms of the standards they have the right to expect on safety and those kinds of things.
Thank you.
Councillor Moser.
Thank you. My question is around fair and equitable. We're going to do the review, which I support. At the end of the day, we put in regulations into place, and the, one of the factors is the money element, one of the factors is the regulation part of this. The regulations come down, and one of, one of the proponents has much more of an advantage financially than the other. How do we, how do we regulate that playing field? Suppose Uber finds a method of doing things much more efficiently. They, they can deliver that service much more efficiently, I'm just using that as an example. And all of a sudden, we don't have a financial level playing field. How do we address that as a council?
Well, I think, I think that, Madam Speaker, through you, that if, if we see somebody that supposedly has a fair, a more efficient way of doing things, the first thing we should do is see if that could be, you know, applied to the other part of the industry that isn't doing it that way. I mean, I, I note with interest today that what's going on now as a result of this whole evolution is the cab companies, the brokerages companies, adopting apps very similar to what Uber does, and that's the kind of change, which by the way, I think is in the public interest broadly taken, because now the public is better served. But I think our objective sure has to be to take the ones that we can easily resolve, like huge gaps between the cost of being a taxi driver and the cost of being an Uber driver, which is zero, or basically zero, and fix that, and make sure the insurance standards are, you know, are, are such that the public knows they're getting the same insurance, whichever kind of car they get into. And if there are some that are left over after that that appear still to be somehow inequitable, I guess that's what we'll sit here and talk about when her report comes back.
And how do we handle the, the financial end of it, if, if one has a huge advantage once we put the regulations in place, and attain the, attain the fair and equitable part of this? So, you know, because one, one, one can work more efficiently, or one, you know, is part of this. So, how do we, how do we level that playing field?
I, I assume, Madam Speaker, that you're referring to the fair structure, and the fair structure is specifically included in the present report that is in front of you for approval to ask Ms. Cook to look at the fair structure, among other things. So we're addressing that a little bit as a sign of good faith and as perhaps an urgent way to, to rectify some of that financial imbalance at present by taking the drop-down by a dollar, but if there are significant additional changes that should be made to the fair structure that will provide for a viable living for people in the industry, but also a fairer competition, well then, I guess Ms. Cook will recommend that.
Well, it, it talks to how far we regulate within the industry. If somebody can do something more efficiently in the private sector, usually that person wins, right? So if we put some regulations in place, all of a sudden, Uber, even with those regulations, has, has an advantage, and we're promoting a level playing field. How, how do we, how do we handle that? We're, we're saying we're, we're going to have a level playing field. The part of that is the financial aspect of it.
Councillor Moser, please, clarification of the motion.
That's, that, it says fair and equitable playing field, that's what I'm asking about.
Yes, he, he did ask about that, Madam Speaker, but I, look, I, I, you can get into all the nitty-gritty of trying to define exactly what fair and level and fair and equitable playing field means. I think that what we have to look for here, I mean, there's a situation, I suppose, now where a brokerage could say, "We're going to give you a two-for-one deal," or "Give you a free ride if you take ten," and that may be seen as different than what other people do. There's things people do within competition that our rules might not be able to cover, but I think in terms of the framework of regulations, the requirements we place on different participants in the industry, that, that we have to make sure those are fair and equitable, and it's a level playing field. And again, that's the work Ms. Cook and her staff are going to do, and then it will be up to us to judge, as it is with everything else, whether we approve that work or change it, or, or don't approve it. And I will look forward to her report.
Councillor Bala.
Madam Speaker, I just, I just have a couple of questions, just to make sure I'm hearing right, to, through you, Madam Speaker. Mr. Mayor, I believe that you're saying that this is much bigger than just one company. This is about the industry and regulators being challenged.
Yeah, yeah, it's about, yes, it's about the established order, whether it be regulations or whether it be just an industry. Even if it wasn't a regulated industry, this technology would be very disruptive to the status quo, and has been already. And so it is about sort of taking account of that reality, which is not going to go away, and finding ways that our regulatory structure can be modernized and made fair and equitable and modern.
And consumer satisfaction. Our consumers are really not happy, otherwise we wouldn't have 17,000 rides outside the industry that we have and outside the regulations that we have.
I would agree with that. I mean, consumers are using this technology as they might use Lyft or some of the others because they're not satisfied. Now, I know some people would say, and I would agree with them, well, in part, that's because this entrant has been able to operate at a lesser price structure because they don't necessarily have to buy the same insurance or they don't have to go through the 17-day course and whatever. And so that's what we're trying to rectify, and then they will abide by those rules, as will everybody else, and you will have something that's good for the public because they'll have more choice and more competition and good for those who are in the industry because they'll have clarity and fairness.
But they're forcing us to question, and I think it's healthy in industries, the way that we're regulating. Because at the end of the day, what we need to keep in mind in this chamber is the consumer. Consumer, safety, public safety, environmental protection. Is that right? That's what we need to keep. At the end of the day, we have to work with the industry, and as regulators, we have to keep in mind consumer protection, public safety, and environmental protection.
I 100% agree with that, and I think one of the things the public is telling us by their use of Uber, and they don't really focus on whether it's legal or not legal or within the law or captured by the law, what they are telling us is, we probably, and when I say we, I wasn't here, but I think we collectively have to take the responsibility for having pushed prices up too high because we do set the price. And so by taking it down by a dollar on the drop, we're acknowledging that fact. That's not the fault of anybody here. That was done in this room.
Absolutely.
And so I'm saying, take it down by a dollar, ask Ms. Cook to review what further changes maybe have to be made to take account of the fact that people are saying to us, 300,000 of them or more, we're going to go for a cheaper option. But at the same time, we have to make sure the cheaper option is having to abide by the same rules as other people so that it's a fair competition.
So by approving this motion, we'll be rolling up our sleeves and saying, yes, we know that we have played a role in the scenario that we have in front of us. We're asking the industry to come to the table with us and listen to the consumers and create a regulatory system that is fair and equitable, and it's going to provide a service that the consumer is actually satisfied with.
Yes, and we're saying, please, to all the people in the industry, come in good faith. Come with a view to producing a modernized 2015 regulatory regime. Don't come and simply repeat the same old stuff because the same old stuff is not applicable anymore. It's 2015. The same old stuff wasn't good for drivers. It wasn't good for passengers. They were all saying they were unhappy, and now we're saying, let's do a better job for that public that you referred to.
And at the end of the day, when we go through this exercise, whoever wants to play by our rules will play by our rules, and whoever doesn't can go away.
Those will be the new rules. And if we've modernized them and made them fair and equitable, then people will have to play by them, especially after we've consulted in putting those rules together. And so, yes, the new rules will be meant to be modern, fair, making sure everybody's viable in the industry, and then people will compete.
Thank you. Counselor DeBermaker, questions?
Yes. Thank you very much, through Madam Speaker, to the mayor. And, Mr. Mayor, not to repeat Counselor Bylaw's questions, mine are very similar. They're very good questions, and I appreciate the extraordinary amount of time that you've put into this file when you've got a very long list of files. I'm, I've just sent the clerks an amendment, which I'll show you offline. My amendment to your motion would affect, I think is complimentary to your motion. So to clarify your motion, your motion doesn't intend to take away from public safety or environment or consumer protection like Counselor Bylaw just asked you. So if I was to move an amendment that the report include maintaining and/or strengthening consumer protection, public safety, philosophically, you're fine with that. The intent of your motion is not to weaken things, it's to maintain or even improve if we could.
No, I would only say this, through you, Madam Speaker, to the deputy mayor, that we have to make sure in so doing, maintaining or strengthening the things you talked about, that we don't, in so doing, dramatically affect the viability of making a living in this business for those who are especially driving. Because, you know, you can keep piling these things on, and maybe that's what we did with the fares. We kept taking them up and up and up and up, and sometimes at the request of the industry, but other times, I don't know, because we just thought it was a good idea. And we may have priced that taxi cab industry sort of out of people's range. So I'd say, yes, anything that's in the public interest, we should be considering, but we have to be careful that we retain a viable industry in which people can make a living and provide good service.
Through Madam Speaker, and because this is, your motion is asking for a staff report, so, and again, mine lists some of the things that are already in our municipal act, such as the insurance, plus is the criminal, like the criminal check, such as the maintaining proper vehicle safety. That's in the motion, but that, you're saying, we'll go to staff, they will do their due diligence, they will come up with either the same way or a better way or a different way to protect the public and to do all the good things that we want to do.
I trust, Deputy Mayor, I say to you through the speaker, that what they will do is that balancing act the staff always have to do, as I think we do, which is as between the viability of an industry and the regulatory burden we place on them, and ultimately, what we're here to serve most importantly, which is the public interest in making sure they can have safe, affordable, reliable, and technologically advanced service in 2015.
Great. And through Madam Speaker, and I am aware, people have asked similar questions of you already, and you said, I don't want to go down a checklist of every single thing. I've been on the committee, so to clarify for your motion, I've been on the licensing committee for five years. Of great importance to me is those high-resolution security cameras that I do believe act as a deterrent for inappropriate behavior from the public towards a driver, hitting him or attacking him, or from a driver doing something inappropriate to a passenger. So if our staff will look at that as one example, and your motion would allow them to look at that. Security cameras, they should look at.
I say to the deputy mayor, through you, Madam Speaker, I have an open mind on this, and I've heard Ms. Cook say that since the advent of those cameras, that there has been a reduction in the number of incidents that have happened, that that has to be deemed in the public interest in terms of safe transportation. And I think it's probably beneficial to drivers, too, because there's a video record of what went on. So if you said to me, am I open-minded about that being one of the things she looks at? I mean, look, there'd reach a point in the list, if we went down, and you said, well, we're going to specify what kind of tires you buy and where they're bought, I'd say, well, that's getting a bit silly. But I think things like this are perfectly logical for her and her staff to look at as part of this overall review. And it is, again, back to the point, it is a present burden we place on the taxi people that is not placed on Uber people. So we should have that discussion and say, why not?
Right. And although we don't want to get too detailed, again, one of the things that I've done on licensing committee is, well, this council has now adopted the requirement to put snow tires on cabs in winter for public safety. That's actually in our municipal code now. So that, without predicting the outcome, that is something you think, right down to snow tires, maybe not who they buy them from or what type of snow tires, but having snow tires is something that is legitimately.
I'll be honest in saying, Madam Speaker, I didn't even know we'd required snow tires when I used the tire example. I should have used spark plugs, or that's even an outdated concept. But having said that, I think, again, what Ms. Cook's job is to do with her team, and then our job ultimately, is to look at what she brings back that addresses the discrepancies between how the cab industry and the limo industry are presently regulated and how Uber should be regulated, and brings us a report that brings a fair, equitable regulatory scheme going down that checklist of all the different things we expect taxi drivers and taxi industry people to do, and that she will present something that she thinks is fair and equitable, and we will judge that.
Thank you, and again, thank you very much for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Ford on the motion.
Mr. Mayor, are you aware of Project Snowball, where 12 drivers are charged at 12 Division?
No, I'm not.
You're not aware of that?
No.
Thank you very much. Don't worry.
You know, I can answer the question by, yeah, no, no, no. I can answer the question by saying, I suspect there are a fair number of, there's a fair number of things out of this book that I could ask Counselor, out of this book, that I could ask Counselor Ford, he knows about, and he probably doesn't. Quite a few, I expect, Madam Speaker.
But 12 Division is in my ward, Counselor Ford. Counselor Ainsley, you're good? Okay, that's it for the questions to the mayor. Counselor Mamalidi to speak.
Madam Speaker, I'm going to move an amendment to the mayor's motion. It reads as follows. At the end of this motion, it says, "And city council requests the executive directive municipal licensing standards to include in the framework current taxi regulations such as energy-efficient vehicles, age-of-vehicle restrictions, all vehicles be accessible, city-regulated fares, criminal checks registered with the city." And I would encourage anyone else that has anything else that they would like this to include, to stand up and include them in your amendments to the mayor's motion. And I, sorry, Madam Speaker, I would, I would also suggest to, just based on what I'm seeing in the council chamber over the last few hours, I would suggest that anybody that's here from the taxi industry to meet me outside because I will give them a copy of all the votes that take place today so that they can see for themselves where councillors actually stand on this particular issue. This particular issue needs to end today. There is no more room for consultation on this issue. The mayor has brought forward a motion.
Okay, just one moment, we have a point to privilege by Counselor McMahon.
Of course we do.
Counselor McMahon?
Why don't you just let me speak?
Okay, Counselor Mamalidi, hold on. Counselor McMahon, your point of privilege?
I interpret that comment, and I am proud of all my votes in this chamber, so I am not afraid for them. They are public. But I interpret that comment of meeting people outside so everyone knows how councillors voted, I interpret that as a threat.
I have the right to ask for the recorded votes on any issue, and I have the right to share it with the public, and I choose to do that after the speech.
Yes, and Counselor McMahon, if there's a recorded vote, it's all public. So any member of council can give the copy of the votes to anyone they want to give. Okay, thank you. Counselor Mamalidi, continue.
So the mayor has moved the motion. In my opinion, it's already addressed in, number one, in the committee's recommendation. That's what's in front of us, we should agree to it and move forward because our staff will come forward with the appropriate measures with that, and we all know that. And we all know what this really means in terms of yet another delay and yet another staff report on this. What it really means is we're about to give Uber X and Uber the teeth that they've always wanted. We're about, at a moment, a pivotal moment in this council chamber, a moment we're supposed to get rid of this once and for all, deal with it, regulate it the way everybody's been asking for, we find another reason to delay. Only this one has nothing to do with regulation. This has to do with, let's make sure we delay a little longer so that we can make Uber X a little richer, we can make sure that they steal all the rides from the industry that we're here to support, and let's delay it a little longer, let's delay it a little longer so that whoever hasn't gone out of business is going to go out of business between now and January the 16th. That's what this particular motion does. That's what it does.
All right.
And while I have amendments, Madam Speaker, on this, I will not be supporting.
Okay, Counselor Mamalidi, your time is on hold. I did give a final warning. Okay, this will be the last warning. And then I will ask everyone in the council chambers to leave. Okay, Counselor Mamalidi, continue.
I cannot, even though there's amendments to it, it's to secure what I would consider an opportunity on my end to, yes, regulate and ban. Because if we all do this today, we will make sure that a business that's set up with a different model, whose intention was to disturb the city and the rest of the world, if we can all put these motions on the floor, they won't stay in the city of Toronto because it defeats their particular model. And we support the industry that we're here to support. These are hard-working immigrant families that have chosen a place to work, and we are replacing them with part-time workers who, for the most part, don't even live in the city of Toronto. All these drivers live in the city of Toronto, and that's what we should be doing now, supporting the people that are actually paying the taxes in the city of Toronto. And I, for one, cannot believe that we are yet again delaying. Earlier, staff report says, earlier this year, we completed an almost three-year review of the taxi industry, which included a review of appropriate number of taxi cabs, the fares, and a bold move on behalf of council to enable accessible, metered, and demand taxi cab service. We're doing this again. It's going to take another three or four years. For God's sakes, people, end it today. Don't make any deals. Don't do this today. Let's make sure that we're here to adopt a plan that adheres to the court's orders and that makes sure that people are not going to lose their livelihoods in the city of Toronto over the next few months. We are killing them if you delay this until January the 16th, even more than they are. And for crying out loud, caught within the regime, caught within the regime, the reason we're doing this is because people are breaking the law out there, and it's so big that we have to, we have to regulate. There's been prostitution all over the city. I don't hear anybody coming here and saying, let's change the rules to allow it because...
Counselor Mamalidi?
You did. I can't wait to see how you vote, Counselor. I want to see how you vote on this, Counselor. I'll show you. You'll be delighted.
Counselor DiCiano, you have a questions, a question?
Thanks, Madam Speaker.
It's three minutes, clarification of his motion.
They break the law all the time. Can I, can I have staff put that Counselor Mamalidi's amendment on the screen, please?
Counselor Mamalidi, there's a question for you.
It's more for clarification, if I can see that motion. So A, B, C, D, and E, are those not currently within the regulatory framework that currently exists for the taxi industry?
So I speak after 25 years of having to sit in my place and try to figure out what everything means. The motion that the mayor has brought forward doesn't necessarily include everything that we're supposed to be doing, and I want to ensure that there's an exact and precise recommendation by council that the staff would have to adhere to if the mayor's motion goes forward, which I hope it doesn't. But if it does, this is very clear in terms of what's there. Did you know, for instance, that Uber cannot satisfy our accessibility requirements?
Well, I didn't, but I think I'm looking for clarification, so let me just...
Well, I just, I know.
Okay, yeah.
So, I just, if your intention is to help the industry and bring a level playing field, I think what your attempt is actually restricting city staff from going out and looking at all the regulations so that we can compare and analyze all the, I think what you're doing is you're handcuffing our staff to just looking at certain regulations and not all regulations.
You know what I'm doing here? I'm making it clear that once and for all politicians need to be making decisions and not staff. We have, we've had to go through, we've had to go through hours and hours and days and days of deputation and consultation. The mayor's asking us to do that again. We don't need to do that again. It's in here, it's in the chamber. We know what needs to be done. This is what needs to be done, not send it back to a group of staffers that are going to come back and we're going to go through this whole process again and maybe even delay it for another four or five years. That's not what the industry wants.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Kergeianis, three minutes, clarification of the motion only.
Thank you. In your motion, I, looking at the five items, and you said, if we want to add anything else, that you probably welcome it. So I'm just going to ask you if you consider the following. Require proof of insurance register with the city. Require winter tires on all TNC vehicles with a city inspection as proof. Would you require annual or semi-annual vehicle inspection of any of the above? Would you require cameras in vehicles for driver and passenger safety? Would you require safety lights on exterior vehicles asking to call police? Would you require roof lights for public and enforcement agencies to be able to identify cars carrying passengers for money? Would you require markings or decals for brokerage, TNC, so passengers will identify companies that they're riding in? Would you require no smoking stickers in vehicles as per provincial law? Would you require age?
Okay, Counselor Kergeianis, if you want to make those amendments later, but just clarification for Counselor Mamalidi so he can answer your question.
Number one, Chair, put my time on hold.
You have three minutes. No, you have three minutes, Counselor.
Right, you're addressing me, so therefore I request that you put my time on hold as you do everybody else.
Counselor Mamalidi, would you like to answer the question?
I haven't finished, Chair.
Okay.
I asked a question, I want to put all my points on. If you do not want me to put my points on, it's number one, stop my time, and then number two, tell me to sit down. If you can't be a chair and do it properly, then may I suggest that maybe you require some help.
What I would suggest, Counselor Kergeianis...
I'm asking for my privileges, I'm asking you to put my time on hold.
You're out of order. If you want to ask a question to Counselor Mamalidi, ask a question.
I was, Madam Chair.
Clarification of the motion, please.
I was, and you interrupted me. That's poor performance.
Fritz, you know, that's not acceptable.
I, further, would you require meter or interior of car inspected twice a year, as we do? Those are some of the points that were not addressed, and I'm just wondering, sir, if you would consider...
You know, Counselor, I only have five minutes when I stand up and even read a motion that ties into that.
You have three minutes on this.
So I would suggest that anybody who's encouraged by this to increase the list to ensure that what the industry has been regulated upon, have had to spend their money on to date, would have, everyone else coming into the city would have to adhere to the same sorts of policies. And that's why I'm doing this. I would encourage you to do... sorts of policies. And that's why I'm doing this. So I'd encourage you to do that. I'd also refer you to the almost $11,000, it's $11,000 that every driver has to spend on their particular vehicles because we've placed those particular restrictions on them in the past. Do they get that money back after all of this is over? Probably not. So I would ask that whoever wants to play by the rules as a new company in the city of Toronto, then do at the very least what this industry has done and continues to do.
Thank you, your time's up. You have three minutes. Councillor Moser, question? Point of order councillor De Chiano.
Sorry speaker, I'm just going to ask that councillor Kerjianis get up and apologize to you. It's out of his league to say whether or not your performance is appropriate in this council. I think you've been doing a fantastic job, it's a long day for everybody. It's not up to him to tell you whether your performance is right or not. I need an apology, or I think this council deserves an apology.
Absolutely.
However, may I request, madam chair, that in the future, if you want to ask me to do something that you put my time on hold, that's only fair.
Count, that, well, that's not an apology, but just let me tell you that when councillor Kerjianis gets up, I really don't listen to what he says, so. Councillor Moser? Councillor Moser? Questions to councillor?
Point of order.
Question councillor Mamalidi, councillor Moser to councillor Mamalidi?
Point of order.
Councillor Mamalidi, there's a question for you.
Point of order first.
Point of order, yes.
Madam chair, I think it's, I think in keeping with...
I have a point of order councillor Kerjianis.
I think in keeping with the apology, in keeping with what seems to be, I think, a movement to pressure people to apologize, your comments saying that you don't listen to anybody, I think as the speaker are also out of order. And I think that you should be thinking about how you state your phrases as a speaker as well in the future.
Councillor Mamalidi, I did not say I don't listen to anyone. I said I don't listen to a particular councillor gets up and is rude to me and disrupts this council. Those councillors I don't listen to. Councillor Moser, you have a question to councillor Mamalidi?
Yes, your numbers.
Personal privilege, yes.
Madam chair, you are there to protect our rights. You are there to listen to each one of us whether you like it or dislike it. You are there to make sure that the quorum stays in this chamber. Therefore, if we take your comments towards me as an example, I would say that the quorum has flown out of this chamber, and therefore, madam chair, I'm sorry, but you are forcing us to disrespect you. Now, I got up to apologize, and I've asked you when I was up to put my time on hold, you went in and elaborated, you went in and eloquently put stuff, so I'm going to say to you, madam chair, my personal privileges have been not kept in this place, and you, madam speaker, are responsible for not keeping my point of personal privilege.
Councillor Mamalidi, councillor Moser, you have questions to councillor Mamalidi?
Are you sure we're ready now? Is there anybody else?
Yes, we're ready.
All vehicles, number C, all vehicles be accessible. You're saying that should apply to the whole industry here? Because I'm told consistently, I was on the committee last year, that most of the taxi drivers can't afford to make their vehicle accessible. That's only, the only reason we only have a certain percentage of vehicles. Councillor Mamalidi, I'm asking a question.
Yeah.
So you're saying that all our vehicles should be accessible?
Yeah.
So you're saying to these people that in the future, all your vehicles are going to be accessible, no matter what the cost, no matter what the timing, that's what you're putting forward here?
It says such as, and it's in reference to the TTL, the existing policies that we have. What we're, I think, what I'm afraid...
That doesn't say that, it says all vehicles be accessible. That means all, including the people here that are sitting in this audience, would have to spend a tremendous amount of money to make their vehicles accessible. It says all vehicles be accessible.
Councillor Moser, I've worked really closely with the industry and everybody that's sitting in this chamber, and I know when I say to you that this is all about what exists today as policies and what they've had to adhere to right from day one. And I'm suggesting that any new companies such as Uber X or Uber come into the fray, they need to abide by these or any other amendments that somebody wants to throw into this particular pot.
This is supposed to apply across the whole industry to make it fair to everybody. Part of our job here is to make things fair when we deal with people.
Councillor Moser.
So you're saying all vehicles, that would include the people that sit in this audience?
Part of our job is to make sure that 10,000 to 15,000 people don't immediately get put onto the welfare lines because that's exactly what's going to happen if we continue to do this. A part of our particular job as well is to make sure that we don't lose the $10 million in revenue that we currently get from these, from the industry.
It'll be nice if you could answer my question.
If this is not done properly today, we have the potential of losing the $10 million of revenue that the city makes as well. So our responsibility is to make sure that...
All I'm hearing is the same verdict that I've heard all day, so enough is enough.
Okay, thank you.
So you're going to accept that?
No councillor Moser, councillor Moser wanted you to answer that particular question. Do you want to answer that particular question?
And that's how you're going to respond to the level of disrespect that was there?
Councillor Mamalidi, would you like to answer the question?
I'll continue by saying that it's our position as well as councillors, that not only do we tell the truth in terms of what's going on and what's happening, but we ensure that enforcement is also part of this equation, and that even the police department continue to enforce the way they should enforce, and not pick and choose in terms of what is a priority of the day and what isn't. If someone's breaking the law, they need to enforce it.
Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you councillor Mamalidi. Councillor Matlow, you have a question to councillor Mamalidi?
Yeah, thank you, through you, madam speaker.
Three minutes, please.
Through you, councillor Mamalidi, the mayor's motion that you seek to amend has the words to ensure a level playing field in the ground transportation industry, which implies that there would be a fair and equitable playing field. So yours would sort of blanket sort of equal no matter what, even if it doesn't fit. And so I'm just wondering, are you familiar with the difference between the words equitable and equal?
Councillor Matlow, leveling the playing field, and I'm 54 years old, and I've heard that term probably 54,000 times. And I would say to you that leveling the playing field means that if we're going to do something at city hall or the provincial government or the federal government, that you're not putting anybody out of business, that everyone has to adhere to the same rules.
Absolutely.
What I'm hearing from people down here is that they believe that we should go down to the level that Uber is at and pay nothing pretty much. And if they are to pay a few dollars, that we recommend that over the next few months. What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, bump them up to a level playing field. Bump them up to the level that everybody else is at right now.
Madam speaker, my question is really that, I understand that you want a level playing field too. Clearly the mayor does too, that's what his motion reads. But is it not true that sometimes by simply just inflating regulation, increasing regulation, that it may not actually achieve the goals that you and many members of the taxi industry would like? That in fact, rather than simply mirroring each of the regulations that we have today on the existing industry, many of which are objected to by the industry themselves and the drivers, maybe it's not about equaling every single regulation that exists, but having maybe nuanced differences that reference or reflect the different types of industries that we're dealing with?
I made it clear when I moved my motion that it's not my intent to support Uber, never has been. I don't like anybody that comes into the city with their guns ablazing on a dark horse and telling everybody to move over because we're in town. I want them to get on their dark horse, and I want them to disappear. And the only way to do that, the only way to do that is to make sure that we pass regulations that are above their particular business model. If we do that, they will disappear. And that's what I'm attempting to do here.
And all I'm asking you to consider, sir, is that this may be more complex than simply a bumper sticker, that we actually have to look at what fits and what works to support the industry here and Uber, and most importantly, Trontonians, rather than just say, everybody should just get certain regulations and be done with it. That may not be thoughtful enough to really fix the problem.
I would say, I would say this to you in response to that last question. I would say this to you in response to that last question. Sir, you sit on the committee that we sit on, and you've had to endure and sit in days and days of consultation. You've sat primarily and not asked many questions because you believe in what you believe, okay? We've had to hear from the industry, and we have shaped the staff report into a policy framework that we believe as a committee could work. We didn't recommend further consultation. We don't want this to go on for another three or four years, and by you supporting the mayor's motion, that's exactly what's going to end up happening.
Thank you. Councillor Burnside, you have a question, three minutes clarification of the motion?
Yeah, my question's really, it should be short, it's just a follow-up to councillor Moser about the accessibility of all vehicles. My understanding is the TTL, that's one of the, that's the thrust of the TTL, is to make all vehicles accessible. So would you be in favor of the TTL?
A very clear amendment then to make it consistent with the TTL should be in order then, because I think councillor Moser and yourself are probably right. It should, it should be a little more...
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
Councillor Perutsa, you have a question, clarification of the motion, three minutes.
I do, because this motion is somewhat confusing me. I listened to the councillor's speech, and at the center of his speech was the notion that Uber should be banned. And what this motion says is, or at least, I'm going to ask the question, what this motion says is that they really should be regulated, and you need to consider a whole bunch of issues to regulate them. So I'm confused, which is it? Is it the ban or is it regulation?
I think, I think if we regulate to a particular, I think, I think it's clear, if we regulate to the point where we've regulated already...
Is it a ban or is it regulated?
You want the answer to the question councillor Perutsa, or do you want the floor? The answer to the question is this. If, if, if we regulate to the point that we already have with the industry, the new kid on the block, that dark-horsed, no face, no name company that's come into town...
All the zeros and ones in cyberspace.
From California, their model doesn't, doesn't fit this. That's why they don't want to be as regulated as, as the industry is today, because that's what gives them the advantage over everybody else here. But if you regulate them the same as the industry, they'll get on their dark horse, they'll put, they'll put their tail in between their legs, and they'll go back to California where they belong.
So what you're suggesting then is that what we really need to do is we need to find a way to regulate them, so therefore you're supporting them, essentially you're supporting the mayor's position on this.
Well, I don't support the mayor's position, because the mayor, the mayor wants to do...
The mayor is nodding right behind you. Look, he's getting it, he's understanding it.
I don't, I don't support the mayor's position because the mayor inadvertently, perhaps, I think it's inadvertently, wants to defer it off, in my opinion.
All I'm saying to you is...
And I think that what's going to happen...
Here's what's confusing me...
Do you want the floor councillor Perutsa?
Councillor Mamalidi, allow the councillor to ask you the question.
Here's what's confusing me about your motion, and here's what's causing me some confusion. I heard your speech. Your speech was ban, ban, ban. Your motion says regulate, regulate, regulate. Motion, speech, speech is history forgotten. We have a piece of paper, we're going to be voting on your motion to regulate. Which is it? Is it to ban or is it to regulate? Should we be voting against your motion?
Okay, that was your last question.
If you would have come to, if you would have come to committee councillor Perutsa, you would have heard all the deputations that spoke to not only what they would like, but also spoke to the report which talked about the court case and what the judge had to say.
Thank you.
And in an effort, in an effort, in an effort, why is it that you're not, you're not taking care of that? I'm trying to answer the question.
The mic is not on councillor Mamalidi.
So in an effort into taking care of that, we recognize in number one of our recommendation that we have satisfied the courts with their, with their particular ruling.
Thank you councillor Mamalidi, your time's up, sorry. Councillor Davis to speak. Oh yes, councillor McMahon.
Sorry, so somehow my name was taken off the speakers list, and it was under councillor Ford's name, I put it on there this morning. I think what happened was inadvertently when councillor DiGiorgio had to come over and use my microphone, he was monkeying with my buttons, and it was innocent enough, but if my name could go back under councillor Ford's, that would be great.
Okay, so if you can just put your name down, and then even though it's at the end, when you speak, it will take your name off. So councillor DiGiorgio pushed the wrong button when he was at your desk, right?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
He's been known to do that a lot, actually.
Councillor Davis to speak.
Thank you speaker, I have two motions. The first one is to amend recommendation two to delete the words plus a reduction to the remaining overall rate of 10%. The second motion is to amend recommendation three to add, to include other issues identified in attachment one, outstanding report requests on taxi cab regulations. I want to first start by thanking everyone who's come down here today and has continued to come down here and stand up for their jobs, for the industry, and for keeping our city providing the best possible ground transportation or taxi service we can. It is a difficult debate that we are struggling with. And I want to take, and I know there are many of you who are expecting me to vote to ban. There is no motion to ban before us, which is interesting now that councillor Mamalidi has spoken. I will be voting to receive LS 3.5, which is to reintroduce grandparenting of the standard plates. That motion will be coming. I will be voting to continue to support the reforms that we approved in 2014, an owner-operated system that is fairer for drivers and that ensures that we are addressing many of the longstanding issues in the taxi business. I will be voting for the committee recommendations to delete recommendations seven and eight. And I know all of you think that's important, and I agree. That sets out some very specific ways that, and gives direction very specifically about certain reports that will come back. I do not support that. I will be voting for a motion that is going to say, the second this report is approved, we have a bylaw that will enforce our current bylaw on Uber. And that bylaw will go into effect immediately, despite what some of my colleagues are saying, we will crack down the best we can the instant we approve this report today. I will continue to vote for the reforms that will cut out the middlemen and the agents. We know that's a problem, and that's the reason I've amended recommendation three. Ms Cook has a whole series of other reports that were outstanding, and we must continue to have those reports reported out here so that we can deal with those issues. Because we know that the men and women who actually have their hands on the wheel behind taxis in the city get cut, get money cut out three levels above them. So that by the time they take home at the end of the day what they earn, sometimes it's less than minimum wage. Now I do know that Uber is putting tremendous pressure on everyone, and that Uber is stealing work from legal drivers. And I do not support Uber. But I do not believe that we can actually enforce an absolute ban. I have looked through all of the regulations that have been attempted in other jurisdictions. And what I have seen is that every municipality is struggling. Now New York City... Now, New York City has said they're going to put caps, they're going to put caps on the number of licenses. There are municipalities that said, we will license cars, we will license drivers, and we will put a cap on the supply and the fares. I support those kinds of regulations. Now, in some places, Uber has said, we can't live with those, and in San Antonio, they left town. So when I vote today, I will vote for the mayor's motion. But I am not voting for the mayor. There'll be people who'll say, oh, you're voting for the mayor. I think the mayor and I have very different views on what regulations there should be. And he may come back when we get this second report and argue, we shouldn't have tight regulations on Uber. I believe we should be regulating in a way that will put the same kind of conditions for driver safety, for consumer protection, for fares and regulation of the...
Councillor Davis, you're over five minutes. Sorry, the clock isn't working, it's working here, you're 5:10.
It's, there's nothing...
I know, it's...
So if I can just wrap up by saying, the fight will come in the next few months, and we will put in place regulations that will make sure that Uber, or any other ground transportation company, has to meet the standards that we will require of them, and the tools to enforce.
Thank you. Councillor, councillor Ford to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I truly believe we've wasted, could be up to 100 hours. This is, I'm a pretty blunt speaker. I don't, I'm not a smooth-talking, fancy, long-word-use guy. I'll leave that up to people much smarter than me. But let me bring this into context. Let me bring this into context. Same game, same rules. We're talking about the Blue Jays. Blue Jays have two games today. Same game, same rules. That's how smart he is. Say there was a by-election here, and a councillor got in here and gets twice as much as the regular councillors, there'd be, people would be screaming bloody murder. Why should this councillor get paid more? We do the same job. We go by the same rules. These people, I know many, many, many of them, because my ward, I probably represent more taxi drivers than anybody in the city, and I'm very proud of that, because I see how hard they work, how hard their parents worked, how hard their children worked. I see it day in and day out. You've got to think, Uber has piggybacked on their hard work. That's what it comes down to. And I'm saying, hey, we're the new drivers in town, we're going to have a different set of rules. They do the work, you don't get one complaint. I haven't, I've been down here 15 years. I get compliments after compliments after compliments of taxi people taking people here, taking people there, taking people everywhere. A AAA service. I'm a capitalist. I believe in competition, so do they. But everybody has to play by the same rules, Madam Speaker, to defer it or refer it. Deal with it today, the rules are already here. Technology, 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 my ass!
Okay.
Okay? Has nothing to do with technology, okay? This is, they already know what's going on. This is just a delay tactic. A delay, delay, delay tactic, like other things, a delay, delay, delay tactic. There's no, there's no reason to delay. The rules are here. All they want is to say, here, you can have 5 million of other people come in here, but let's play by the same rules. And we're not playing by the same rules. From what I understand, there's going to be one set of rules for Uber, and one set of rules for the people that started this industry from nothing, from absolutely nothing.
We like rules.
Nothing. Okay? Because many of our parents here, including my late father, started from nothing, just like Mr Mayor's father. Nothing. That's how they started. And it's not fair for someone to come in here and piggyback and say, you guys, you know, have missed the boat. We're now the new cowboys in town, and we're going to run the town like we want to, and we don't have to listen to people. That is absolutely wrong. That is not the way you run a city or you run a business. You treat people fairly and equally. And these poor people up here are getting treated wrong, and getting treated totally, totally unfair. And I hope people see the light to deal with this today, and there's no need to move this one day further. We've wasted enough time, and Ms Cook is just, I don't know how she does it. We've got serious issues to deal with. Let's move the ball forward. Thank you.
Councillor Pasternak, councillor McMahon.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. So I have a motion to move.
Okay, hold on. Just give us a second. Does the staff, does the staff have your motion?
Yep.
Oh.
It's right here. So I move that item LS 3.5 be received for information, and I would like your support on that. I agree, we have spent an endless amount of time, well more than 100 hours, money and energy on this topic. We've debated it umpteen times, umpteen times at committee, umpteen times in council, in the short time I've been here, too many times. Quite frankly, we need to move on. We have many more big issues to deal with. We cannot, we cannot keep revisiting these items over and over and over again. It's a thing Trontonians can't stand the most about us down here at City Hall. It's not fair. It's not fair to city staff, it's not fair to the taxi industry, and it's not fair to Trontonians. So let's get it together. Let's reinstate the great reforms, great reforms we all voted for in 2014 through this motion. And I will say, the vote in 2014 on those great reforms was, I will remind you, 33 to 12. 33 to 12. We voted for that. So that's, we'd like to reinstate those, we'd like, let's ensure that unregulated ground transportation providers become regulated and play by the rules, which is what everyone is asking for. Let's review the taxi cab bylaw and look at reducing regulations and all the bureaucracy and red tape for the taxi industry. Let's put the public first. People have not mentioned the public. What does the public want? Let's put them first and give them safe, affordable, and convenient transportation, ground transportation in the city of Toronto. That's what they're asking for, that's what, it's our job to provide. Let's not bury our heads in the sand. This is not going away. So I appreciate your support on my motion. Thank you. And I welcome your questions, councillor Mamalidi.
Thank you. Councillor Mamalidi, three minutes, run the motion.
I ask a question not for myself, because I understand what you want to do, and that's kill any form of grandfathering that this clause bans.
Sorry, I don't see the verb "kill" in my motion.
Well, I guess it's my definition of receipt.
So you're putting words in my mouth, and that's, that's unfair and untrue. So let's be truthful to the public, there's no "kill" in this phrase.
Okay, councillor McMahon, allow councillor Mamalidi to ask a question.
I'm not, I'm not going to debate with you, I'm just merely suggesting to you, in the form of a question, that what you are in fact doing with this is killing hundreds, if not thousands, of hours of work that the committee's already gone through, and affecting the livelihood of those people who were counting on their pensions, which is the value of their plates. You are killing that with this receipt motion. Are you aware of that?
No, that is unfactual and untrue, and I myself was on licensing and standards committee back when that committee behaved last term, and we too went through hours, as did city staff, went through hours and hours of research, debate, consultation, endless consultation with the taxi industry to get those reforms, and 33 councillors voted for them in 2014.
Sorry, I didn't hear you answer the question. The question was, was related so that those that, whose, whose, whose wives or husbands decided to stay home for 30 or 40 years, and, and, and when they had realized that City Hall has cut them out of their pensions, that's the value of the plate, they wanted us to go back to the drawing board and change that. The committee did change that, and now you are killing that with this receipt.
We, as I said, we debated this endlessly last term, and we came up with great reforms, and from city staff, and from the public, from the taxi industry, hundreds and hundreds of hours of consulting with them to come up with those reforms. And we had this debate, it's a broken record, it's Groundhog Day, and we had this debate, and we came up with the reforms, 33 councillors voted for them.
Right. So the answer to the question is, yes, councillor Mamalidi.
We were leveling the playing field.
We are killing any hope, any hope, any hope that any, any widow might have in inher...
Okay, councillor...
...the value, the value price of the...
Councillor Mamalidi, that's not what councillor McMahon said. Councillor McConnell, you have a question to councillor McMahon.
Yes, I do, actually. Thank you, councillor McMahon. I won't try and bully you into the answer.
Appreciate that.
So my understanding of what you're doing is the deferred item from the last meeting, which would have unwound the taxi reforms that we were, had agreed to, 33 to 12, that you are recommending that that report be received, and that we continue with the taxi reform policy that was put in place during the time that you were on the committee. Is that correct?
Absolutely. The one that primarily most of council supported.
That's right. And as I understand it, most of council supported it because it allowed more access to licenses, to a level playing field with the type of licenses, and that really took the slavery bonds, bounds off our, off our drivers. Is that not correct?
That is absolutely correct. It was a much more equitable reforms.
Yes, thank you for bringing that forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the clarification. Councillor Pasternak to speak. Do we have his motion prepared?
They're not ready.
Oh, it's not ready yet. So councillor Pasternak, I'm going to, we'll hold you, your name down, and we'll go to the next speaker, councillor Matlow to speak.
Thank you. I, I never asked to be on licensing and standards committee. I, I, and I, I accept the mayor's gracious apology, but, but, but there I sit, and I, I've had the opportunity to learn much more about this issue than I, than I ever thought I would. And what is, what is evident to me is that, you know, there, there is a well entrenched dynamic here with many councillors and the taxi industry, and various people who come and speak to us, and there's been so much discussion here about, you know, who are we fighting for, who are we representing? And what's clear to me is this, as the mayor said, you can't put the genie back in the bottle. Uber has entered this market. Technology is something that people enjoy. And in fact, since Uber came into the market, I know that Beck, for example, has come up with their own app, I'm sure others are considering that, too, and I think that's great. I think, I mean, that's what a free market does when it's working at its best, that, that this competitive market makes everybody up their game. And I agree, I, I think most Trontonians would agree and expect that the role of city council should be to ensure that we regulate to make sure that the public is safe, that we regulate in a way that, that considers the public interest, but not interfere so much that we strangle and suffocate innovative industry. You know, I really believe that the taxi industry has an opportunity here. And as I said at committee, one way they could go is go the way of Blockbuster, which would be shameful, it would be awful, where, you know, Blockbuster and other, you know, video stores that used to be ubiquitous in the city could not adapt and evolve to the new reality of Netflix, of streaming video. They just couldn't. And then, and then they, they lost out. And many people lost their jobs because of it, and it was a really difficult moment in that industry. But the music industry is a great example. While there are always challenges, we still, we have an amazing Canadian music industry, great music industry overall, but also when Napster came on the scene, things evolved. We have iTunes, we have Apple Music, we have other competitors, and we've, we've adapted. And I really believe that there's an opportunity for the taxi industry, rather than say to city council, please, please try to ban something that can't effectively be banned with the I mean, ultimately, I actually believe, and this is my, this is my honest view, that there are some members of council and others who have suggested to members of the taxi industry that if you simply just sort of wish Uber away or try to ban them.
Okay, point of order, councillor Mamalidi.
The same councillor stood up when councillor Kerr-Giannis was asking questions of the mayor, stood up and said that he disagrees with impugning the intent of other councillors, is now suggesting that other councillors are, are, are working in a particular way. I would, I would suggest that the speaker take note of that. You can't stand up and say that other councillors are, are doing the same thing he's doing right now.
Well, councillor Mamalidi, the councillor was not finished speaking, and so let's listen to what the councillor has to say.
Of course.
Yes, of course. Thank you. Thank you.
And I, and I, and I don't actually believe that will serve the interests of hardworking taxi drivers in the city that are wanting, I mean, they're here advocating not only for themselves, but for their families and for their survival, and I get that, and I empathize with that. And, and I carry a burden when I struggle over these kind of issues, when I think about why they are advocating for what they're advocating for. I'm submitting simply that the best way to actually support the taxi industry, and frankly, the hundreds of thousands of Trontonians who, whether you like it or not, enjoy using Uber, I mean, that's inarguable, it's, it's, it's a fact, is to bring everyone into a fair and equitable regulatory framework that recognizes public safety and public interest, but at the same time ensures that we, that we, that we reflect how Trontonians want the industry to look today. And if, if we don't reflect upon that, and, and candidly, if the taxi industry doesn't as well, then we're actually not meeting Trontonians' needs. We're, we're not actively listening to what they're asking for. I think the taxi industry is an opportunity to, to not only modernize, but to become remarkable, to actually bring more money home, if we actually evolve and adapt to reality. If we simply ignore reality, then everybody loses. If we move forward with, in a thoughtful way, as I believe the mayor has been advocating for, we will arrive somewhere. But right now, if we simply just close our eyes to this, what I believe will happen is that Uber will walk away from the table, will have perpetual court fights. We won't actually arrive at a place where you actually make them a legalized partner in the transit mix in Toronto. I think that's what all of us should agree upon doing. Thank you.
Councillor Pasternak, I believe that your motion is ready.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. We can put it on the screen. Just to quickly go through it, asking the executive director, municipal... asking the Executive Director of Municipal Licensing and Standards to report back on the existence or absence of legislation or regulations, either at the provincial or federal level, to see whether there's rules against price gouging, surge pricing by ground transportation services in our various municipalities, on the provincial regulations governing Pearson International Airport and rider pickup rules, and recommendations on how the process can be reformed so that taxi drivers can pick up rides at the airport, and recommendations for in-vehicle posting the harmonized sales tax held by either the driver or cab owner so that it can be viewed by all passengers. In Toronto, in Canada, we actually welcome the entrepreneurial spirit to flourish, to prosper, to create wealth, to raise our families, to build a business. But no matter what industry you look at, there are rules of the game. And it is very important that as we look at these various industries, we as a government make sure that everybody plays fair, that everybody follows the rule. What can we say about a company when asked about its insurance policy, which is a requirement by law, uses their political power and their lawyers to try and get a stealing order so we can't see it? What do we say about a company that won't be straight about the collection of the HST, an obligation of all retailers? And what can we say about a company that gives its driver a five-minute video and puts them behind the wheel? When it comes to other industries, government is very robust in protecting the liquor industry. You can't set up on a street corner, doctor's license, aviator's license, triker's license, food services, health, dog license. We protect, we protect those licenses because they are bound by a set of rules that we can govern to protect consumers, to protect our neighborhoods, our families, to make sure people are safe in the services that they choose. Governments have a responsibility to make sure that everyone's society is treated fairly. The taxi, on the other hand, and the taxi industry, which has been a good partner, a solid partner, and is backed by government regulation, must reform. It must realize that putting technology back into the bottle is highly unlikely. At the same time, it must focus on better customer service, be more efficient in meeting the needs of consumers. We must make sure, we must make sure that all taxi drivers are properly insured, that are paying their taxis, and not taking advantage. The ability of individuals to own license plates and to trade in them, which is government, basically a government license, to trade in them, to invest in them, was a grave mistake by governments of the past. It put government in bed with the risk assessment of those who came forward. We encourage them to come forward, to trade among themselves, to invest in the business. But at the same time, there is no other license that I can think of in which you can take the value of your government-issued license and then trade it, with the exception of some imports and some food products. At the same time, we need a smarter taxi industry so it can flourish, a taxi industry that I use, that I support, and has been a great partner to the city of Toronto. Two examples that I will give you is when I came out of the Sony Center in the pouring rain with the subway shut down, with 3,200 people, there was one taxi sitting outside. They had no idea that there was a trove of business to be gathered that night. At the same time, more recently, I was at the Toronto Convention Centre with over 2,000 people there attending event. I came out the south entrance to flag a cab. There were none. It is important that the taxi industry becomes smarter, more aggressive, and more attuned to what's going on in the city so that they, they can prosper as well. We created a system in which the private sector invested in licenses, a system that was deeply flawed. And what we are seeing today is maybe something that was well intended in the past. It's gone bad. But at the same time, government must back up what it says. It created this regime for taxis. It supported the investment. It regulated the taxis. And it can't abandon the taxi industry. It is our responsibility to protect this industry. We protect the banks. We protect the auto industry. We protect the aerospace industry. We protect the trades, the various trades. We must stand up and protect a good partner, a good loyal partner in the taxi industry.
Thank you, Counselor Pasternak. Counselor Carmichael Gribb.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a motion, which is now on the screen. I've gone back and forth on this issue several times. I haven't put a motion into it. I understand both sides. I get both sides. My main concerns with the issues that we're discussing today are public safety and consumer protection. One of the alleged sex assaults that we have discussed today actually took place in my ward. And I need to ensure that my residents are safe. My other concern is that insurance is available, which no one is really sure of, who or what is protected if there is an accident. And while I'm not happy with the way that Uber entered the market, with Uber X, I personally believe that the only way that we can move forward and do anything is to level the playing field and to regulate the alternate ground transportation providers. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Counselor Mahavik has a question for you.
You know, my apologies, but I thought that what we were doing, this is essentially, is it number seven or number eight? Number seven of the recommendations that a committee did not support. What's different about this from the number seven?
I'm requesting that they expedite the process. And give us a status update.
Should we not first, before we... We don't even know whether we're going to go forward with Uber. That's the, I think, where the mayor's report request and staff's report will come back, will figure it out. Shouldn't this be really something that waits once we go to the fork in the road and decide whether this is going to be part of our city? Isn't this premature?
This is for any insurance gaps that currently exist. So I think it is, I think it's an important...
There are none. There are none because Uber's illegal.
True, yeah.
Uber's illegal. This assumes that they're legal or will be legal soon. We haven't crossed that bridge.
But if we do go down the road, I think we do need to have something in place. I don't think we can, if we go towards regulation, however the votes go, however the bylaws come in, if that's the case, I don't think we can then say, okay, now let's find out about insurance because we will be that much farther down the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a question? Clarification of the motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think we understand from Counselor Mahavik's questions to... We have a clarity of intent. So I don't hear you wanting to subvert everyone's wish for a level playing field. So my question is whether or not you would consider an amendment that aligns the timing with the report already being asked of General Manager Cook.
My only concern with that is if it does take longer. So if it does take longer for Fisco and the province to develop something and come back with a report.
Would you, but would you not agree that what is best is that she is working on that report that does level the playing field and not embroiled in yet another interim debate between this debate and that one? And so to bring your recommendation together with that one allows us to consider all in the same context when it comes back here?
Well, I think with this, I mean, I'm just asking for a status update. I'm not asking for a report. I just, we need to have, I put January as a sort of date that we could come back and say, where are we with this? So that we do have some updated information at that time. Because it isn't...
But you're not, as I am loathe, to have this debate in the interim when, in fact, the final leveling and final debate is coming shortly thereafter?
We won't have a debate on insurance because it is, or what insurance... Because it is a provincial thing that they have to bring in.
I appreciate the motion, but I don't share your optimism about us not wanting to debate. We love to debate here. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Mamalidi, clarification of the motion?
Counselor, would this be an amendment to the mayor's motion? Or...
No.
What's the intent here?
It's standalone. One of the problems that we have right now is that while Uber X is illegal, there is an insurance gap. So people that are out there driving are not insured.
Well, I agree with most of this motion.
There is talk, the province is working, Fisco is working on products. But I am asking that we expedite that.
Yeah, I get it. And I'm just wondering whether three is even in order because we're not, we don't know whether or not we want to support Uber X.
This isn't, this, number three does not ask that we support Uber X. That is that municipal licensing puts out information to educate drivers and passengers about the current status and the current issues with it. Not saying that we go this way or that way, just that this is where we are and this is the legalities around it.
You recognize that we don't know who those drivers are, right? Because they're illegal.
I'm not saying go straight to the drivers. I'm just saying do an information campaign to everybody.
The other part to this is two, which I think I could support, which is the report back in January because the mayor's motion isn't clear in terms of when it comes back. So you're trying to, I guess, be clear in terms of when that report comes back?
No, I'm just asking for a status update on where Fisco is with changes to insurance, if that is going to happen.
So the insurance component here won't be a part of the regulations that were...
I didn't say that. It's so that, because they are already working on updates and changes. So I'm just asking for a status update to those regulation changes.
If it were, if it were an amendment to the mayor's motion, I could probably support the whole thing. But three, for sure, I can't because we're not, we haven't even decided whether or not, you know, this city wants Uber X or not. So how do you go out and talk to people that we don't even know exist? We don't have them on file.
Twitter, social media, Facebook.
Twitter and Facebook. That's how the city's going to start running.
No, that's called, no, it's an information campaign.
Thank you.
That's how we get information out.
Thank you. Mayor Torry, question?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to clarify with the councillor. I think it sort of tries to close the circle that both of the previous two questioners have been asking you. Can I assume that what you're trying to do here is to get these people working faster and get them to report to us so that at the time, to the extent that we've, I think everybody in here has talked about insurance being an issue, we know, depending on what Ms. Cook comes back with, we won't then turn and say, well, yes, we have to have insurance. And then there'll be some big, long wait to find out if this product they claim is a terrific insurance product is something that's even acceptable to the regulator, let alone to a level playing field. Is that what you're trying to do?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kergianis, three minutes, clarification of the motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering, through you, Madam Chair, to my colleague, would you happen to know, especially on number two, if new legislation is to be proposed to bring the TNCs into regulation, what the province will have to do? Do they have to pass a special law? Does it have to have first reading, second reading, royal assent? Are you aware of any of this?
I know that it needs to come from Fisco. And for the whole process, I'm not completely sure. But that's why I'm saying let's start the process and expedite it.
Would you, would you be aware if a minister has to move a bill or a private member has to move a bill? And what happens from there? I mean, like, how would you envision this to be working? I mean, besides just sending a letter up to them? I mean, they need to say legislation...
That's not what I'm asking. I'm just asking that they expedite the process.
I understand. But what I'm asking you is, it's one request to expedite a process, another thing, how the process works. And if they're going to answer us, because they don't have anything on the books. I'm just wondering if you're aware of it.
It's just introducing new products. It's not, it's not a change to legislation. It's introducing new products. And I'm just asking for a status update in January. I'm not asking for...
Request the province of Ontario and the Financial Services Commission of Ontario to expedite the process to develop a solution, either through regulation or legislation. So I'm going to take the word "legislation." Now, in order for them to have a legislation...
Counselor Perks, please.
Thank you, Chair. Legislation. Are you aware what they have to go through and how long will it take? Would you be able to give us a ballpark figure?
Well, it's different for each legislation. I'm not saying that this is a legislation change. I'm saying put the process... Yeah, put the process in place so that we can expedite it and report back to us in January on the status. If it's not done then, it's not finished. And we'll ask for another status.
Number three, city council requests Executive Director of Municipal Licensing and Standards to conduct the information campaign. Is that a budget? I'm not sure if through you or maybe we can ask the... Is there going to be a budget consideration for this? Is this going to cost us any money? Besides going on Twitter and Facebook?
I don't see why this would have to cost us any money. There's lots of ways to advertise that don't cost money.
Last I checked, in the advertising, there's dollar figures involved with this. And there's staff time involved with this. And there's all kinds of stuff involved with it.
Most Uber X drivers and passengers are very social media savvy. Social media doesn't cost that much to, if anything, to do an information campaign on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor DiGiorgio, three minutes, clarification?
Counselor Carmichael Gribb. Just one of the things that troubles me is this. There's a whole lot of number of drivers out there driving for Uber that presumably should have some insurance. So if I'm looking at things from the insurance perspective, insurance company perspective, they should be licking their chops. They should be coming up with a product tomorrow, available to these people. On the other hand, would you agree with me that if they come up with a product, they are indirectly or implicitly saying, we think it's okay with those illegal drivers doing what they're doing? So is there a reluctance to introduce the product simply because they don't want to go first? They want to wait until we legalize these drivers?
I can't speak for insurance companies saying if they have a reluctance to introduce...
Okay, just one sec, just one sec. I'll put you on my phone. Do we... Do you have a point of order? Counselor Campbell, point of order?
The councillor's questions and discussion is not clarifying the motion. It does not speak to clarifying the motion.
Yes.
Please direct the councillor to ask questions of clarification only.
And I have said that.
Well, I know, it's been a long day.
I have said that over and over again.
Madam Speaker, my clarification...
Counselor Carmichael, sorry, Counselor DiGiorgio, do you want to start over?
My clarification was, what is the value in requesting the provincial government to condone, or at least expedite, the introduction of a product when by doing that you are implicitly saying that the drivers are out there doing, not contributing at all?
Counselor DiGiorgio, again, you're not asking for clarification of the motion.
Fine, I'll accept your ruling, Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cho, clarification of the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you, my clarification is the timing, especially number three. We have a motion from the mayor that we bring back in 2016 for the playing field fairness. If this motion is not adopted, then your motion is okay. But if, I mean, if not adopted is okay, but if adopted, then isn't it better that we wait until that we get the report from the director, executive director? See whether the motion, I mean, the report is acceptable... See whether the motion, I mean, the report is acceptable? And then Uber becomes justifiable? And then we could implement all your motion? Isn't that better to wait until then?
Well, as I've already answered, I believe that if we wait, then it will take that much longer if it goes through. If, it's a whole bunch of ifs. If the motion's passed, if bylaws are put in place, then we have to wait that much longer to get insurance in place.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor DeBermaker?
Thank you, through you, Madam Speaker. I have two motions. One motion will just be to amend recommendation number six. If this council chooses today to issue 100 new TTLs to drivers, I'm just suggesting that those vehicles actually meet the Canada motor vehicle safety standards. Because I think we've all talked about today, we want to protect the people who are taking the cabs. And certainly, there should be no exemptions. The vehicles should meet the crash tests that all other vehicles have to meet. My second motion is to amend the mayor's motion with a clause that says, "Such report to include maintaining and/or improving public safety, environmental and consumer protection requirements." And then such as, and you'll see, it's a long list from A to N, which are basically cut and pasted by myself and my staff from our municipal code. Madam Speaker, we're here today not because there was a problem in the taxi industry. I've been on the licensing committee for five years. I've been a councillor for 11 years. When you look at the staff reports and they say the number of complaints about the taxi industry per thousand, it's like one complaint per thousand or less. We have clean cabs, we have safe cabs, we have drivers who undergo criminal background checks. We do all the right things through a process that has evolved over decades to make sure that we protect the consumer, that we protect the drivers, that we protect the industry, that all the stakeholders, while they might disagree with each other sometimes and fight with each other, they exist in a legislative framework that we do our very best to protect the consumer. A new company came to town, not with new technology. I've heard a few of my colleagues say, well, there's a new technology and the genie is out of the bottle and everything's going to change now. And those comments are, that is not an accurate statement. The first company in this city to have an app was Beck. Another company came in called Uber. What's the difference between the Beck app and the Uber app? Not much, they're basically the same. What's difference between Uber as a company and Beck as a company? Well, Beck follows all the rules, Uber doesn't. And therefore, when I see people saying, well, you know, the Uber app is very popular, I go, I don't really think it's the app that's so popular. Yes, apps are popular, Beck's I'm sure will be popular too. The difference between the two is one company can give you a cheaper ride than the other company. I can guarantee you that if Uber was 30 or 40% more expensive than everybody else, we wouldn't be talking now. The only reason we're here is because Uber is giving members of the public a ride that is 40, sometimes even call it 50%, cheaper than the going rate. And they've been able to do that by breaking the law or ignoring the law. I haven't seen one shred of evidence that one single driver has commercial insurance. I've been on the committee for five years. I've gone to all the meetings except for one. And people come forward and say, I'm an Uber driver. They're asked questions. Do you have insurance? I've only heard one gentleman say yes, nobody else ever say yes. No evidence that anyone has insurance. Are we protecting the public by allowing our family and friends going out in these vehicles that don't have insurance? I don't think so. That's why they can offer a cheaper price. Not a better service, just a cheaper price. There's no security cameras in their vehicles to protect the driver or the passenger. That's why they can provide a cheaper ride. Not because they're a better service, not because it's a better app, because they're avoiding the rules and the rules that we've put in place so that when there is a sexual assault in one of their cabs, the police have a tool to help them do a thorough investigation. The driver will say one thing, perhaps the passenger will say another thing, and it is an alleged sexual assault. Well, boy, if it was a member of my family who'd been allegedly sexually assaulted, I would want a camera in that vehicle to clear up that accusation very, very fast. But we have 13, 16,000 drivers out there who don't have cameras in their vehicles. And the mayor and I kidded it perhaps a little bit in questioning, saying, well, how far do we go down? Do we go right down to the tires of a vehicle? And you know what my response is? Yes. We moved a motion, this council moved motions, to make sure that every cab in the city has snow tires. Because around the world, it's been proven, snow tires protect lives. So the only reason, and Uber now, to their credit, has put, the one thing they've done is put snow tires on. But in the end, we have to protect the industry that follows the rules and not reward people who break the rules or don't follow them. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Counselor Holliday, you have a question, three minutes, clarification?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor DeBermaker, sorry, the motion's not on the screen. This only applies to the 100 new TTLs.
That's correct, yes.
And the vehicles associated with those.
That's correct.
In your estimation, will this result in additional red tape or additional cost to those operators of those vehicles over and above that would be expected today?
Yes and no. I don't think there'll be any additional red tape. To buy, to purchase a vehicle that actually meets the Canadian motor vehicle safety standards might cost you a little bit more money. That's why sometimes people don't do it. But I think when you're talking about TTL vehicles that are accessible, you have to purchase and drive a vehicle that meets Canadian standards. Safety standards. Very, I think it's a very simple thing to do.
Is there a play, are any of these requirements over and above what is required today already with our code?
Yes, in the past, some vehicles were exempted from the Canadian safety standards because they didn't have accessible vehicles that met the standards. There were none. Now there's a product on the market, the MV1, as it's commonly referred to. There may be other companies down in the states as well that provide these vehicles. So if we want to make sure that people have maximum protection, they should, we should make sure that now that vehicles are available that meet these standards, that they're purchased.
Well, I appreciate the consumer protection this offers. Does this not conflict with some of the other direction we're going to make it less restrictive on the taxi industry to respond to the differences in pricing?
I don't believe so because I think this standard should come into force amongst all people. But today, we're about, I think, as a council perhaps, to issue 100 new licenses. So I believe for any future vehicles that we, licenses that we bring on the road are issued, they should meet the Canadian safety standards.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Davis has a question.
Counselor DeBermaker, which vehicles actually will meet these requirements? Which accessible vehicles?
The MV1.
And that's, are you saying then with this amendment that it will only then allow an MV1 to be an accessible vehicle?
MV1 is the only one that I'm aware of. There may be others out on the market, but that's the one I know about.
So your intent is to give exclusive permission for one type of vehicle?
Not for one manufacturer, but to one safety standard.
No, that's not what's there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Perks?
Thank you very much. How many people manufacture the MV1?
To my knowledge, just one company.
Just one company. So the effect of this motion is to create a monopoly for the 100 cabs. Is that correct?
You could say that, yes, but I also hope that it...
I did, in fact, yes.
So I also hope...
Good, so moving right along.
Yeah, sorry, Madam Speaker, may I answer the question? So what I hope, like you and I do as environmentalists, like they do in California, you create a standard that you want the industry to come. Now that we have the first pioneer into this realm that provides people better protection, that's the company I want to go to so that the vehicles have better protection. And if five other manufacturers want to join the party, great. We are moving the industry to a better, safer standard.
What's the name of the firm that manufactures the MV1, please?
I don't know it off the top of my head. I was at the committee meetings, but...
Oh, at committee, you heard about it, okay. And you're aware that all the accessible cabs that are currently on the street under the City of Toronto licensing protocol, in fact, do meet the legal requirements for safety of vehicles on Canadian roads, right?
No, my understanding is that they're actually exempt from these protection measures.
Sorry, the legislation says what the conditions are that you have to meet in order to be on the roads. And all the vehicles currently on the roads meet the legal requirements, don't they?
They meet the legal requirement that exempts them from these safety standards, yes.
It exempts them from being exactly like the MV1, but they otherwise meet...
Or, no, it doesn't exempt them from MV1 because MV1 didn't exist five or six years ago. It exempted them from safety standards that nobody could meet at the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carroll has a question, three minutes?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, if we are looking for a level playing field and a world in which there are safe passengers, safe drivers, fair conditions for drivers and fair conditions for passengers, why would, similar to my question to Counselor Carmichael Greb, why would we not continue with the mayor's intention to get there and refer this action to that and hear from General Manager Cook about your concept of the 100 licenses?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, we could do that. And staff said, well, we could refer it there. But I think that there's a desire to issue those plates now. So if, so I could defer it and slow it down. My preference was to say, let's issue those extra 100 licenses, but let's make sure that they're the safest possible vehicles on the market.
And since we all want safe and fair conditions for every driver and every passenger, you can appreciate that an omnibus motion that brings all these things in line with the timing of the mayor's requested report and Ms. Cook's report, that that would be the level playing field. And while this may be a welcome layer of complexity, that way we can ensure it's not an unwelcome layer of complexity?
Yes, through you, Madam Speaker, that is one option. But once you issue the plate...
So would you consider it a friendly amendment and add it now? That we simply get a report back from the general manager on such a concept?
You mean move that motion? I wouldn't consider it friendly because, again, I think the plate should be issued now. I just think they should have the condition that they meet the best safety standard.
I may indeed move that motion.
Counselor Campbell, clarification of the motion?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor DeBermaker. The intent of your motion, 7B, is to enable more detail to the mayor's motion, which calls for a leveling of the playing field. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Now, in a level playing field, all providers of car for higher services would be treated equitably or equally.
That's correct, yes.
Now, at the present moment, only one standard of taxi can hail passengers at the street. Isn't that correct? That is correct. Only taxis, just, only taxis can hail a passenger or can be hailed by a passenger, sorry.
Taxis, including Ambassador cabs, yes.
Right. So then, if the technology-based Uber-style cars for hire were subject to these provisions and regulations? How then is it an equal playing field if only one aspect or one element of the industry can be hailed by passengers?
I would agree with you. You would want to equalize that. If there's only one class of license, we'll call it, or one standard for everybody, then I think everybody should have the same opportunities.
So then your motion doesn't necessarily address that. It would provide, this motion, if it were passed, and if regulations were made the same for all cars for hire, it would not level the playing field. And in fact, there would be, there would still be a two-tier system, one of which are able to be hailed by passengers in the street and one class which are not. Is that correct?
Well, that's not the intent of my motion. My motion, I think, is complimentary to the mayor's motion, saying that the mayor's asked for a staff report back. And I'm saying that that report include maintaining and/or improving public safety, consumer protection, environmental requirements, such as, and I have a list, and I know it's not comprehensive, but those were some of the highlights as I went through the municipal code that I thought were important. So there might be additional measures that are not on this list. And that's why I say, such as. And that's why my list includes things like snow tires, right down to the snow tires.
Last question. Does this motion contradict Counselor Mamalidi's motion in any way? Or are they complimentary?
I'd have to look at his a little closer, but I think they are consistent with one another. I think mine is a little more, well, my list is a little longer. So I've highlighted more things from the municipal code than Counselor Mamalidi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. If I can ask, please, members of council, staff, members of public, if you can try to keep it down, it's getting a little noisy in the council chambers. It's hard to hear. Okay. Counselor Wong Tam?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have a motion that I'd asked the clerks to put on the screen. And the motion is to amend the mayor's motion. During the mayor's remarks, he probably said the word "fair" and "equitably", I'm going to say maybe 20 times between his remarks and then through a line of questioning. And I wanted to just do a couple of things. And I think it's just to ensure that we can, number one, rest comfortably by inserting the word "equitably" in front of the word "regulate", and then to remove the word "alternate ground transportation providers" by regulating all ground transportation providers. And then to insert some consideration for the City of Toronto's accessibility objectives, which I know that the mayor is a keen supporter of. Members of council, I have been hearing about the taxi debate. And obviously, we've been a part of it now for five years. And I've been on the floor of council. And every single time, the debate shifts a little bit. In 2011, the debate was between Ambassador Plate owners as well as Standard Plate owners. And that was the battlefield. And in 2014 and 2015, that's all shifted around. And that's what we have before us today. What I've heard consistently from the taxi industry, from MLS staff and from members of council is that they want regulatory fairness. And that regulatory fairness means that we have to have one system that is clear and accessible and works for everyone. Now, when Uber entered the market, I think we can all agree that they did in the most belligerent way. They were not respectful of their rules. They knew what the regulatory framework was, but they said, forget it. We're a technology company. The rules don't abide to us. They do not comply. So there is this overarching narrative of what I would gleam from it, the tone of doublespeak and I would say also a tone of bullying. Now, I am one that believes in fair market practices. I think it's really important that we never compromise public safety, that the consumer has to be protected at all costs. And I believe, members of council, Madam Speaker, they believe in those values as well. That's why we're here. What I have a problem with is this. I have a problem with the way Uber entered the market. And I think in many ways, that set the tone of trust or, in this case, the lack of trust. How do I trust a company that did not want to follow the rules and then said, the rules didn't apply to us, or now we're going to be outside the rules? And now we're going to apply for brokerage license, now we want rules. But the rules that they want are a whole different set of rules. They don't want to work within the existing regulatory framework. They want a new set of rules that apply to them. It's transportation network system. Now, as far as I can tell from the report, and this is actually really interesting, is that the way it works in other jurisdictions as they try to regulate Uber, it's a bit of a whack-a-mole. So it keeps changing from jurisdiction and jurisdiction. And everything is in flux and it's all moving. What I think that we need to do is to recalibrate and go back to Tracy and have her and her team, who I've asked, she canvassed every single person who's ever wanted to speak to me about taxi industry and regulations. And that includes iTaxi, the Taxi Forum, Beck, as well as the Taxi Association. And I've asked them, has Ms. Cook treated you fairly? Have you been heard? And without exception, they all said, yes, we have been heard. And I actually also spoke with Uber, I should also comment on that. And so I trust Tracy Cook and her team. And I trust that we... And I trust that we need to empower her to do that job. The whole comment about turning back the clock, I think the mayor is correct. He's not wrong on this one. And we also know that the industry has started to adapt. I've got two apps on my phone, one for BEC, one for Gattac Hub, which brings me a Crown Taxi or a Co-op Capsy. And I live downtown, which means I go out onto my street and I flag a cab. I cannot get into a cab that's not clearly marked. And I have friends who refuse to use Uber because they don't think it's safe. They don't believe it'll protect them, and they don't know if the driver is... Has a criminal check done or not. And so, this is why we need to support the mayor's motion, and this is why I'm amending... I'm going to ask for... To make this friendly amendment. And I think that every other member of council, what we need to do is get to a place of regulatory fairness, which is what we need to do, and not delay any further. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kary Janis to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a motion that I'd like to put forward. I think part of it should say 2016, if I can change that, number two. Thank you. Madam Chair, we've been talking today about Uber. We've been talking about technology. But the cracks of the matter is that it's not the technology that Uber brings to the table. It's UberX that we have to look at. UberX is a transportation division of Uber, and they've been in here and they were talking to us and the committee. And UberX is an unregulated, unlegislated part of their regime, and it has fallen through the cracks, and they're getting away with a lot. When Mr. Schaefer was here, I asked him the question, are you collecting HSD? And he went up to say that they don't have to collect HSD because their drivers are collecting less than $30,000. So I sent out something that was printed in the GST registration information for taxi limousines back in 1991. And this was signed by then Otto Jelinek, Minister of National Revenue. And on page five, clearly states, the changes are, all taxi and limousine fares will be taxable. This means that all independent taxi and limousine drivers must register for the GST regardless of their annual taxable revenues. Now, we had Mr. Schaefer here saying, no, 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 that's not the right thing. In everything that you buy, when you go to a store or you have something sent to you as a receipt, there's an HSD number on there. This is an Uber receipt. I don't see an HSD number on here. I see a surcharge of five times, $292, base fare of $5, $50 for the mileage, 51:32, $1799. Normal fee, $7303. Surcharge times five, $292. Subtotal, $365. Safe ride's $1. I don't see any HSD. Now, we started talking about the insurance, and Uber says, we have $5 million insurance. The insurance was there to protect them. There was an accident in the city of Toronto. The driver that used to drive for Uber went up to them and said, will you get me some coverage, please? Oops, there's no coverage. He's taking them to court. Uber says that we check the backgrounds of our drivers. We had three difficulties this summer, and the police are dealing with that matter. They say that we are able to do that very quickly. So when you, as a driver, or anybody that wants to drive for UberX goes, you see a little video for five minutes, and then within two days, you're driving. Any one of you that has tried to get police clearance and has gone on College Street, it takes about four to six weeks. They also say they do background checks with the CMP. Well, if you're applying to become an immigrant to this country, it will take you anywhere between three to four months to do background checks. Same thing if you're applying to become a teacher, or a doctor, or anybody else that needs checks for vulnerable people. So therefore, those checks are out the window. So we see that they're breaking federal laws without collecting HSD. We see that they don't... They're breaking the Highway Traffic Act, which is a provincial matter, and we certainly heard from here that they are also breaking all kinds of municipal acts. Now, UberX says that if you guys don't legislate this, we're going to move, and they've got no difficulty. And they say they're all over the world. So Uber ordered to cease operation in Spain. Uber ordered to cease operation in Portugal. Uber in France ordered to cease operation. Uber services banned in Germany. Uber Pop shut down in Brussels. Well, if they're threatening us to want to leave, that's fine. It is not the cab industry here. It's not UberX. Uber as a platform, that's fine. Everybody's got platforms. The real threat here is UberX. 15,000 vehicles plus that would be leashed out on our streets. The mayor has a program...
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Kary Janis. Your time's up.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
But we do have a question for you.
All right.
Counselor Matlow.
I have a question, Madam Speaker, about the course that Counselor Kary Janis is asking us to take to simply request that Uber just stop operating their business, and if there's been any suggestion that they'd ever be willing to do so. So Counselor Kary Janis, should City Council, when we approach Uber, like, should we say, please, pretty please, or just show up at their driveway holding a cigar?
Okay, please order.
How do you believe that this is, you know, so simple, simply to request that they do so?
Be careful with your question. You're referring to something that I might want to refer to the integrity commissioner. Just be careful.
Madam Speaker.
Just be very careful. Now, how do you send a letter to Uber? Well, I mean, they're here, they're listening. They listen to us all day. Maybe they'd like to step forward and say, yep, I'm stopping it, but I know that that's not their intention. It doesn't matter what you say to Uber, they will still continue operating. But it has to be in here. It has to be in here, because if we don't have it in here, the good citizens that are sitting around this chamber right here, they will say that we didn't do our work.
Do you believe that the majority of Torontonians simply want Uber to stop operating?
I think the majority of Torontonians are law-abiding citizens, unlike some other people that we know, and they want the framework in order for us to make sure that they're legitimate. Now, if you're supporting Uber and you're considering that they're legitimate, then I think you're smoking something that's... Maybe I should...
Okay.
It's been a long day.
It's, you know...
Are you what?
Like, I know. It's not appropriate. Do you know, Counselor Kary Janis, you should stop bullying members of council like that. It really...
On a point of personal privilege.
Yes. Counselor Mary Margaret McMahon just asked a question.
I think the bullying in this chamber is done by nobody else than you. You have bullied me.
Counselor Perks to speak.
Thank you, Speaker.
Let's move on.
Thank you, Speaker. I would be remiss if I didn't have a motion. So I'd like to move that notwithstanding the adoption of LS 6.1, City Council reaffirm its intention to... That all persons are to comply with Chapter 545 licensing as amended. Now, I know we've been challenged by Counselor Ford to try to use simple words and not get too smart about this, so let me just say what that means. That's just us as council saying, once we adopt all this, even though we're doing consultations, it is our expectation that everybody out there, whether they're from California or the city of Toronto, follows the law. That's what that does. Okay? Real simple, real straightforward. I want to use a couple of other little simple words. I want to have a taxi system where we're supporting legal drivers and where there aren't two tiers. That's pretty simple. But let me just tell you why it's not as easy as just saying those words. Right now, in the industry, today, we have two tiers. Today, you've got people who go out every day and work for a living in a cab that they lease called shift drivers, and then you've got a bunch of people like agents and fleet operators and plate owners and so on, who aren't actually doing that work, but they're making money off the driver every time the driver gets a fare. That's two tiers. Today, we have it. If you want to get to a system where people who work an honest day, make an honest buck, and everyone in Toronto knows when they get into a cab, they're safe and they're not going to get gouged in the price and the vehicle's reliable, you have to write some new rules. Anyone who's telling you that all we've got to do is just, you know, receive it all and that's it, and no more consultation, and it's all fixed, they're not telling you the truth. If we want to make sure that people driving cabs make a decent living, and if we want to guarantee that passengers getting into cabs are safe, we need to make some new rules. That's a fact of life. Now, what kind of rules do we need to have? We need to have rules around the price. Absolutely. If some young woman is coming downtown from Scarborough and is going to be going to a show and needs to go home at 3:00 in the morning, she needs to know how much money to have in her bag. That means that we put some caps on how much you can put the price up. That means no price surging. Pretty straightforward. It means that every cab on the street has to meet the same standard. That's real easy. Now, there are going to be new companies coming in who want to drive cabs, and they're going to operate vehicles. They have to meet exactly the same standard as everyone else in the industry. Does that mean that only the companies operating today can operate? No, it does not. And again, anyone who tells you different is not telling you the truth. If you want to be able to guarantee that there's going to be a way of tracking back who the driver was when there's a problem, we need to make sure our rules are updated and modernized. Anyone who tells you that we don't need to update them and modernize them in order to give that comfort and that safety is not telling you the truth. Those are simple concepts and simple words. You don't have to be a genius to understand them. We need to make things better than they are. That's why I'm supporting the mayor's motion. That's why everyone who wants to make sure that you can make a decent living as a taxi driver should be supporting the mayor's motion. That's why everyone who wants to know that there's safety and security when you get into a vehicle should be supporting the mayor's motion. Now, some people say it's simple. We just ban it. We just ban it. Really easy to do. Well, let's just look at how well that worked for us. We've got three reports in front of us today. One of them is a report from our city solicitor saying, we tried. We threw everything we had at it. We took Uber to court. We tried an injunction, and we lost. It is not as easy. You can't just use little words and simple ideas. You've got to be smart about it. That's why we've got to tighten up our rules. Anyone who tells you different is not telling you the truth. And finally, I want to be very clear about something. This is not me saying I'm in favor of Uber. This is not about any particular company at all. There is change happening in the industry. There are new technologies. You know what our job is here? Our job is to make sure those technologies are put to work by the people driving cabs so they're not wandering around looking for fares. They're getting to them faster and they're making more money. That's our job, to write rules that work for the workers and that work for the people who are getting in the cabs. If we just stick our head in the sand and pretend we can ban it, we're not telling you the truth. You might notice, nobody moved a motion to ban Uber today because everyone, even the people pretending otherwise, know that you can't just do it. It actually takes being smart to win this fight.
Counselor Burnside.
Madam Speaker, over the past 10 months, I've had numerous meetings with those in the taxi industry. And with each meeting, I've been told that they want a level playing field. But it seems today that the sentiment is really to ban Uber. So to me, it's not really a level playing field that the industry wants. It's they don't want a game at all. But here's the problem. Technology is such, demand is such, and supply is such, that even if we do vote to ban Uber, we couldn't stop it. We can't stop it. To tell people in this chamber and across the city we can is, in my opinion, disingenuous. Worse than that, it's giving people false hope about the state of affairs. We've heard lots of bluster today. Quite frankly, a lot of it's nonsensical. As it stands now, Uber has a huge advantage. If we ignore them or try to ban them or put into effect a ban that we can't enforce, they will continue to have a huge advantage. The only hope we have to level the playing field is to bring them into the fold and regulate them.
Okay. Counselor McConnell just to speak.
Madam Speaker, well, the first thing I want to do is to just amend the mayor's motion to indicate that we should have the report back in spring of 2016 so that we can get it immediately done. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that I would just want to tell you where I come from and why I come from it. I have a large number of people, friends, neighbors, in my community that drive taxi. I know their children. I know their families, and I know their struggles. And when we first began to try and deal with their lives, we went through a whole review of taxi reforms. And we're kind of at the end of that, but I wanted to go right back to the beginning of this. So, for example, the first taxi cab driver in this city was an owner-operated man who was a runaway slave, and his name was Thornton Blackburn. From that moment on, a slave started an industry that went through a lot of independence, a lot of wealth and fairness, and then suddenly took a very bad turn. Because what I found when we came into an amalgamated city and started to look at the taxi industry was those chains of slavery that Thornton Blackburn had thrown off were now back around the people who are my neighbors, the people who drive, the people who are at the steering wheels of these cars. And so, we began first with ambassadors, first looking at driver-operated. Now, I get that there were a whole bunch of other people that stopped driving their cabs and that they used their plates to rent out to others, and I understand that. But what I know is just what happened at the end of this, and that's why I would recommend to members of council that they support the direction that the mayor is suggesting so that we take those chains away from these drivers, so that we make a level playing field so that they are not being preyed on by yet one more thing. They are already preyed on. They are preyed on by the insurance industry that takes $11,000 a year. They are not able to own their own cars. Quite often, they have to, however, pay for their cars. And in fact, the rent that they pay basically is the mortgage on the car. They are paying brokerage fees. They are inundated with the fare box being robbed one after another, including the gas prices. By the time they get home, their babies have nothing to eat. And that is not right in a city that looks very seriously at minimum wage and at poverty reduction. And so, I'm saying to you that this is a much deeper conversation than has been portrayed by a few members of my colleagues. I want us to think about the importance of making sure that as much as possible, the taxis that are driven are driven by owner-operated, licensed, insured, and trained human beings, that we know are safe when our daughters and our wives and our children get into the that we know are safe when our daughters and our wives and our children get into those taxi cabs. I feel good to get into my taxi cabs. I do not feel at the moment that we have that safety and security with this other operator who uses some apps and who brings in something else called Uber. But Uber will be another name tomorrow, and another name tomorrow, and another name tomorrow. What we need to make sure is that the rules, and that's why we need to get Ms. Cook to bring us back the rules, that the rules are fair and that the chains come off from our drivers who have held up this industry while many others made money and where they had no money to bring back to their children and their families. And so when we talk about these things, it's not in isolation from that. And so I would recommend that we go back and remember that when we received the first report, we are saying, "No, we made a decision, we made a deal on taxi reform that helped our frontline driver." And that when we move towards any of the other things, that we say enough is enough. We have waited and waited for our drivers to be able to make minimum wage.
Thank you, Counselor.
I would suggest they should make a living wage in this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have a question, Mayor Torrey?
Well, I can frame it as a question only to say to Counselor McConnell and through you, Madam Speaker, and perhaps it's more directed to you, that I would be quite, would you be happy if I treated this as a friendly amendment to mine, because I'm quite happy to do so?
That would be fine, Mr. Mayor.
Putting spring on it with the concurrence of our executive director is better than what it says today, in terms of the date.
Yes.
I think there's some other things maybe to resolve in terms of dates, but I'm happy.
I think, Mr. Mayor, that the important thing is that our drivers need to know that this decision is not going to go on for four or five years, as they have been told by other members of council, that this is an opportunity that Ms. Cook has already got in hand and can report very quickly on, and we will get the level playing field that we have all tried since Thornton Blackburn. Thank you.
Counselor Perutzza to speak.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Speaker, I am not a fan of Uber. In fact, the more I come to understand the concept of what Uber is, in fact, the more I dislike Uber. And let me tell you why. I was at the corner of Bathurst and Shepherd. I went there to meet a friend of mine for coffee. In fact, he's got a letter in front of us today, Rosario. And as I pulled into the coffee shop, there was this tent set up with this little table. And the roof of the tent said Uber. And there had some four or five young folks, and there was this young woman, very, very bubbly, bubbly personality. And what they were doing at that tent was they were recruiting people. And I sat there for a few minutes, and I happened to be on my motorcycle, so I got offered no recruitment advice. But I sat there for a few minutes, and imagine this. They were offering you a job, free gas. So I thought to myself, wow, this is, how does it get better than that? Like, here on street corners, offering you a job and free gas as well. Wow, that's what Uber is. Uber is a recruitment agency. That's really their function, that's really their job. That's at the core of what, who they are. You know what the lifespan of an Uber driver, I'm told, is? Three months! That's not a job! Three months! So you sign on, you get a little free gas, you get an application, and you start trolling the city. I'm trolling. I'm looking for a ride. I'm waiting for my phone to buzz, because my ride, where is it? And then the phone buzzes, oh, I'm near the corner, here I am, this is my ride, this is my $15. Here it is. I've been driving along, I don't know how many hours, but here's my $15. Well, yeah, you take a ride or two. Three months later, you say to yourself, you know what? It's better for me to go to the local pizzeria, deliver some pizzas. I'm going to make way more money there, right? What kind of gig is this? Right? No money, no future, no more free gas, I've got to pay for my own. So once you figure that out, and you're about to sign off, well, you know what's happened? That recruitment agency has filled your spot three, four, five times over with three, four, five other suckers. That's what they've done. So they come on, and they do the same thing. You know who the real winner in all of this is? It's not even the consumer. We're going to, that's right, it's Uber. It's the recruitment agency. They got the swanky application that people can look at and follow around and say, oh geez, I know where my ride is, and I know where my son and daughter is or isn't, and all the rest of it. You don't know who they're with! You don't know where they're going. You don't know who's picked them, huh? You have no clue. Zero. They've been picked up by, you know, by a fly-by-night person. And I was asking Counselor Krepp here if she might think of doing that. She tells me she drives a swanky car. I'd love to get in the backseat of her swanky car. Let me read that one up. Listen, we have, we have an industry, there's no question, that is plagued with problems. I heard the term level playing field 100 times over today. There is no such thing. There is no level playing field here. They don't play on a level field, none of them do. There's shift drivers, there's agents, there's brokers, there's licensed plate owners, there's people who own cars. It's not leveled, there's ambassador plates, there's regular plates. There is no such thing as a level playing field. But at least what we have is we have folks who at the end of the day can at least earn a living for themselves and for their families. We need to do everything we can. We keep the recruitment agency off the street corner.
Counselor Layton to speak.
Madam Speaker, do I really have to go after that? Can I just go lower on the list by a couple people?
Okay, if I can have, please, members of the public to please keep it down, it's very noisy. And Counselor Layton, you're up to speak. There you go.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm going to be very brief. There was a, it came up in part of the conversation, I think it was Counselor Matlow that raised this, this point of comparison around file sharing on websites like, or applications like Napster, if you can remember that one. It was a short-lived, peer-to-peer, file-sharing program that essentially allowed individuals to pirate music and not, in fact, give money back to the artists and NDS corporations that were involved in the production of that. And everyone thought it was very revolutionary, we all loved it. The problem was, we were breaking several copyright laws by doing that. And that was later, that later proven to be, to be not necessarily the, an application that's terribly above board. And now that did morph into something that paid artists, that had proper registration and royalty fees. But it was regulated. And that's the essential and key to all of this, is the notion that, yes, it's reasonable for a government like the City of Toronto to regulate an industry like we do the taxi industry, and not tolerate those that come into the space and masquerading as something else, but essentially are just circumventing the regulatory requirements of the jurisdiction. This isn't ride sharing. Ride sharing is a great fuzzy word that makes us all feel good about being part of this new economy, but it's not ride sharing. It's a taxi service. We regulate taxi services, which is why we should have regulations that are the same for all taxis in our city. Having said that, I also agree with Counselor Perks that right now, we don't have a taxi system that is the same for everyone in our city. There are several tiers and different ways of being a taxi driver in our city. And what we did last term, what we did last term was we tried to put us in the direction of making that right. And we did, and we did it with a very large margin on council. We set us off in that direction. And I'm pleased to say, I'll be supporting the motion to receive one of the three reports that will continue us along that road, so that we return to a time when drivers are their own bosses. That we have a driver-based system that focuses on the benefits of drivers, those that are out there every day, pulling the long shifts, not seeing their family, missing their moments with their loved ones, because they're out working to try to put food on the table. Yes, there'll be some shift drivers in that scenario, but there won't, it won't be a system breaking the backs of the tens of thousands of shift drivers. But in order for us to ensure that we don't now indirectly create or allow to continue a system of two tiers with those that are complying with the rules, that have the appropriate training, licenses, insurance, and with them the same payment, those higher payments, so that they're not competing with the, with those that aren't complying to the rules, we need to start figuring out what that looks like. Now, there's a great article, and I just found this, from the Transportation Law Journal, that lists why we have these regulations and why we limit the number of cab drivers on our roads. And it's things like a decline in driver income, a deterioration of service because people are fighting for your fares because there's so many damn cabs on the road, because of the highway congestion, it adds. Imagine, 17,000 additional trips on the road. That's like one-way on the gardener, that we're just adding all those cars in, and if they're rolling around the area or the downtown core, that's going to, that's going to paralyze our city. And the fact is, that's what you do. And they call it surge pricing, when the pricing creates because demand is higher and that's where the cars go. That's what's going to happen every day in the downtown core. And the most interesting thing about that is that actually decreases the availability of vehicles like this in the suburban areas. Now, they call it price surging. It's actually in this article, it's been dated back to the 16th and 17th century, called cream skimming. When you actually, you go to the area where the fares are being made, and the level of service in another area suffers. So you're taking out service, making it less available to some by allowing this. That's why we have these regulations. So we need to create this, I'll support the mayor's motion only in that. We need to develop the proper set of rules. And that doesn't mean flooding this, flooding the system with a bunch of unregulated drivers. It means a level playing field on not only insurance and training, but brokerage fees, fares, licensing fees, the requirements for cars.
Counselor Layton, thank you, your time's well. Members of council that are interested in the score, the top of the seventh, we're winning eight-nothing.
Do we have a seventh inning stretch thing?
Yeah, we have to do the seventh inning stretch, we need that. Counselor Campbell to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. After quite a number of hours of debate and discussion, I think that the one element that has not been, I think, appropriately reflected in our, in our talk has been reflection on the consumer. And we ask, why is Uber so successful? And I don't know that the average age of council here is necessarily representative of the typical Uber user, with the exception of Counselors Layton and Cressy.
And Mahavik.
And Mahavik, yeah, well, okay, that's stretching it. But in speaking with members of my staff, members of what we might call a younger generation, there's a certain affinity to Uber because of the use of the technology, and not only that, but the ease of which they can hire a car. They don't have to produce cash, they are allowed to use credit card. In fact, credit card is the only way in which they can hire a car. Complaints that have come from this particular constituency with, in regard to the existing taxi industry are that not so much of price, but it has to do with ease of use. So the consumer, I'm not necessarily a consumer advocate, but I view that our role here as governors of the city is to foster and safeguard a car-for-hire system that is reliable, predictable, affordable, and safe. And to that end, it is in our interest to make sure that the existing taxi industry is a profitable one, and one in which people can realize a decent living. Now that being said, I still feel that customers and consumers should have a right to choose. Essentially, what we have, it's talked about as being a two-tier system, I look at it a little differently. In my view, what there are is there is a different standard. You pay a higher standard to sit in a taxi, you have the security measures that have been put in place by City Hall. If you want to set foot in an Uber car, an Uber car, UberX car for hire, then you're prepared to, you're prepared to purchase a lower standard. There are two standards. This is not unlike the hotel industry. In the hotel industry, if you buy, if you buy certain brands, you have certain expectations. You buy a lower brand, you pay a lower fare. We talk about, there's been talk about surge pricing, which kind of befuddles me, because, you know, if there's, hotels do it all the time. Book a hotel on a Thursday night, and then book it on a Friday night. The hotel industry does this all the time. I'm going to support a regulated business because I think to, a regulated car-for-hire industry, because I think that to not do so would be irresponsible on our part. I don't know that we can necessarily expect all of the same regulations. As I was pointing out to my colleague, Counselor DeBaer-Maker, the taxi industry will still enjoy certain advantages that another car-for-hire industry will not. UberX, how they entered the market, I don't know that that's necessarily relevant. We have talked a lot about the history of them coming into the market, the way that they have been predatory. These are all not necessarily, in my view, relevant right now. What's relevant is how we go forward and how we put in regulations that are fair to both industries. We need to, I think, empower and enable consumers to be able to buy a different variety of car-for-hire services. We also need to be cognizant of the need to protect an industry. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Counselor Kelly to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker, a year ago, within the context of the plate system, I was attempting to work reform of the industry within that context. But that was soundly defeated by council. And I've reached the conclusion, Speaker, that to restore that system in whole or in part is basically futile. And for that reason, Speaker, I'm standing to support the motions introduced by the mayor this afternoon. Although people have used Uber as a reference point in this debate, what we're really looking at, Speaker, is the impact of new technology. 20 years ago, as a metro counselor, when we were debating taxi reform, we would never have envisaged the technology that's in play today. And who knows what the heck the technology will be tomorrow? Over the past year, what has become very obvious is that the public accepts and supports this new technology. We are living, Speaker, at the beginning of a technological revolution that I think will rival that of the industrial revolution of a few hundred years ago. Authors are beginning to turn their minds to this challenge. And Speaker, if you read a book like And Speaker, if you read a book like "Average is Over" by Tyler Cowen, you would realize that the world that many of us were born and raised in is fading rapidly. And it's incumbent on us to try as best we can to integrate this new technology with the old in as seamless and effective way as possible. If you try to ban the new technology, Speaker, you will fail. Because frankly, and I hope everyone understands this premise, you govern with the consent of the governed. And those people whom we govern have already spoken. They want this new technology to work on their behalf. If you try to ban it, frankly, the only conclusion will be to bring this government in disrepute. Now, in talking with representatives of the taxi industry, what I heard over and over again was, create a level playing field. And having played a lot of sports in my youth, I understand that concept of a level playing field. And my expectation of our support of the mayor's motions, and those of many of our colleagues, is that instead of having a dual regulatory system, one for the industry as it is basically today, and one for the industry that would be using new technology, that we will come up with one regulatory system. And it's my hope, Speaker, that the regulatory burden of this new system will be considerably lighter than the industry experiences today. This analysis that we're asking Tracy Cook to undertake on our behalf won't be easy. But I think in the end, what we will have is a modern streamlined bylaw that will maximize benefits to both the participants in the industries and the riders that use them.
Councillor Cressy.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and I will be brief in the interest of time here. This debate regarding taxis has gone on since the beginning of time, it seems. This is one that has come back and back and back. I spoke to my parents, who were here in the 70s when they debated this. We had the 97 reforms, the 14 reforms, the 14 reforms, by the way, which were an important step towards fairness. And then we're here again. If we were going back to the beginning, from scratch, well frankly, I would have a very different view about how you do all this. I would view the taxi and limousine industry as a public transit body, and I would say we would have city employees who managed it, and we would control the fleet. I don't think we're going there, and I'm not proposing it. But it is what they do in Korea. But that's not where we are. So where are we today? Well, where we are today is ensuring that we have regulatory fairness, that the same rules have to apply to everybody. That's for the health and safety of the passenger, as well as the driver. And our other focus should be and must be on the drivers themselves. These drivers in our city deserve a decent living wage and working conditions that will allow them to live, and live well with their families. Now, technology, and the innovation of technology, does not mean that we should weaken our standards and weaken the regulations that we've spent a long time putting in place. And the fact is, as it stands right now, Uber is not playing by the rules. I may be part of that demographic, but they're not playing by the rules. And therefore, I'm not ready to say they can be here. And so I will be supporting the mayor's motion, because at its core, it is about ensuring regulatory fairness. And I will say that when it comes time to have this debate yet again, because it is the debate that never ends, so we'll be right back here shortly, that while regulatory fairness is the key driver that we're all looking at, my focus, the key driver for me, is indeed the working conditions and wages of the drivers themselves. And what we will hear back, as it relates to the Employment Standards Act, and what Ontario is going to do, that's what I'm looking at. Because right now, it's not just about regulatory fairness, it's about ensuring that it's the drivers who are working the hardest have a chance to earn a decent living wage with good working conditions. And until we can do that, frankly, I'm not interested in doing anything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Carroll.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have two motions that, following along the line of my questioning, I don't know if I have to read them. They are on a motion, a standalone motion from councillor Carmichael Grev, and then on two of the actual recommendations in the report, three and four. What I'm doing is simply adding, at the same time as the report, on the framework to regulate all the, in other words, the report coming forward as per the mayor's request at the beginning of this long debate. So I hope that the what's deleted and that phrase added in are understood, simply to bring the timing together. I'm not really prepared to support, because councillor Davis just nicknamed them, some of the motions are laundry lists of things that we're now throwing in at the last minute. And that is how the taxi industry in Toronto got where it is today. Councillor Cressy just went through, starting in the 70s, some of the dates at which we did these things. But at every one of these junctures, we have done good committee work, as Chair Palazzo has tried to do, tried to do good committee work. And then when it came time to bring it to council, we then began to reform the reform, which is policy on the fly. And these drivers have been living with it, and the various types of plate owners have been living with it and suffering from it every time we do an ill-advised tweak. And so what I'm doing is supporting the mayor's action, because I think I want what everybody wants. We know that for as long as this city has any kind of an economy at all, there will be people that want their own ride. They don't want to get on the transit system, they want to get in a car and be taken door to door, and they want to feel comfortable with their driver. And the driver wants to feel that he's in a safe and a fair working situation, just as the passenger does. He doesn't want to be used and abused by a set of rules that have gone too far or too onerous, or an owner that has taken advantage of some awkward rule that has become too onerous. He doesn't want to be downloaded with all of the costs that probably shouldn't be there in the first place. Those are all things we have to fix, and we know that. Because all we really want to do is put these drivers together with passengers to be able to do the thing they know they do best. So what I would propose is that we allow a professional. General manager Cook has tried very many times, dating back to the initial attempt at reform, before we realized what a threat Uber was bringing to town. The first huge consultation began in order to bring us to the 2014. She has credibility in this community. They know that the direction here to sit down and listen one more time will be carried out, because she's done it before, and listened very, very long and hard to what each of the groups had to say. So what I want is simply to align some of the dates together, to allow her to do that work. Because I know that if she does that, what she's going to put in the hands of Chair Palazzo is something that he really can bring to committee and wrap up for us. Chair Palazzo has pointed out, there are about 12 different directives that still have to come back. There's still, recommendation four is one of the ones I'm actually aligning the date, which is about the limousine industry. We don't want to leave it hanging out there and coming back at a different date. We've got to get to the point where everything is being brought together, because that's the only way, by bringing in that one report in one set of timing. It's not just to save us from having a debate in this room. It's not just, you know, we made jokes about debate councillor Carmichael Grev and I, but it's also about making sure that that level playing field is possible. It's only possible if all of these reports are coming together at the same time, so that we can measure them, one against the other, and hear from the industry that they think we're there. But I think they've heard loud and clear, you're all on Twitter, you guys are watching social media, and you know that at the end of the day, the customer wants to move into the future. I, you know, while there are a lot of senior citizens out there, and I'm joining the biggest cohort of Canadians, as are most of members of council, you heard from the younger members of council, that's where the Uber customer is coming from. And we've got to come up with an industry that they'll buy into, so that you will stay in business. And that's what this report will make possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. We do have questions. Councillor Palazzo, three minutes clarification.
Thank you. Councillor Carroll, my question to you is, as you know, that during the last four years, we have collectively spent thousands and thousands of hours debating these items that keep some coming back. And as you may recall, during the taxi review last year, we still had a number of outstanding issues, and I believe we had 12 directives from council.
Right.
And those are the reports that at whatever point will come to these council chambers. So my question to you is, is your intention to have all of them, all these directives to come to city council, including some of the recommendations that are before us today, in that one single report, as opposed to keep on coming back forever?
Exactly. And while not all 12 are in 6.1, we are dealing with all the items that are on agenda today. Inasmuch as we can bring them all together, those that are mentioned in the recommendations in 6.1 now all come together in this report. We can keep on doing that, so that for your committee, they have it all together in a cohesive menu that allows you to be the unifying force that we've needed in this consideration of this industry for a long time. I don't think we got all the way there in 14, else you would not still have been dealing with the objections. We got close, but then someone rode into town with a grenade and tossed it into the middle of where you were trying to go. That's why I was kind of glad to see you made chair again, because really, we have the biggest item in your committee, had we handed it to a whole new group of players, we'd have a problem. You know where we were at in 14, you know the players sitting here in this chamber, but now we have to bring it all together. And bringing it all together, along with the solution to a bad player in the industry, Uber, so that the solutions all complement one another, that's how this field, which is what we've been calling all day a playing field, gets flat and level, and these people stay in business.
Thank you, Councillor Carroll.
Councillor Mamalidi.
So councillor Carroll, you know that, you've been here long enough to know that if this gets delayed any further, there will be a report that might take some time, because there's no real date attached to this.
It's the second quarter of 2016.
So what do you say, based on the fact that you're going to be supporting this delay, what are you going to say to all of those taxi cab drivers that are on their last leg and can't afford to keep doing what they're doing for the next few months?
Well, I say to the people in this room that I did not support your sort of open-ended deferral delay. I'm actually quite in favor of a now very specific report back by the end of the second quarter of 2016.
We could have dealt with it today.
Because you, in fact, were going to leave them in limbo.
No, actually, we could have dealt with it today. And there is a recommendation. Recommendation one speaks to giving staff the opportunity to bring everybody into the fold.
Had we dealt with it today, in the way that I think people think would have given effect to a ban, I don't think we would have solved their problem. And I think by Christmas of 2016, when people are really using cabs, they would not be getting in cabs. I think that by the second quarter of 2016, the solution that Ms. Cook is intending to bring forward to us, does in fact expedite it, while at the same time, giving the insurance industry in the province time to solve that and get it back to us. And by moving it to a specific point in 2016, I am doing the opposite of what you just asked me if I was doing.
What are you going to do when the report changes the scope?
Yes.
The guidelines that they've had to adhere to? What are you going to do when that changes, and when Uber gets the upper hand? Because that's what's going to happen with this report.
Councillor Mamalidi, I am not prepared to fear monger and manipulate the understanding of the people in this room as to what the report is going to say, because the report doesn't exist yet. So I'm not going to do performance art in this council chamber and try to tell them what a report will say that I haven't seen yet. I think that is an inhumane thing to do to people in an industry who are struggling and terrified right now. I won't make that worse.
Right, no. Instead, perhaps you think that this industry is dumb enough to not know what's going on in this chamber.
Councillor Mamalidi, clarification of the motion.
When a few of you have decided to support...
Okay, councillor Mamalidi, you're out of order.
And then we'll try...
No. Councillor Carroll, he's out of order. Okay. Councillor, no, there's, no. Councillor Shiner, you're up to speak. Councillor Shiner.
Can you get order in the chamber first, and I'll gladly speak?
Yes. Okay, members of council. Okay, councillor Shiner.
Sorry, can we get, I don't want to fight with the crowd either, and I don't want to stand here and yell. So if you could get order, I'll start then.
If I can please ask the members of the public and members of council to please keep it down. Councillor Shiner.
Madam Speaker, first to my colleagues, but the motions here, decide on them as you wish. I think most of them are okay, but the motions by councillor De Beermaker, which are technical in nature, if you actually know what CMVSS and CMVSS 201 and all these codes are, vote for it. If you don't, I really suggest you don't, because you're going to make it worse for everybody in the industry, putting standards in place. And I see my colleague councillor Perks is there, who supports good environmental initiatives, but this isn't. This will hurt everybody, so please, councillor De Beermaker is off track today, don't support those. What are we talking about? We're talking about a car-for-hire system. I heard my colleague councillor Campbell say that, and he's actually right. What is it? And then I listened to my colleague and one of the older members of council, councillor Kelly, in his wisdom, talk about technology.
Older serving.
No, I'm one of the older members of council as well, so I can talk that way, please.
Councillor Perks.
But I don't want to use up my time on that, please, and I don't want to...
Yeah, please.
There is a real unfairness in the current system. It doesn't work, and the drivers have been and are being, continue to be abused, because you've got fleet owners, you've got brokers, you've got plate owners, you've got lessees, you've got agents, all these get a piece of the action before the poor driver himself gets anything. It's not fair. And what is their dream, when I hear them at committee? They want to be the plate owners to get a piece of that action and put an unfairness on others. That's not fair. And being an older one, we had a facility right next to Co-op cabs, and you could buy a taxi plate for $10,000. Then a 25, 50, 100, 200, why? Because of the user's fees that the plate owners get to charge. So in came the ambassador system trying to fix it, and in came another system trying to fix that, because we're trying to make it better and a level playing field. But it is technology. Because being an older member of council, I remember calculators you pressed, you either pulled a handle or it was electric, you had to plug it in. And I talked in class when I was in high school about a calculator you could get for $10 that would be portable. And they told me, you can't do that. Well, now it's two bucks. And you can have it, you don't even need a battery, it's operated by light. It was the future. I remember people were proud, they were working on assembly lines. Please councillor Davis, please, I don't want to lose my train of thought, and I want to stay in it. Where on assembly lines, they took such pride in the work they could do, that are now replaced by computers operating machines, whether it's painting or assembly or what else. The future came. What we're talking about now isn't a driver being dispatched by the internet, because the internet is here and the systems are here. What you're talking about is a new way to get a car for hire. And Uber is just the beginning... And Uber is just the beginning of the automated car that's going to be dropped off at your door and pick you up and take you to your destination. The industry, as you see, is going to change. Those cars are not far away. And that'll be the regulations of the future. And that's what's going to be coming. So you have to take the industry and understand that, and make the changes that are in place. When I hear about the fees and, and all these issues, it wasn't the city, because I was here that imposed them. It was the industry that came back and said, allow us to raise the fees. Limited number of plates, limited availability of cabs, we've got to have a bigger start charge. Can't be 350, it's got to be 450. Used to be 250. Used to be $2, it kept going up. So what happens? Technology has taken over. Instead, I can get you a car ordered, you can know where it is, you can know who the driver is, it'll pick you up, it'll drop you off, it'll charge you automatically for it, and you can get the heck out of there. And that's what's happening in the future. And the industry hasn't kept up. The industry is still a userless industry, making the drivers pay the fare for everybody else that is using them. And that is not fair and has to change. So we have to understand that. And you have to understand, as we go forward with the report that may try to level the playing field for now, it's like leveling water on an angle. As soon as you get one side done, the other side's going to tip over, because this is not going to be a playing field that's easy to watch. This is two bucks. This wasn't possible 25, 30 years ago, you couldn't have it. It's $2 now. And the industry is going to change. And we really need to let the industry and the city work together to provide the leadership that the city of Toronto can provide for the Toronto, for Ontario, for Canada, and right across North America. Get with it. This technology is here, the industry is changing, and you have to accept the fact that the future is not going to be the present, and people have to get on with it, because it's coming.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Shiner. Counselor Thompson to speak.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Speaker, I rise after having listened to a lot of the debates and discussions and questions here in the chamber today. Having also taken a lot of time to read the legal and confidential document from our solicitors and so on, and listening to the questions that have been posed, and also just using some basic common sense in terms of the questions that I asked earlier about the activities of Uber, and wondered through my questioning to the, the general manager for licensing, Ms. Cook. We asked about the banned at taxis and so on, and she indicated that Uber is in fact a banned at organization in essence. We also heard earlier today that there were questions with respect to the chief of police and a response with respect to why he is having some challenges in terms of enforcing our bylaws and responding to the whole host of some 15,000-plus vehicles that are out there, knowing that the police are outmanned, outwombed, out HR, out resources in order to fully embark on any type of corrective measures in order to enforce our rules. MLS has 40 officers, MLS enforcement officers, who I'm sure are not all dedicated to taxis, and in fact are not able to address some of the challenges within the taxi industry itself, much less to be able to look at addressing the issues with Uber. So having also recognizing, and I have great respect for many people in the taxi industry, all of the different players which have been mentioned, which I won't bother to mention here, recognizing that change is always something that is constant, and it is something that we often take a tremendous amount of, of time and difficulties in terms of accepting. Recognizing as well, Madam Speaker, that because there are rules now that Uber is not following, and at this point in time in terms of talking about a ban, which I think ideally would be appropriate if we were to get an agreement on the Uber X aspect, because I understand that most people are in agreement with respect to Uber Black, right? That's what I understand. And so we have a challenge. And so we have problems. We do, you heard about all of the safety, security, risk, and all of those associated elements as it relates to Uber. And this is around the world, that this is actually taking place. We see that there is, in my view, no other way, but is in fact, as the mayor has put forward his motion, which is to look at regulating the industry in order to ensure, as you say, Mr. Mayor, a level playing field. I didn't agree with that even up till earlier today. But having listened to the discussion, having listened to the debates, I've come to the conclusion that is really the only option that's actually left in front of us, because we have rules now which Uber is not following. And I'm not sure how you make them follow more rules without actually bringing them in and consulting with the industry as part of what is being requested to be done by Ms. Cook, and then to ensure that the, the people who are now involved in the industry are not going to essentially put in a position where they can't operate. And so there are measures that have to be taken in order to readjust some of the costs associated with the current taxi industry that we as council should ensure that takes place. And I think we can absolve our, absolve ourselves of blame as being decision makers. We have, for whatever reason, used this industry in, in a variety of ways, and not having helped them sufficiently to be able to address challenges and new technology that has come into place. So we've always been playing catch-up, and that has been a problem. So we see all the people that are here today wanting certainly, that, as I would, to protect the industry, but at the same time, the way with respect to technology that has come into place is going to dramatically alter and change the way the industry work. We're seeing it in front of us. So we can either say, okay, blind ourselves to the mere fact of what's happening, or say, let's look at regulating, and that's the only option that I can actually see in front of us. And as I said, I didn't come to this with the agreement that I would support the mayor. In fact, I told the mayor's staff yesterday that I would not support them, but I would listen to the conversation and listen, and I have, and I've come to my conclusion, that's why I'm going to vote in support.
Thank you. Okay, last speaker, Counselor DiGiorgio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I come to this particular issue with, first of all, very healthy respect for private enterprise. I know that private enterprise can do wonderful things, especially when they're supported by governments. But I also know that when private enterprise asks for special consideration, we may get into problems. We have a regime that's in place, that has been in place for a long time, and a lot of drivers started in that regime, worked very hard, very hard, and reinvested into the business in that same regime. Never did they imagine that the rules would be changed in the middle of the game. And yes, there are drivers that perhaps are having difficult time making money today, but those same drivers, I don't think fully comprehend the fact that people who started out in the industry as drivers 40 and 50 years ago faced similar difficulties, and they put in extra hours. What is the regime that we need? What is this illusion that we're basically giving into that says there is an optimal regulatory regime? And I say to you, what is the foundation of that system or regulatory scheme? Will it recognize as a founding principle that it is some, a, a regime that is appropriate and acceptable to all the participants in the industry? Protects consumers? Protects the drivers? And allows people to make a living? Work full-time in the industry and make a living? And will that regulatory regime ensure that the city retains control in this regime, in this intervention in the marketplace? That we retain control over the total number of cars that are out on the roads servicing the residents in the city of Toronto? And will we also agree that a founding principle in that regulatory regime will be that all drivers on the road will be driving properly vehicles that are licensed by the city? It will become evident very quickly that that optimal licensing regime is a phantom. But we'll see over time, all right? I'm certainly not opposed to examining further the possibility of this euphoric system to be found. You know, don't lose sight of the fact, don't lose sight of the fact that we had an industry that was experiencing internal discontent. It was fragmented, and we were introducing some reforms, trying to cope with the discontent that existed in the industry, trying to cope with the inequities that existed in the industry. And we were making progress. And along comes Uber and Uber X, multi-million dollar, billion-dollar company. And they see opportunity. What is it that Uber X or Uber knows that we don't know? They know that there's no perfect number of cars to be on the road to service the residents of the city of Toronto. They know that they're not interested in being a taxi business, kind of taxi businesses that have existed in the past. They know that they're a bottom-line company, and they sense blood. They know that collectively, all the participants in the industry have invested in the neighborhood of a billion dollars. And that billion dollars that was invested over time is declining, not at a glacial rate, but at a very rapid rate. And that is an opportunity for a multi-billion dollar company. Uber X will succeed in only one way. If they're allowed to continue to operate illegally. That is the only way. To operate illegally, continue to operate illegally while we search for a level playing field, which doesn't exist.
Thank you, Counselor DiGiorgio. Point of privilege, Counselor Shiner.
Speaker, I'm, I'm afraid to show my age, but I've been corrected, because my calculator and the technology for that has been replaced for a free unit on the iPhones and every other unit. So technology continues to go much faster than I've, I have accounted for. But thank you.
Okay, Counselor Shiner, I believe we're all getting old. I was around Metro as well, I remember all those days. Does there anybody else that wants to speak on this item before we go to the last speaker? Counselor Cho.
Yes, um, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, when I was listening to everybody, thank God I'm not mayor.
I'll second that. Hey, thank God you're not mayor.
You know, the mayor is mayor for taxi driver, taxi owner, middleman, Uber, Uber X, but he's mayor for everybody. And I understand why he's bringing this great motion, I think it's a very good motion, but still I'm voting against that motion. I'm not against the mayor, against this motion, and this is why. You know, I've been councillor for a long time, and I think I could take a great pride that I'm man of principle and man of reality. You know, I, I have a meeting with so many people from both sides, but one person really touched my heart. I'm a family man, I'm a grandfather, I'm one of the longest-serving councillor. And this particular taxi driver said, Counselor Cho, I have three children, one is in high school, the other two in university. You know, since Uber guys came to town, my income just dropped. I could hardly pay for my rent. I don't know whether I could help my two university kids graduate from the university. I value education. Thank God I came to great country. My three sons, they got the best education, two are medical doctors and high school teacher. But when I listen to that taxi driver, you know, I'm going to fight for you. And, you know, I, I liked especially mayor's revised motion that this thing comes back spring next year, but who knows? We get to report, the report is not ready, so it's going to be postponed, delayed again another four months, and then, you know, on and on. You know, I, I understand, I'm kind of old-fashioned, not just in my age, but when it comes to IT, I'm, I'm living in 19th century person. But thank God I have a very smart wife and have excellent staff, so I could cope very well. But I understand, you know, they're far advanced country in so many ways, such as France, they banned Uber totally. Originally, I'm from South Korea. South Korea banned Uber, you know, when it comes to IT. We live in best country, Canada, but I have to admit that we are far behind when it comes to high-tech and technology compared to South Korea. And they banned. And they say if the president of Uber comes to Korea, they will arrest him. Why? I don't know. So, and then I also learned that in Vancouver, they have Uber, they didn't ban, but they classified as a limousine. So actually, they cannot operate. So we have to look at all this side, but especially, I'm coming back to that particular taxi driver, you know, Counselor Cho, I need your help. I don't want to see my family become homeless. And it really touched my heart, and that is why I'm not supporting mayor's good motion. And I have lots and lots of respect, our mayor, he's working hard, he's a very good mayor. But on this issue, I'm not going to support, looks like a lot of councillors, they will support mayor's motion, but I'm, I'm going on my own principle. When it comes back, it's a really level field of, level feeling, a level playing field, we'll find out. You know, if the, the executive director says, you know, Uber, they take less money, so they is charging, charging less is a level feeling, a level playing field, whereas the taxi cab, they have to charge more. So I heard the executive director said earlier, who's the level playing field we're talking about? It's almost like there are two, two tiers of level feeling, playing field. So I don't know. I'll, I'll see what happens when the report comes back, but today, I'm going to be on the losing side. So pardon me, mayor, I like you, you're a great mayor, but on this one, I will not support it.
Thank you. Okay, please. Are there any further speakers? Okay, so we'll go to the last speaker, which is Counselor Palacio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First and foremost is, I want to thank all the members of the audience for taking the day off to be here and to be part of the participatory and discussion and listening carefully to what's happening here. I want to thank all members of council for being so passionate about it and for taking a real interest in what's happening and with, with something that's very important to all of us in this great city of Toronto. Now, one of the things that I wanted to, to clarify from the very beginning is a conversation that I had with, with, with the mayor some time ago. It was, I believe, that even before we were sworn in. And we had a discussion about Uber. And at that point, we did discuss about Uber Black, the SUVs, the Uber taxis, the Uber Limos. And at that point, it seems like the real understanding is there was no problem with that, and the industry didn't have any problems with them as well. But it was also understood, and my understanding, Mr. Mayor, was that Uber But it was also understood, and my understanding, Mr. Mayor, was that Uber X was the problem and something needed to be done. So, now, and that's something that I took to heart because I thought that was extremely important for all of us as we move forward, that we have to have a real understanding of who the culprits are and what needs to be done to rectify the wrongs. And I understand, of course, the intention of the mayor's recommendation, that's to create a level playing field for all and hopefully to come back with a workable framework that's going to create justice for all. I also understand that it's that we need to take bold and innovative action to address critical challenges that we're facing, especially when it comes to creating a good environment for people to conduct business by eliminating unnecessary regulations and red tape, that's extremely important as well. However, I do have some concerns. We have an existing by law under chapter 545, as we all know, that's fair. We have a by law that has served well to the industry, we have a by law that has served well to the public, and we have a by law under the same chapter that could have served well Uber. One of the concerns that I have is with all the recommendations that we have here, that some of them I'll be recommending, I'll be supporting, is that when we come back, back in 2016, it's hopefully in the spring, that there may be a regulatory framework that will allow that kind of self-regulation for Uber to govern themselves. And hopefully that I'm wrong with my assumption. If that was the case, hypothetically speaking, that will be the wrong message I will send to everyone out there and to the public. And the message should be, for those who have the money, the power, and are strong, they can, yes, they can break the law, because they have the money to spend, they have the money to spend and to fight back, and they can get away with it. And that has been the case with Uber. And that's one of my concerns and in principle, and that's one of the reasons that I will not support is what's before us, in principle because of that. Uber has created this monstrosity, is not the taxi industry. Now, one of my concerns is between now and then, that's going to be probably another year, these very people that have been very faithful to this city for more than 100 years and they are struggling to survive, working one or two or three jobs to make ends meet, people that are poor in their homes, that have been mortgaged. Now, that bothers me because they are on the verge of being eliminated by those who are breaking the law, and that's not fair. However, my friends, our responsibility as members of council is to ensure, as regulators, that we do the best for the public and the best for this great city of Toronto. Within the last five years that I've been serving as Chair of the License Standards Committee, let me tell you that great things have also been done through the tax review that was undertaken. Things in terms of consumer protection, health and safety issues, the accessibility aspect, that's something that the accessibility community spoke loud and clear and we were able to listen carefully and we were able to do something that was and is very important to them. In terms of affordability, we are doing and taking the right steps to move forward that, in terms of reliability, and also what's very important to the industry is the financial viability and fairness overall. To end, I believe that justice delay, it's justice deny. Thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you. That is it for the speakers. Now, gonna suggest that we take a 10-minute break before we vote on the motions, yes? So we can get in order, but I just have a question before. We have two options on the order, because we have three items before us. And so, what I would recommend is that we vote the order, the three different items, that we vote on LS 3.5 first, then followed by LS 6.1, and then CC 9.8. And this way, the clerk can get the motions in order, we can display them as we go through the items, okay? So we'll have a 10-minute recess. Okay, Counselor Shiner? Yes?
So, just trying to clarify then, Counselor Mary Margaret's motion to receive her information then is, do people understand what it is? Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, members of council, if you can please take your seat. The Blue Jays have won 15-2.
That's the first game.
That's the first game. If I can please have order, if I can have members of council. If I can have the security, please ask the members to take their seats. It's finished. Okay, members of council, if I can please have you take your seats. Okay, we can have the motions, the order of the vote, votes is on the screen. Okay, so the first one we're voting on is LS 3.5. Which the motion is on the screen by Councilor Mary Margaret McMahon. Recorded vote.
Counselor Kerjanis, please. Counselor Matlow.
Counselor Mamalidi, please.
The motion to receive carries 29 to 15.
Okay, now LS 6.1, we can have the motions on the screen. Recorded vote.
Members, we opened the voting panel late, so please make sure you've pressed your button. Counselor Peruzzo, please.
Well, we've already started voting.
The motion does not carry, the vote is 13 to 31.
Okay, our next motion. Motion 7B by Counselor DeBermaker. Counselor Moser?
I'm pretty sure I pushed my no button on that last vote. I know, I don't usually do this, but...
Madam Speaker, I was on the prevailing side and I will clearly...
So, so to re, okay, there's a motion to reopen to allow Counselor Moser on favor. No, we're just reopening it, we're just reopening it to allow Counselor Moser. No, Counselor Mamalidi, I said we're just reopening it to allow Counselor Moser. So, recorded vote on Counselor Mamalidi's motion. Yes, we're voting on Counselor Mamalidi's motion. Yes, I took a hand vote. It's already open, we're voting now on the motion. Yes.
The motion does not carry, the vote is 14 to 30.
Okay, so our next motion. Okay, thank you. Okay, so our next motion, if we can put it on the screen. Okay, which is 7B by Counselor DeBermaker, how do you want to break it? No. No, but not if there's two different parts to it, but there's just one part here. Counselor DeBermaker, point of order.
The intent of my motion, which I thought was complimentary to Mayor Torrey's motion, was, if you can scroll it up just a little bit, saying that the report include maintaining and/or improving public safety, environmental and consumer protection requirements, that's the operative clause. The such as's are just examples that the staff may look at, but that's, so my intent wasn't all those specific, so really, I don't think it needs to be broken out.
It's just the one vote.
As the mover of the motion, I don't think it needs to be broken out.
Yes, so it's one vote. I've made a ruling, Counselor Mamalidi. On Counselor DeBermaker's motion, recorded vote. If there were different parts to it, but there's not different parts to it, as the mover just mentioned.
Counselor Crisanti, please.
The motion does not carry, the vote is 19 to 25.
Okay, our next motion. Is motion number eight by Counselor Wong Tam. Recorded vote.
Counselor Crawford, Counselor Robinson, please. Counselor Crisanti, please.
Counselor Shiner, thank you.
The motion carries 42 to 2.
Okay, our next motion. Okay, so can we put it on the screen? Okay, so the next motion is motion number one by the mayor, as amended by Counselor Wong Tam. Recorded vote.
Counselor Peruzzo, please.
Counselor Crisanti, please.
The motion as amended carries 32 to 12.
Okay. Next. Yes, is that motion number three? I can't see the number three. Okay. So you want, you want to vote on... Each one, Counselor Kerjanis? One and two separately? Okay, so you want to vote on one and two first? Or one separately? One separately, okay, one separately, recorded vote.
Part one of motion number three carries 38 to six.
Okay, part two, recorded vote. Okay. Recorded vote.
Counselor Crawford, Counselor Robinson, Counselor Fletcher, please. Counselor Palacio?
Counselor Moser, please. Counselor Matlow.
Part two of the motion carries 37 to seven.
Okay. On the next one. It's on the screen, recorded vote.
Counselor Kelly, please. Counselor Peruzzo, thank you. Counselor Wong Tam, please.
Counselor Frackadakas, and Counselor Cole, please.
The motion does not carry, the vote is eight to 36.
Okay, the next motion. 12B. By Counselor Carroll. Recorded vote.
Counselor DiCiano, Counselor Fillion, Counselor Cole, and Counselor Crisanti, please.
Counselor Wong Tam, please.
The amendment carries 40 to four.
Okay, the next motion. Okay, next motion, if you can put it on the screen, please. Recorded vote. What was the vote? Recorded vote.
Counselor Cole, please. Counselor Burnside. Counselor Palacio.
Counselor Cho, your vote, please. Thank you.
Counselor Burnside, please.
The motion carries 26 to 18.
Okay, our next motion. Motion by Counselor Carroll, it's on the screen. Record, it's 12B. Altoise, sorry. Sorry, it's just, there was a lot of noise. Recorded vote. So what we're voting on is the scre, the motion is on the screen is the underlined portion. Okay? Recorded vote. We're just voting on the underlined portion, yes, toise.
Counselor Matlow, please, and Counselor Kerjanis.
Counselor Fillion, please.
The amendment carries 36 to eight.
Okay, our next motion. Counselor Carmichael Greb's motion as amended. Recorded vote. We're voting on Counselor Carmichael Greb's motion, number six, as amended by Counselor Carroll.
Counselor Fletcher, please.
Counselor Bylaw, please.
The motion as amended carries 19 to 25, or sorry, does not carry 19 to 25.
Okay. So our next motion. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I'm sorry, Counselor Pasternak?
Add Siri Adam on the current motion. Break it in two?
On this motion? On Counselor Kerjanis's motion, you want to vote on it separately?
Please.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Perks.
On a point of order, I may be missing something, but isn't recommendation two in the motion redundant? Didn't we already set a date for the report back when we approved Mayor Torrey's motion?
Yes, we did.
So this would be out of order now?
Recommendation two, yes.
Okay, so I guess we don't have to be at Siri Adam's. Okay, so I guess we don't have to be at Siri Adam, there's only one thing in front of us.
Okay, so we're just doing the one. Uh, record, recorded vote.
And request who?
So what we do is we vote on it and then we give them the copy of the votes.
Counsel Wong Tam, please.
The motion, that is part one of the motion, carries 24 to 20.
Okay, our next motion. By Counsel Perks, motion number 10. Recorded vote.
Counsel Pasternak, please. Counsel Matlow, Counsel Lee, Counsel Kerjanis.
The motion carries 40 to four.
Item as amended, recorded vote. We just voted on number 10.
Counsel Cole, Counsel Burnside, please.
Counsel Peruzzo, please. Counselor...
The item as amended carries 34 to 10.
Okay, next motion. CC 9.8. There was no motions on that one, right? Okay, so that item, we vote to adopt as amended for LS 6.1. Recorded vote. CC 9.8. As amended by LS 6.1.
Counsel Peruzzo, please. Counsel DiGiorgio, Counsel McMahon. Counsel Matlow, please.
Counsel Crisanti and Counsel Berard Netti, please. Counsel Berard Netti, please.
The item as amended carries 39 to four.
Okay, yes, who's got the bills? Counsel Holiday, you have a motion to introduce the confirming bill. Just a sec, we're doing the confirming bill first.
That leave be granted to introduce a bill to confirm to the point of the introduction of this motion, the proceedings of the council meeting nine on September 30th, 2015.
Okay, just a sec, Counsel, Counsel Holiday. Yeah, so we can do it again. We do it again. All right, so shall leave be granted to introduce this bill, recorded vote.
Counsel McMahon, please.
The motion to introduce the confirming bill carries 39 to three.
Shall this bill be passed and declared as a bylaw, recorded vote?
Counsel Kerjanis, please. Counsel Carroll, Counsel Thompson, Counsel Bylaw. Counsel Leighton, please. And Counsel Pasternak.
Counsel Fragadakis, Counsel Mehavich, Counsel Ainsley.
The motion to enact the confirming bill carries 39 to three.
Thank you, members of council. Let's give special thanks to the staff. And Tracy, job well done. Thank you. Meeting, meeting is adjourned to 9:30 tomorrow, thank you. And let's see the second, second half of the Blue Jay game.